Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Mayor Philseth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Six present.
Thank you very much. So, the first item on the agenda tonight is a study session on TMA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll invite our TMA partners to come up and make their presentation in a moment. I did just want to provide a bit of context in introducing the topic, well-known to the council but perhaps for community awareness. The city has a couple of roles with respect to the Transportation Management Association. The first is as a funder. As council will be aware, the city provides funds to the TMA for its operations. And the second is as an employer. So, we have obviously employees throughout the city, but as it specifically relates to our downtown, the TMA is an integral part of our strategies for how our employees are also part of the downtown commuting community. And Michelle Flaherty is our point of contact on the TMA board for that purpose. As it relates back to the funder role that the city has, it's our transportation staff that provide contract administration, so they monitor the expenditures of funds and ensure that it's consistent with the direction that we've got from the council. So, it is notable that we have those two roles and we split those intentionally to avoid any potential conflict between the decision-making that would be involved with our role as an employer from the funds that are allocated to the TMA, which is a completely separate organization. So, with that, let me ask Rob George, current president of the TMA board, to come forward and give us our presentation.
Welcome.
Along with Steve Rainey, wherever you'd like.
Good evening. Get my jitters out and I'll be fine here. I want to thank the council for the time this evening. This is now my fourth presentation to council over the last several years. Some familiar faces, some new faces, and I'm excited to talk about the incredible progress the TMA has made this year and the exciting future coming for 2019. Get myself situated with my notes here and we'll get started. So, this first slide is really to sort of introduce the council or reintroduce some of the members of the councils about the mission of the Palo Alto TMA. And really, our mission is to mode-shift single occupancy vehicle drivers into downtown, into other modes. The year has been a tumultuous year but also a very productive year in a lot of ways. In 2018, the Palo Alto TMA secured 501(c)(3) status. Up until that point, we had been a program of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation with their support, so it's exciting to have now a truly independent board that can take action and be more nimble in our actions to serve the community of Palo Alto. Our Board of Directors also is as nimble as the TMA. We are currently at five members. I have been with the board since the very beginning. I am the board chair and also area director for Lemonade Restaurant on University Avenue. I've represented a small employer on the board since its inception several years ago and proud to be part of the primary focus of the TMA, which is service workers downtown and their ability to get in and out of town affordably. Our vice-chair is Bob McGrew with Palantir Technologies, a strong partner of the TMA. And Bob brings expertise from his time and TDM role at Palantir. Michelle Flaherty with the City of Palo Alto. Lucy Tyus with Google, a TDM expert. And Jonah Houston with IDEO. So, as you can see, we have a board that's represented as some of the most innovative and progressive companies in the world. Proud to serve on that board. This year, we started the year with a rather lengthy search for an executive director. And in January, we awarded a contract to All Trans Transportation for executive director services. Initially, the executive director was Christine Miley Grubel, and she served the TMA as an executive director until June of this year, when she left her position due to a family emergency. We were quite fortunate in June to have Steve Rainey assume the position of executive director of the Palo Alto TMA. And he has been actively working to meet the goals of the TMA since July of this year. A little bit about our programs with the TMA. We basically have three primary programs with the TMA. One is transit pass subsidies for service workers. The other is app-based car pools. And the third is employer-based TDM guidance. Basically, we are a high-service organization, so most of our participants are familiar faces to Steve, to Justine Burt, who supports us in outreach roles, and to the council as well as service workers downtown. Really, our primary goal over the first few years is really to assess if there was demand present. There's been a lot of questions about what the future will bring and how we will kind of assess our future. And really, there is no future without demand. And we're very encouraged at the end of our fiscal year 2018, which matches the calendar year, that we have met and exceeded our goals that we've set for ourselves and can see 2019 only bringing more success. The app-based car pools are a way for us to look to the future. We currently serve primarily service workers. Our growth is into other areas, professional, small office, some of the dentists in the area. So, we're threatening to think about not just today and the results we've had to date, but what the future will look like for the TMA. Another important piece is evaluation, measurement. How are we doing? What does the data look like? How do we measure our success moving forward? And then, of course, the devil in the fundraising is that, you know, who pays? How do we get more efficient in our economics? Can we start thinking about ways to fund the TMA beyond the City of Palo Alto and in partnership with the City of Palo Alto? This next slide is just an example of some of the very basic marketing things that we've been doing. We've had a couple of ads in local publications. The left is an example of an ad that was in the Palo Alto Daily mid-year this year, give you an example of some of the kind of old-school marketing tools that we've used. We really have done very little marketing other than word-of-mouth. On the right is a flyer that we've been using in our outreach. We're showing the Spanish slide. This flyer is in both Spanish and English and is posted in businesses that we serve and helps folks understand what programs we bring to Palo Alto. On Wednesday, I'll be meeting with Merchants Association of Cal Ave, and this is one of the primary tools that I'll use to introduce the TMA to Cal Ave. The next slide is a little bit more about the transit pass subsidies and sort of how they work. The first thing I want to call out is that that is not a stock photo. That might be a familiar face to some of you. That is Christian, who works at Fresh, who's one of our participants. And, you know, I think that's something that I want to emphasize in this, is this is a very personal program, right? This has faces of folks that we see and interact with every day that are able to work in Palo Alto because they can afford the transit pass to get here. They can afford the $152 themselves, but because we provide it, we provide stability to small businesses and get to have wonderful participants like Christian. So, essentially, the bullets above just speak to sort of the day-in, day-out of the Palo Alto TMA. We purchase and manage monthly transit passes. It's a very labor-intensive process for more than 230 low-income commuters who work in downtown. I'm proud of that 230 number. It is significantly over the goal that we had set for ourselves this year, really in tribute to Steve and to Justine Burt's outreach. We also provide after-hours Lyft subsidies for low-income commuters before 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Traditional commute works, but when you're getting off your shift at a restaurant at 11:00 p.m. or midnight, there are gaps. And we have programs that help service workers stay out of their car when they'd be tempted to do that and get to and from work safely. The other thing that we've done is we have voted as a board to increase the annual household income limit from $50,000 that we set when we were initially formed to $70,000 per year. This is based on Santa Clara County information that described anything $86,000 or less as low income. We felt that that was a more-than-fair increase. It also gave us a benefit in terms of marketing, is that lifting that amount from $50,000 to $70,000, we picked up some middle managers. We picked up some folks that could rally their teams to come to the TMA and get their transit passes and really kind of gave us a free marketing arm, if you will, in that This is a portrait of some of the people that we serve on the TMA. And again, back to that close-touch, high-service vision that we would like to have. So, kind of going slide by slide, Tim is the first slide, and he works at Sam's Barber Shop. Romina is from the Tap Room. That will be after the council meeting this evening. I'm sure you'll meet her. Kevin Robinson is one of those middle managers I spoke about. He works for El Frenio, and he is helping us, you know, access his team and helping his team understand the benefits that we offer. And Maria, in the last slide, works at the Sheraton, and we have had a lot of success in the hotels downtown in programs. The board's very proud of this slide. I think, simply put, we exceeded our goal of 200 passes in 2018. And the chart below gives you an idea of the rapid momentum that has happened since July with the TMA. We were sitting at 117 transit passes in July as we made the transition from Christine to Steve. And one of the challenges that the board set for all trans and for Steve is, you know, we need to get our programs working. We need to get the word out and get our programs into action. And you can see the rapid growth of the TMA in the six months, actually, five months since August of last year, going from 117 passes in August to 237 passes in December, typically a month where we've seen a dip in past years. Another line I'd like to call out is you can see sort of a spike in demand with new applications. The fall is a time when a lot of businesses hire. 74 is the largest number of passes we've ever been able to get into service workers' hands in one month. The line below it really speaks to something that I'm quite familiar with as a restaurant operator and as a small business person, is turnover. One of the tremendous challenges of the TMA is the primary audience we serve has tremendous turnover. My restaurant is approaching 300% annually when it comes to hourly turnover. So, one of the challenges that Steve faces on a monthly basis and the daily operation is folks falling off because they no longer work in those positions. So, it frees up some budget for us, but it also creates operational challenges for our executive director. One thing I will say is that in the participants of our programs, we have about 120% turnover. So, I guess good news is, is that folks who participate in transit programs with the Palo Alto TMA stick around a little longer with their employer than the 300% that I experienced as a small-business operator downtown. Next slide is about our carpool, our app-based carpool programs. Again, I'll stop and introduce Hanian, who works at the Walgreens Pharmacy and is one of our participants. Every picture in this deck today is a face of someone we serve, a face of someone that serves the community of Palo Alto, and we're really proud of that. I think that's one of the true personal strengths of what the TMA is doing downtown right now. Basically, three distinct programs. Scoop is a program that has been with us since the very beginning. It's a ride-share of sorts where a service worker can drive to and from work and pick up a tech worker that is on his way, and it's pre-planned. So, this evening, you can schedule a ride, or you can schedule yourself as a rider to drive into Palo Alto at a specific time. You can also schedule a pickup for yourself later in the day. So, it's sort of a pre-planned ride-share experience. The other option that we added early in 2018 is Waze Carpool, so we offer a more traditional real-time carpool subsidy. Again, there are no income restrictions for these ride-sharing apps. So, the transit passes do have the $70,000 option. There is no restriction to participating in our programs that are tied to our carpool apps. And then Lyft, as I mentioned a few slides ago, is tied to that sort of after-hours gap service that sometimes we're faced with, with folks working early, early in the morning or late into the evening. In general, Scoop serves about a 20-mile trip, but we have some rides that are as long as 70 miles. We have workers coming from as far as south San Jose and across into the deep East Bay to work on the peninsula, and there's a lot of challenges to getting folks to and from work in an affordable way. It's another pause slide for me to take a breath here, but another one of our ads that we have posted. Again, we haven't done a lot of advertising or marketing, and one of the things that we think about in the future is, you know, what can we do to get the word out in a way that's effective, that speaks to the way that our population gets information? We really don't use social media at all at this point, but we would love to engage our population in a way that got them excited about the TMA. And we're talking about programs for the future that will allow us to do that. No disrespect to a traditional newspaper ad, but there are faster, more effective ways to get the word out about the Palo Alto TMA. This next slide is really back to sort of the high-touch, the employer-based TDM guidance. Early on, when we were just a fledgling program, we did a lot of this. Our initial executive director, interim executive director Wendy, would go door-to-door and sit down with service workers and plot their path to work, some of them taking VTA to, you know, or some of them riding a bike to the VTA. So, really, working with them on what their transit plan is. Most of what we've been doing this year has been focusing on getting folks into programs. Our outreach program is involved in lots of teaching. Most of that is, you know, how do you tag on and off the Cal train and not send your Clipper Card into a negative balance, which, you know, which costs us an hour of time in terms of administration? You know, what is the best route for you to take to work? So, basically, this is partnering with employers and the employees to come up with the best solution for them. An example of that is in the second bullet, where we consulted with the Epiphany Hotel and were able to navigate options yielding almost a 40% mode shift from the workers at the Epiphany. And I think that we've, that's two years ago or three years ago, we have so much opportunity in this area to create really a concierge, a service that folks can, you know, get their questions answered and know what is best for them. And that may be changing. It might be changing from month to month, from season to season. The other thing it does is allows us to have a bit of an ambassadorship, both from TMA staff, the board, but also in the businesses. I think that that group of middle managers is a true ambassador. They know how to use their pass. They can coach it. They can be extensions of our programs. The middle bullet is really just to say that we have focused on other things. Dormant is a little bit of a strong word, but in 2019, I think we're going to be in a position where we can reach out to our participants and make sure that the transit pass that they are receiving is the right pass for them and take a step back and cultivate those relationships in a way that's cost-effective for the TMA and beneficial for the participants. There's also been conversation about what our partnership should be with the city. This is a big building with a lot of employees. Can the TMA, in the future or now, offer services to the City of Palo Alto in a way that relieves the burden of a short-staffed building that has, I'm sure, many workers that would benefit from this type of planning and the transit options that we offer? And then, the one thing I might add to this, and it's on a future slide, is this is all being done with part-time leadership. Steve and Justine are, although the number of hours that they commit kind of fluctuate a bit, are about 30 hours combined. And our board spends a lot of time. I think we originally signed up for a meeting a quarter, and I think I'll spend every day this week at some meeting talking about the TMA, sharing the excitement and the good work that we're doing. I think we can't do enough to get this program moving in a positive direction. Highlights. We probably could go on and on about this. I think the top one is very exciting information, and thank you, Steve, for providing it for us, is our programs have taken 333 cars off of city streets each weekday. And it is no mistake that I have placed the picture of the Bryant Street Garage right there, because there's 320 spaces in that garage. I'll let you draw the conclusion there. We've exceeded our goal, our 2018 goal of 200 transit passes by 37. And I'll remind you to a previous slide where we were 117 in August. So, I think, you know, that question about demand, is there demand? There is demand. We just have to get out there and talk to the managers, talk to the owners, talk to the workers about the programs that we offer. About funding, we have raised $240,000 in private funds for organizational development, and that's come in many different forms. It's no secret that we have decided as a board to expand to Cal Ave, and that is starting this month. That was done with private funding, and we're very excited. The amount of private funding we have to launch Cal Ave is equivalent to the pilot funds we had to start the organization. So, I'm very excited about what's going to happen on Cal Ave in the expansion of this program. We've, of course, one of the most impactful things we've done over the years is hired an executive director, Christine for the first few months of the year, and now Steve Rainey. We are now a fully-secure 501(c)(3), and that we've ended our fiscal sponsorship with Silicon Valley Community Foundation. They still do some advising and financial support for us, but we are a fully-independent organization. One of Steve's expertise is helping us on the back end, as they say. So, improve software and staff support. The Clipper Card process is very labor-intensive, and we're looking for ways that we can scale and be able to grow to, you know, 250, 500, maybe 1,000 participants in the future. We needed to clean up some of the administrative side to test our ability to do that. And then, last is invested in outreach. I've mentioned Justine Burt. Justine is the face of the TMA to the service worker. She is the one that hands them the transit pass every month when they join the programs. She is fluent in English and Spanish, which helps us tremendously when it comes to training our participants on how to use their pass and what it might look like. And really developed outreach tools. The flyer's been very effective in Spanish and English because it lists our programs. It's very clear about what we offer, and it gives us easy contact with those folks. This next slide really looks to the future. I think that a small organization like ours, an all-volunteer board, a part-time executive director, has challenges. We feel the urgency to grow, and we're excited about growing. And you talk about the vision for the Palo Alto TMA moving forward. You know, we've talked about having a TMA that serves every neighborhood in Palo Alto, that there's a TMA for Cal Ave and a TMA for Town and Country, and that from where the Stanford Research Park ends, we have programs all the way to 101 and maybe beyond that. So, I think that there are definitely exciting opportunities for the future and some challenges. So, leadership. What would full-time executive director leadership look like for the TMA? What could we accomplish with a full-time executive director or the hours to fulfill that role? The second is metrics and evaluation. We have the annual survey that provides us data and provides the city data that helps the city and understand what we're doing and the impacts of what we're doing. It also serves other purposes. We are looking to find more real answers about the effectiveness of our programs and some other ways to gather that data in a way that we can quantify the effectiveness of our programs for the future. Financials. I think that we are constantly thinking about ways to streamline. We've recently gone back to our first ride-share partner, Scoop, and asked them to reduce their price after they increased it. You know, it was a decision that we did not want to make. We didn't want to cut our first ride-share program. So, we went to them and we explained, and they were flexible with us. I think there are efficiencies in that sense, and then there are also efficiencies in what we can do for our participants. Are they in the right programs? Back to that high-touch service model that we have. Program design is, what is the next new program for the TMA? What will we do next that will, you know, will expand the TMA in a way that's productive for all of the participants? I definitely think we need to move in the area of small office, and there's been some interest in that, and we've had conversations about it, is could we have a partnership with those businesses where the TMA might not subsidize the whole amount but would allow folks, businesses that could not afford to pay the full load themselves, to welcome their employees into the fold? And we've had several conversations about that, and that's in our future conversation. Boundaries. We primarily serve downtown. We are excited to serve Cal Ave with private money, but we envision a TMA that serves all of Palo Alto and maybe beyond, across the freeway into east Palo Alto to Menlo Park. So, we would like some clarity this year, and we'll be discussing the boundaries of the TMA relative to the funding that we have to grow. And then, diversification of funding. I think that we are very grateful to the city's support, and we wouldn't exist without your support, but we also feel that there are other sources of funding. To be honest, I think a year ago, I was a little bit unsure as to whether we would be able to draw interest into private funding. And with what we've seen in the last six months of the year, I'm very encouraged, without any fundraising efforts at all, how people are turning toward the Palo Alto TMA and offering us funds to grow and expand our programs. It's quite gratifying for the board to have that recognition, to say, "We like what you're doing, and we'd like you to..." like what you're doing, and we'd like you to do it over here," or in a different way, or entertain a conversation. 2019 goals. I, I think, I'll be honest and say that our strategic plan is starting to get a little dusty. Our strategic plan was written in 2016, and we've been modifying it and, and sort of interpreting it in today's language. But in, in our February and March board meetings, we'll be working on an updated strategic plan that will take us through the rest of the year and far into the future. We need to, we need to revisit that, and we're committed to do that in, in February and March of this year. I spoke about evaluation, so really seeking metrics to evaluate existing programs, right? One of the things that we were challenged with is all of our rideshare vendors were communicating to us in different metrics. We asked them for the same metrics, so we can evaluate the effectiveness of the various programs. And I think that in addition to survey data, we would like to have more realistic data about our programs and how effective they are. Of course, launch Cal Ave. I think Cal Ave is one of the things that we are most excited about, is that it, from the very beginning, we have been asked to provide our services to Cal Ave, and I'm very excited about the, the excitement that we are sort of gathering there. I mentioned Wednesday I will be with the Merchants Association and programs are, are live. So we're, we're excited to welcome our first participants. We will be focusing on Cal Ave and north to Town and Country Village. Board governance. We're a small board. There are five board members. We are actively looking for a sixth board member and possibly a seventh. We, we hope to welcome a board member from Cal Ave. As we pilot on Cal Ave, I think it would be important to have a voice from that community to, to represent the TMA. And then the last bullet is just to explore ideas for new programs and partnerships, whether that be an e-bike program that, that Steve and I participated in a, in a conversation with Google a few months ago. But I think there are programs that can round off what the TMA offers for our participants and for future, future expansions of programs. A little bit of information for you about partnerships that we have. So obviously, the Cal Ave pilot wouldn't be successful without the, the support of the Merchants Association. I crashed their meeting in December and was able to, to, to share the flyer and talk a little bit about the excitement of coming in January. I ran into Lydia as well that, that day, so thanks for your support at that meeting. We've also had some interest, someone from the Palo Alto Unified School District reached out to me, hearing about us coming to Cal Ave. And there are some classified personnel that are interested in talking to us about programs we can offer their employees. So that was really exciting to hear, that it is not going to be just the, the restaurants on Cal Ave, but could possibly be supporting the, the school district employees as well. Subregional TMA coordination. Steve, with, with several folks from the Bay Area Council, participated in a conversation at Facebook a few months ago about, you know, what we were all doing in terms of, of TDM and, and a possible collaboration across, I guess, across city lines. Some may say it's a little premature, since we're so small. We are excited to get new ideas. And we, the board feels that if we have our ears open to what others are doing, we can continue to serve and make progress in Palo Alto. The future is, I guess, unlimited at that point. And then excited to say that we are going to be participating for the first six months of the year with some students from the BEAM program at Gunn High School. So we have, we'll have a few interns that will be working with us in various programs. And although it's a short window of time, these are smart kids with a desire to learn and, and help us accomplish our mission. So maybe my next presentation, I'll have one of those students along with me. And that's it. I want to say thank you for the time, and we look forward to working with you and staff. Congratulations to Ed in his new role, and he's been a tremendous advocate, and I, we wouldn't be up here without the support of Sylvia and Michelle as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So is there public speakers to this item? Okay. So why, since there are two, it looks like, Adina and David, so why don't we do that first, and then we'll return to council for questions and comments? Thank you very much. The first speaker will be Adina Levine, and you'll have three minutes.
Great. Good evening, council members and staff and TMA team. Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain. We've been supporting the concept of transportation demand management before the TMA existed, working with local businesses and residents to provide some of the community education that helped get these ideas percolating way back when. And we're really excited to see this innovative program really take off with notable results, getting over 300 workers off the street, freeing up parking spaces, the cost-effectiveness of the program, where the cost of freeing up a parking space is lower than the cost of creating new parking supply, really identifying the need in the low-income workers and offering those benefits to help people to commute without stress and more sustainably, and helping with worker retention. I want to build on the comment that was made about the potential for a regional model, because there are other cities that have downtowns and very similar needs, and also strategies to do similar things. In the city of San Mateo, the city of Redwood City, potentially Menlo Park, city of Mountain View, what's being pioneered here could potentially be also used in these other cities as they mature their programs. Another comment I wanted to make in looking at the staff report and looking at some of the challenges in reducing the costs and the cost of the transit passes, one of the things that Friends of Caltrain has been working with the TMA here and other employers and nonprofits is the potential to revise the Go Pass program, because right now, that is a deep-discount program available only to full-time employees of major corporations. It doesn't let a TMA represent their worker population in smaller businesses. It's a collection. And it also doesn't allow contractors, for example, the food service and janitorial large staffs at major employers are unable to be covered. And this is something that we have presented to the Caltrain board and got favorable responses. So this is something that has the potential to change and would welcome working with the TMA and Palo Alto to help make that more cost-effective and have that program be more equitable for people who are washing dishes in addition to people who are software engineers. So thanks for the leadership and look forward to the next steps here.
Thank you. Next speaker will be David Cole.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is David Cole. I'm with Carbon Free Palo Alto, and I just wanted to say, wow, what a wonderful report to hear how well the TMA is working downtown. And just so that we don't gloss over the numbers too quickly and to add to many of the great comments that Adina Levin said, note that the, the program is about five times more cost-effective than new structure parking spaces. And so I think it is time for the council to revisit the downtown garage, and there's a whole bunch of advantages to doing that. You save a ton of money in the process. You start people on the right track toward more active transportation. If they get their bike share program up and running, that is the last mile, first-mile type of connection that we really need. And so I think there's a whole bunch of things to be done there, and, you know, the first thing is revisit the building of the downtown garage. As I look at the, in the report, the number of items where the TMA was, was consistent with the comp plan, all, almost all of those items are inconsistent with the downtown garage. So, and certainly inconsistent with the SIP program. So now's a great time to revisit this. We're not too far down the road, save a ton of money, put it to some other great cause, even continue funding and expanding funding for the TMA. So great, exciting report tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I'll return to council for comments and questions, and I have a light from, is that council member DuBose?
Yeah, first of all, I really appreciate the report. I really appreciate the focus, I think, on getting solid, solid data. I think I raised the issue last couple of years you've been here. It seems like there's more of a focus on that, so I really appreciate that. I'd still like to really understand, I think reporting like a number of people using passes is a great way to do it, but are we treading water in terms of employee growth versus mode share? You know, or, you know, how are we, how are we impacting the overall situation? Yeah, I did talk to Steve. I'm excited that he's on board. And a lot of the data at the end of the report was extremely interesting to see, and I hope that we start to work with other TMAs in the Bay Area and really share and learn from them. Seems like a lot of cities are starting up TMAs. Quick question. So, so we had a goal of 750 mode shifts in 2018. Are we setting a goal for 2019?
So yes, that'll be something that we'll be discussing at our, our board meeting this Thursday, and will be part of the strategic planning that we've talked about in terms of working beyond the year that we're in and, and looking three to five years into the future. So yes, those strat planning meetings in February and March, we'll have those on the agenda.
I mean, looking at the data here, it seems like, you know, maybe Scoop's not the most cost-effective. I think, again, you guys are doing the right thing negotiating, but it's a fast-moving area, so I think we should be nimble and just switch to whatever's most cost-effective. I did notice, you know, you had high-level survey results that looked like our, our bike percentage is dropping. I don't know if that's within the margin of error or if that's a real drop.
We have a slide on the survey results, so.
Yeah.
Apologize for that. We have a slide on the survey results, because we figured that there would be some questions about the annual survey. So we've prepared a few slides for that information. I believe they're in your packet as well.
And in surveying in November, bike usage was down, and then we also had an impact from the campfire, actually.
Hey, Beth and Jessica, can we have that on the screens? Sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
So yeah, I didn't want to make a big point. It was just something to watch, right? It went from 15% to 9% people using bikes. I don't know if that matches with other data the city has about bike usage. Obviously, different methodologies. I did like the chart on page 31, and I think it'd be really great to see this every year, kind of how many employees in various companies are participating. You know, and then the issue with the Clipper Card seems to be a really major expense of time. Have you guys thought, I mean, is there a way to make the commuters more responsible, where they feel some of the responsibility for making sure that happens?
Yeah, it's an ongoing battle, but it's a dodgy species to be working with. Literally 15% of people just space out, forget to tag off.
I mean, I know we're, we're trying to serve those people, but it feels like if they felt a little bit of pain, maybe they'd be motivated, or there's something, it's really a behavior challenge.
Right. And Caltrain does a really good job at the start of the month, hammering on people, make sure to tag off, but it's just, you know, you're thinking about your meeting where you're going.
And one of the challenges is that with, a lot of our participants have, being English is a second language, the customer service that they're, that they're offered when they dial in with a question is sometimes difficult to navigate. I happened to be with Justine when she was on the phone for almost an hour with, with Clipper Support, trying to get one of our participants' pass straightened up and reactivated. So again, it's a bit bulky, but something that has yielded results in terms of, you know, our care for the participants.
I would, I have, I would really like to understand the table on page 17, kind of the relative costs of different programs. I mean, one of the speakers talked about the downtown garage, and I was looking at the footnotes, you know, you guys calculated that based on a $60,000 parking spot and a 30-year mortgage. It seems like it would relate to the lifetime of the parking garage, and that, you know, $60,000 over a 50-year life, that's 1,200 bucks, that's actually pretty cost-effective. If it's 20 years, then it's closer to the 4,000, or, you know, less, less effective. So it's not clear to me that a parking garage is that bad. It actually comes in as good as a Go Pass. Steve's shaking his head, yes. Yeah. I mean, is that, am I thinking about that the right way?
Yeah, I think so, and, and I think we say that these are pretty darn good numbers for the TDM space, but we want to keep tweaking them, and, you know, potentially a staff report might come out with a different number on annual cost for different garages, too.
Right. Okay. So my biggest concern is really the ongoing business model and kind of the strategy for growth. I mean, I think we need, there's this interesting trade-off, the focus on kind of low-income service workers, that it seems like we will have to continue to fund from the general fund. And as, as we go through our budget this year, I'm sure we're going to be looking to constrain our expenses, and it's going to just, you know, continue to be, be an issue. And so, I mean, I think part of the strategy then, though, is to appeal to middle, to larger, mid-sized companies, middle and higher-income people. I think that really has to be part of the plan to get to a sustainable funding model. I think it's a really interesting question, too, of like, where do you start? I mean, if everything is low-income at the beginning, do you kind of get locked into that? Where if you serve more middle income early on, does that help subsidize the, the lower-income programs and get to a sustainable model quicker? And then the other challenge, it seems like you don't want to subsidize passes for people that would buy them anyways, right? And then we're just spending that money where it's not needed. So it may be that for middle and higher-income employees, we need to look at programs other than like transit pass subsidies. I'm not sure, but it is a complicated problem, and you guys seem to be attacking it. But that's just, that's my concern, is, you know, when I look through this, the cities, including kind of launching of the thing we, we're in for about 1.7 million total. And, you know, I just, we want to be careful that we don't create this ongoing subsidized organization. I expect it will be somewhat subsidized, but, you know, it's a majority subsidized. And so really trying to get to a sustainable business model. Hey, one thing I'd be interested, if council would be interested in, is some kind of like challenge grant funding, something, we did that with the history museum, where we would match, you know, private company funds. But it would be a tool for you guys to really motivate companies to contribute, that the city would match, you know, donations.
If I could just comment here, I think that there's a couple of things that come to mind is, first is resources, is that, you know, with, with the part-time leadership, there is definitely limited resources on, on our side, and, and most of those resources have been going toward our initial program. There has been discussion with the small office, the medical professional offices, is, you know, could we have a, a partnership where they, maybe a 50% subsidy when it comes to those folks? To be frank, it's, it's, it's a game of time and money at this point. So, you know, your, your message is heard and appreciated, and definitely part of the vision for the future.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys do this already, but it seems like making the degree of subsidy tied to the income level, where even if it's high-income, there's still some benefit, but less subsidy. I am excited about the, kind of the interest from the school district and I think the city, you know, and I think those kind of maybe mid-income agencies are a great target to maybe test some programs. The last thing I will say real quick is, I found the, the chart on page 51 really interesting. It's kind of a chart of commuting patterns in the Bay Area, and I think it was called String Arts. I mean, it's just spread out everywhere. I think, I think it's really useful for our council to keep this image in mind, right? It's, and, and based on this image, and talking to Steve a bit, it seems like carpooling is something we should just really ramp up. I mean, where people start their trip is so distributed that the idea that we're going to get everybody to go get into a large bus for, you know, an express bus to Palo Alto seems difficult. But these carpooling programs, where you can get three, three seems difficult, but these carpooling programs, where you can get three or four people in a car, seems like a real win. And, you know, one thing to really explore was, you know, maybe subsidizing, do we subsidize parking permits today for carpoolers? Maybe if somebody is a dedicated ways carpooler who never comes in SOV, they get a subsidy on their parking permit. So, thank you guys for the good work, and I hope you'll take that, those comments. Thanks.
So I've got lights from Councilmember Cormac, followed by Vice Mayor Fine. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you. I want to wind myself, associate myself with just about everything Councilmember DuBois said. I hadn't thought of doing the subsidy for the permit, parking permit for that, but the rest of this was on my list, so I agree with all of those. I'm wondering exactly how the city participates as an employer, so I heard we're doing it, and I also heard we have a bigger opportunity, so I'll just let all of you work on that. Sounds like there's an opportunity to lead by example a little bit more. One thing I wanted, a bit of an experiment, thought experiment, is to consider the effect on employers elsewhere in the city. When I read the report, and it sounded like some employers were using this pass as an opportunity to attract employees, that's fantastic. On the other hand, we have, you know, similar businesses in other parts of the city which do not have that. So I was happy to hear your thoughts about expansion. I'd specifically point, since the largest user of this is a hotel in North Palo Alto, we have hotels in South Palo Alto also, so just want to be sure we don't have any unintended consequences, you know, throughout the city. I also loved the chart on page 31. One thought I had is you could do a referral program for participants. There are many employers listed there who only have one participant. I'm confident that there are, you know, the easiest way to get to those people is through one of, you know, your personal contacts that already works there, and you don't need us to tell you that social media, you know, would be useful. Again, I just don't want to especially echo the connection to the school district. A few of us are actually mentors in the BEAM program, so delighted to see that connection. And yes, funding, ongoing funding, of course, the biggest discussion. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for coming tonight. A lot of good information in here, even if some of it is a little hard to digest and kind of postulate on, which I guess gets to my first point, which is kind of communications challenge, both internally to the folks you're trying to serve and connect with transits passes, and externally to audiences like this, the city council or businesses. So it's less of a question, but more of a challenge to you in the next year, and as you go through your strategic planning, please do focus on making some of these metrics and the purposes and the operations a little more legible. I just think we could do a refresh on that. A couple of quick questions. So first of all, what does the expansion to Cal Ave look like? Are you just kind of copying the model you've got in downtown to that area, and is it roughly, you know, the train tracks El Camino and a few blocks around Cal Ave?
So our plan is to duplicate the existing programs on Cal Ave. We expect with the proximity, not as close proximity to downtown with the Caltrain, we expect to see different program use, but there is definitely excitement from restaurants and coffee shops downtown. This was excitement we didn't see in the early months of our programs at all downtown, when we had someone walking through the doors talking about it. So I think that, you know, a perfect example is Theo, the store manager of the Starbucks on California Avenue. He's been asking for these passes for a couple of years, and he is one of our most vocal sort of supporters, and is talking up and down Cal Ave about us. Again, I think that we plan on launching the programs as they exist, and then learning from the participation.
Right, okay, thank you. You mentioned a couple issues in terms of operational and mechanical issues, in terms of distributing permits, turnover, things like that. I know we are just, you know, one jurisdiction among 100-plus here in the Bay Area that use these systems, but is there any way this council can assist you? Whether it is writing a letter to the Clipper folks or other groups and advocating on your behalf?
Well, good news is Clipper 2.0 is coming in 2021, and there's, there's nothing magic, and, you know, it's like literally like the access to a good Google app script person is maybe like the biggest backend sort of help that we can get. So, you know, some of these things just have their own momentum that we can't tweak. What a legacy system ClipperCard.com is.
Okay. If I could add one thing there, your voice about the price we pay to Caltrain. I think that, you know, one of, one of our board members and a company that is vocal about a TDM is Palantir, and the TMA pays more than Palantir for those passes. And, you know, we could serve more folks, and when, if we were paying a lower price for those passes. Now, I don't think that we're heading in that direction, but it, you know, a small nonprofit with a $400,000 budget a year, paying $152 a pass is a burden.
Okay. So just please keep in your back pocket that I think most of this council would be happy to send a letter or advocate on issues like that, and to the city manager as well, if we can, you know, write Caltrain and say, hey, why are you charging our nonprofit TMA more than private company? May move the needle a little bit. Last quick question is also on the funding issues Councilmember DuBois brought up. So if I recall correctly, I think we are transferring 100K a year, not from the general fund, but I think it may be the FTA mobility grant money, and then 300K is from our University Ave parking garage fund. Is that, is that right? I think it's like 100 plus 3 or 400.
Hi, Sylvia Starak, Transportation Manager for the City of Palo Alto. The funding for FY18 came from the downtown parking revenue funds.
All of it, all 400 or so?
I believe that all of it is from that.
Okay. And so if I recall correctly, a year or two ago, we raised those funds in the University Ave parking garage from something like $200 to 700? Something along those lines, right?
Yeah, I think that's right. It was going to go to 325, and we raised it to 750 instead, yeah.
Doubled it. So I guess I'm asking because it would be helpful to, one, understand how much flexibility we have in those parking funds for downtown and Cal Ave as we expand there, if that's a continued source this council wants to pursue. And then, two, how do our other parking policies enable or hinder this effort, right? So if we are offering somebody a VTA pass or a Caltrain pass, and yet they still have free parking on-street or sometimes off-street, what are kind of the backstops that you look at? I don't know if you have a response there, but it's just kind of the way I'm thinking.
Well, you know, in suburbia, public policy can really make a difference in driving demand, obviously, but it's politically difficult, right?
We've had several discussions about what we require of our participants, and I think that we certainly don't want to provide a transit pass to a service worker that is going to be driving to work five days a week.
Right.
So I think that, you know, one of the things that we need to look for in the future is, call it an accountability metric, where if we're going to provide a transit pass, you're going to reciprocate in some way. And I think that, you know, it's a stick-or-carrot question, but I really think that we have to be a program that people want to participate in, so the accountability needs to be something that they're encouraged to do.
Right. I like that way of thinking. I'll just tell two quick anecdotes, and then I'll shut up. So one is, last week I was at Whole Foods, I was checking out, and a bagger said, oh, sorry, I'm going to get another bagger, because I've got to go move my car, you know, halfway through my shift. And the other one, I was on Cambridge near Cal Ave, and I saw a gentleman, you know, he saw the parking ticket person come by, tag his wheel, he comes along with like a cloth in his back pocket and wipes it off. So obviously, we have this two-hour parking problem, and maybe it's the carrots and sticks you're thinking about, but otherwise, thank you guys so much. There's good progress here, it's in the right direction, and I would be happy to continue supporting this.
Councilmember Ku.
So Rob, thank you for the presentation. You did a great job, so I don't know what you're talking about, the jitters and everything, but super. Anyways, and also to Steve, you know, welcome, and to Justine, thank you both for all the things that you're doing. I was reading in here that, Steve, you were able to procure and you were awarded a grant of 1.085 million. Can you tell me a little bit, can you share with us a little bit of what that does? And you're really far from your mic, could you bring it closer?
I'm sorry. Sorry. Actually, staff is going to talk about the Fair Value Commuting Grant, and so I'm going to defer to them eventually, but you've seen some consent items come through on that. Contract with SPUR and Prospect SV and so forth, but it is very commute-focused kind of, commute-focused, commute-focused.
Commute-focused, okay. And so what, does that measure, the VMTs and the carbon reduction, or what?
Really looking to shift mode away from SOV, right?
That's the whole program?
Our goal. Again, staff's going to say more.
When is that going to happen?
We've actually been talking about it over the course of several months, and it's recently initiated. This is a multi-agency project, it's a grant-funded project through the Federal Transit Administration, that quite frankly is spread much thinner and, let's say, not as deeply as the TMA effort is. So it's largely a research and development project, more so than really, quite frankly, having the impact that the TMA is. It's almost an entirely separate effort.
Okay, so it's mentioned in here, but it's kind of different.
I think more is background and connectivity.
Okay. So the Clipper Card, can you explain to me the difference between the Clipper Card and the GoPass, or is it the same thing?
Oh, it is the same thing. You can have a GoPass on your Clipper Card.
Oh, you mean that little sticker thing?
And you can have a monthly pass on your Clipper Card, or you can have cash value on your Clipper Card and pay $2 per trip for a VTA bus.
And so when you say in the staff report that you electronically put funds into the Clipper Card, that's how they kind of scan, tag on and tag off?
Right, right, and there's an account in the cloud that you pay by credit card and put a monthly pass on, and then the 100,000 transactions migrate to Palo Alto Caltrain Station overnight, and when you tag on a Clipper reader, it physically encodes that monthly pass on. So it's both a kind of impressive that it works, but it's also only works about 99.5% of the time. So it's not as reliable as we might like.
Does that enable you to track a person who's using the Clipper Card, and if they're using it frequently?
This is a great question. So for the bus service, people tag every time they use it, so we can track them. And then for the Caltrain monthly passes, you just, on your first ride of the month, tag on, ride the train, tag off, and remember to tag off, otherwise we're in a world of hurt. So it's a different process for Caltrain. So different rules for different systems.
So it's a little bit more difficult to have accountability there, that this person is actually using it after you've...
Yeah, exactly.
Looks like most of the other questions I have, somebody else asked, and it's been answered, but thank you very much for all the work that you're doing, and it's encouraging to see, and I know Rob is out there pushing this program. I also want to say, you know, the longevity of a program is really the leadership consistency. So thank you very much, Rob, for being there for all these years. I remember when I first came on, you were there, so, and now you have a great support team, so thank you. I look forward to its continued success.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, most of the things I was going to say, and a question I was going to ask company already done, so I'm not going to repeat, but just want to thank you guys for the work, it's been amazing. I think the cost efficiency, the cost efficiency of the program is actually very impressive. One thing I'd love to see maybe from staff, actually, is really maybe a more scientific way of kind of proving it, because I know it's kind of a rough metric right now, but if, if it really is true, maybe this really means that we should invest the money differently. So I, for one, would love to see a much more conclusive measure of cars that take off the road. I know it's hard, though, because it's, unless you have some sort of tracker on people, it's really hard to do. But I do like what Councilmember DuBois was trying to get to, which is, can you track it somehow through the passes? Or maybe you could use Strava or one of these other apps that people use, I don't know, but I'm sure you guys could figure it out. I do like the direction you're going in terms of small offices, I think that's important, because a lot of those can't organize their own TMA. And one other thing that I was just thinking about in terms of trying to get more publicity is, I don't know if you guys could also maybe drop something to utility bills? So, I mean, when we open our utility bills, we get a ton of stuff, so I don't know if the city can help with that, but that's maybe another thing. And then, just a question for you guys, because I know you guys are trying to be very cost-efficient, trying to make this program very effective. Have you guys thought about, like, trying to share some of the administrative with, like Palo Alto Downtown or the Chamber or something like that, and maybe you could talk a little bit about some of the ideas you have there?
Thank you. Greg, as you know, I sit on the Downtown Association, and it's one of the, one of the reasons I do is to be a voice for the TMA. One comment is, this year in the, in the bid bill and the Downtown, and the Business Registry, there will be an envelope stuffer with a flyer similar to the flyer I've shown up there for the TMA. So the folks will hopefully be more encouraged to pay, but also see the benefits that come from that. I think there are many opportunities to spread the word. The new hotel association that's forming has already asked about providing programs for their members. So I think that it's really kind of the old-fashioned way of going meeting to meeting, you know, through the Chamber just to talk about it. Palo Alto is a, is a big city, but a small town in a lot of ways, and I think that, you know, the work that Justine is doing, that Steve is doing, and that, you know, I enjoy doing is making progress.
And there's some thinking in some of the preliminary work that's being done on the subregional TMA to be able to leverage people across organizations. So if you have somebody who's 10 hours a week with one TMA, can you then share them over somewhere else and do some of that labor sharing across? When you're not, like, I guess like the SRPTMA, I think is like five people, when you're not that size, you know, how do you optimize?
And then, not a lot of details to share, but we have received an honest gift of $100,000 to help facilitate a conversation around this topic, is that, you know, what we're doing in Palo Alto may not exactly work in East Palo Alto or Menlo Park, but to learn, we should be talking to each other. And I think that, you know, that's something that the board will be talking about this Thursday, as to, you know, how we've received this gift and how we implement it as a small organization.
Okay, well, thank you guys for your work and your team as well. I know it's, it's been, it's been really great success, so please keep it up.
So we're a few minutes behind schedule, so I'll be really brief. Thank you guys very much for doing this, this is really, really helpful and really interesting. One quick question on ride-sharing. When you, the rideshare numbers that you guys track, is that all app-based rideshare, or does that include sort of people that, you know, call their neighbor and ride together, that kind of stuff, and don't use Scoop or Waze or anything?
All app-based, and we threw some numbers in for the research part there, just for comparison, like fam-pooling, traditional carpooling versus, traditional carpooling with somebody who's not your family member versus, you know, they're a huge Scoop site, and yet Scoop is lower than that, so it's still not quite moving the needle as much as you would want.
So do you have any visibility on people that sort of, you know, coworkers in the same place that ride together? Just sort of traditional carpooling? No, okay. I'm really curious about that, because...
Just from some of the EMC survey data that came back.
Right, it'd have to be survey data.
Ah, right.
When, when you folks, I mean, you're sort of, we talked about cost-to-customer acquisition and all that kind of stuff, when you folks go to do this and people don't take it, right? What's the biggest obstacle? Is it the cost? What's your intuition on the biggest obstacle? Is it the cost, or is it the time, because it just takes longer to do mode share than getting your car and drive? Or is it the flexibility, or is it, they just don't know, right? Or something else? Or does it vary by group?
Well, I mean, I'm speaking more as a small business person now, is many of my employees have multiple jobs, so the bear... So the barrier is, you know, I'm going to work at the coffee shop from 6:00 to 10:00, and then I'm going to school from 11:00 to 2:00, and then I have to come back to my bartending job, so it's, that's the barrier, is that, you know, with, you know, we're serving folks up to 70,000 well under the low-income threshold. I think that, you know, anecdotally, that would be the first thing I would think about. I think the other thing is, you know, is simple, is that whether you're a poor kid working as a server, or, you know, a guy that works in a tech company, you love your car. It's maybe the one bit of quiet time you get all day, and, you know, that's, you know, that's something that's gonna take us generations to solve probably. So I think those two things are it. And then, you know, Adrian mentioned the person working at Whole Foods, the two-hour dance is real, and, you know, many of our workers take their breaks on the two hours praying that they haven't gotten a $41 ticket, you know, so...
I like the guy with the rag. Technology will get him.
That wasn't, that wasn't me.
Understand. Okay, that's helpful. So, thank you guys very much for doing this, and look forward to seeing the next step. With that, I think we're gonna move on to agenda changes, additions and deletions, and I think we don't have any. The we debatement, I think we have to do, right?
Correct, we need a motion to continue it to January 22nd.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Fine, seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Can we vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with six in favor and Councilmember Niss absent. Next, we move to City Manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do have a few items to cover, so I'll try to cover these briefly, but nonetheless, important, timely pieces of information. First, related to our Calav construction and tree removal upcoming with the Public Works Project related to parking structure. Would like to note that construction is slated to begin next week on the city's public garage and public safety building project. Parking garage at 350 Sherman is being built first, as the council knows, as a part of the construction setup. Thirty-five trees near California Avenue have been tagged for removal as part of the project. As the council mayor recall, we do have a tree replacement plan for 21 of new trees to be planted on the parking garage parcel and 35 on the public safety building parcel. We have heard from residents about some concerns about the tree removal, and staff is hosting a walk-through this Friday, January 18th at 2:30 PM, weather permitting, I suppose. The walk is an opportunity for the public to learn about the projects, the upcoming tree removal, and the city's broader commitment to Palo Alto's urban forest, so we'll have staff on hand for that. In addition, staff has developed and posted FAQs on the project website at cityofpaloalto.org/psb for public safety building. Next note regarding the news of PG&E's leadership changes as well as potential bankruptcy. Today, PG&E announced that they would initiate Chapter 11 bankruptcy proceedings primarily related to the potential liabilities associated with Northern California wildfires. Like to note a few things from our utility staff. First, that no customer outages are expected as a result of this action, either for PG&E's direct customers or for customers such as Palo Alto connected through PG&E's transmission system. We are evaluating city's potential financial implications due to the bankruptcy, and will keep the council informed as this review proceeds. It is worth noting that the city does not directly transact with PG&E for our electric supply, transmission, or gas supply. We buy our gas and electric through marketers and suppliers, through purchase agreements, and largely through the California Independent System Operator, or CAL ISO. These line items do represent majority of the cost of supplying our electric and gas systems. We do transact directly with PG&E for gas transmission services, but in those cases, we're purchasing the gas supply rather than sale. In addition to evaluating direct financial implications, we're also evaluating any indirect exposure in the longer term related to our rate payers. So as the proceedings go forward, once again, CAL ISO is in a major role in evaluating how transmission lines operated will, might be affected, such as, for example, PG&E's transmissions maintenance costs, should they increase as a result of the bankruptcy proceedings, costs would be worked through CAL ISO, which ultimately hit transmission customers such as Palo Alto. So we'll be monitoring these and working with our partner agencies in order to ensure the city's interests are protected. Another item, timely information of note related to small cell items coming forward to the council. Over the weekend, city council received a number of emails relating to small cell wireless antennas applications. There are several applications currently working through and in process with the city. Let's see, tentative decision was recently made on one application that if appealed, would be coming forward to the city council on February 4th. A second application is anticipated to have a tentative decision this week. Separate from these ongoing applications, staff is bringing forward an update to the city's Wireless Facilities Ordinance for council consideration on March 11th. This ordinance is in response to recent Federal Communications Commission's order that requires municipalities to adopt objective siting criteria for wireless facilities, and shortens the review period for certain facilities from 150 days previously to 60 days. The FCC order went into effect today, and the city has 90 days from today to adopt new quote-unquote "objective standards." So based on that, staff is bringing this forward again for council consideration on March 11th. Let's see, a couple of other notes related to utilities. Natural gas prices did spike in the month of December, but now have decreased to more normal levels. City of Palo Alto purchases natural gas for our customers on the market, and in monthly fluctuations in market pricing are passed along to residents and businesses. And so as this process is not unique, other utilities, such as PG&E itself as a retailer, purchase natural gas on the market and are affected by rate changes. Staff have proactively reached out to customers in December to inform people about these rate fluctuations, encouraging them to conserve gas where possible to avoid higher bills, and however, customers may see higher costs in their utility bills in January as a result of this December spike. Tips and links for other resources to improve energy efficiency, such as through our Home Energy Ginnie Assessment, are available on our utilities website. Let's see, last item of note for looking back, then we'll look forward for a couple of items. Storm update from Public Works Department. Obviously, we are having a wet week, and last Wednesday, the day, as we expect to see, or actually, I'm sorry, this upcoming Wednesday, we expect to see largest amount of rainfall in our regions. Public Works staff is monitoring and sharing information among all staff and all departments, ensuring that our storm pump stations are operational and creek monitoring sensors are operating correctly. Public Works operations staff will continue to monitor staff's creek levels during the rain, and both Mitchell Park and Rinconada Park locations have been stocked with sandbags. We will assemble 5,000 filled bags this season. Limit of 10 bags per passenger cars and 20 per pickup trucks is still in place as a way of ensuring distribution. Couple of upcoming items, let's see, this Wednesday on January 16th, from 7 o'clock, Cool Block Palo Alto will be holding informational meetings at the Midtown Room at Mitchell Park Library for residents to learn more about this program. Couple of other upcoming items, on January 21st, next Monday, the City and Community Youth Service will hold a celebration event to play tribute, pay tribute to the life and legacy of late civil rights leader Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. from 10 AM to 1 PM at Mitchell Park Community Center. Activities planned include guest speakers, music and dance performances, fun for youth and teens, as well as legacy exhibition. Let's see, and finally, and I do have one other note related to your agenda, but final note, looking forward, Palo Alto Youth Council sponsoring the Palo Alto Rotary Club's youth speech contest on January 31st at 7 PM. That speech theme this year will be Be The Inspiration, and all members of the community are invited to attend to cheer on our speech makers. Youth speech contest is open to all high school students in Palo Alto as a way to increase leadership, public speaking, and networking skills. Speech contest begins at the local level and then moves on to district, regional levels all in Silicon Valley. Top winner could win, could earn $1,550. And final item of note for the City Manager's comments on your consent calendar this evening, item number three related to the Middlefield Road Project. Would note, just want to provide some context and reaffirm that subject to council's approval of this consent item, that want to reaffirm our commitment to community engagement moving forward. Should the council approve this item, future plans for any permanent improvements along this stretch and as well as any other substantive changes will involve a fresh round of community engagement, including determining appropriate role for consultation involvement with our Planning and Transportation Commission. So with that, that concludes my comments. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be oral communications, in which any member of the public may speak to any item not on the agenda. Before we start that, I want to make a comment on that. As you know, tonight marks the first regular meeting of the seven-member council, and sort of over the last, you know, the last couple of months, there's, you know, been some discussion on sort of how do we organize things and so forth with 28% fewer folks on council here. And, you know, one of the main goals of the ballot measure that we all voted on to reduce the council size was to try to use council meeting time more efficiently. And when we start running behind, multiple things get squeezed, and as a number of folks from the public have pointed out, public comment tends to be one of those. So hopefully, the council reduction will help that problem, but if it isn't enough, we're still sort of tossing around other ideas to try to fit things. One of them is, you know, the council has a formal policy that if oral communications is gonna go after over half an hour, we limit it. To best of my knowledge, we've never enforced that, right? So I'm not sure we're gonna do that or not, but just a heads-up, one of the things that we're considering that other cities have done, is if there are nights where we have a lot of oral communications, we may try splitting it. That is, take the first 20 or 30 minutes and hear it at the beginning of the meeting, and then defer the remainder of oral communications until after the last action item. And obviously, that's not an ideal situation, but if we schedule an action item for 8:30 and we don't take it up till, and people show up and we don't take it up till 10, that's not really fair either, right? And so that's probably preferable to cutting everybody down so far that they can't say anything, right? So we're not gonna do that tonight, okay? So this is really just sort of a heads-up that, you know, we may try that or other things in the future in an effort to manage time. This is a, it's a highly constrained problem, we're trying to do this in the best way possible. And so please, please bear with us and grant us some patience as we go through that process. And with that, let's move to oral communication, and our first speaker will be Dennis Backland, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Phil Seth and council members. I'm Dennis Backland, a Palo Alto native and former historic preservation planner for the city. I held that post for 14 years. At last week's council meeting, we tenants of the President Hotel said that we would return tonight to talk about the announcement by the president's owner, AJ Capital, that we would be evicted January 31st instead of the eviction date of June 16, which AJ said was canceled because the council did not allow the conversion of the president to a commercial hotel. We don't know why AJ is holding to the January 31st eviction date, because they have not submitted a project for the president, and it will take several months to obtain the permit because of planned structural changes to the building's interior and for other reasons as well, including parking and design review. As things stand, a number of the remaining tenants of the president, including myself, have not been able to find a place to live. The likely reason for this emerged from research I did on moving patterns in the Bay Area. When people move, this opens up opportunities for places to live. What I found was that the least likely time of the year that people move is December to February, the period of our January 31st eviction date. The peak period when people do move is May 15th to August 31st, and consequently, our former eviction date of June 16th was a very appropriate date, but January 31st is not. Among several organizations I researched are SureMove and the U.S. Census Bureau. Another factor in the January 31st eviction date is that it falls during the peak rainstorm season. I myself am disabled, I use a walker, and I have no car. I have already slipped and fallen on wet pavement, and since then, I don't go out in rainy weather without being accompanied by another person. For all these and other reasons, I am requesting that the council recommend in a non-binding manner that AJ Capital consider extending our tenancy until June 16th or until their permit for the president has been approved. The June eviction date would not interfere with AJ Capital's project and would bring them thousands of dollars a month from tenants' rent payment during the extended tenancy. If council makes this voluntary recommendation to AJ Capital, the chances are very good that AJ will agree. If council does not make a non-binding recommendation, it is certain that we will be evicted on January 31st. If we can't move on that date, and we cannot, AJ Capital will likely begin no-fault eviction proceedings, and without offense on our records, we won't be able to rent anywhere in the Bay Area, possibly for the rest of our lives. Consequently, we are in a desperate situation, and we need council's help. If you'd like to make the public aware of our request in advance, you could agendize this item for next week's agenda, and we tenants will return to hear your deliberations and responses. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Karen Gao.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I am Karen Gao, one of the remaining residents of the President Hotel. I am your county employee, a restaurant inspector for the county. I am your physical therapist at Litten Gardens, now Webster House. I am your small-time piano teacher for kids. I myself have been living at the president for 14 years, month-to-month, from the very beginning. Those of you who are familiar with the law know that this is a violation of the one-year lease requirement. I hope you will confirm for yourself that this failure to uphold the law is unambiguous and inherited by AJ Capital as a new owner. Like the rest of us here tonight, I can truly ill afford the consequences of the eviction. Please use your power under the law to help us ease the blow in any way you can. Would you please ask AJ Capital to allow us to stay until building permits are approved? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Michelle Kraus.
Hi, and welcome, new council member, and welcome, new city manager. I'm here again just to encourage the city manager to become up-to-date with what's occurring at the President Hotel apartments and to... occurring at the President Hotel apartments, and to urge you to open communications with A.J. Capital, to make this a priority. Number one, we want none of residents to wind up on the street. That would be a tragedy. I will wind up okay. Not happy, but okay. But I'm really worried. We have 25 people remaining in the building of 75. 25. Our elevator, which is vintage, cannot even afford to move that many people out by the end of the month. The elevator is my favorite kvetch because unfortunately, I can't walk up and down the steps during my rehabilitation from the car accident, so it has to run for me. I'm hoping that you will start talking to A.J. You will urge them to have leniency, and that we can continue on with the dialogue of what to do and how to move forward effectively. I urge you to suggest that we let residents stay during this uncertain period. I know others differ. If it was only April, it would be a benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome, new council. Ms. McCormick, Mayor Philseth, Dubois, Fine, Lydia, and Greg. Thank you very much for hearing us. I want to emphasize that previous three speakers made my same points forcefully. I have been living in the building for almost 30 years, been coming here weekly for the last few months, trying to relate as emotionally, as clearly as possible, our concerns. And it's, I'm sorry to say, I don't feel like we have gotten through. We don't hear anything from anyone on the President's Hotel, and that's sad because it's really affecting some real-life people. And this is only the first for you. You will be facing more of these housing issues, and you have to take a step. You have to intercede for us citizens who have, for no fault of their own, have gotten into this situation. A.J. Capital has made an investment. They don't have a project on the boards right now. It may take them months to get the approval, get the permit. We are hoping that we can get a little bit of an extension so we can find a reasonable equivalent space in the downtown. I don't think it's asking too much for your involvement. After all, that's what you chose to be up there for. I plead once again, and I will be coming here every week, reminding you, giving you a face to deal with, and I'm sorry that I have to do this. I'm sorry that I'm here asking for your support. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Jessica. Oh, good. Yeah, I can do that. Okay. I think I can do that. Well, I just have to find the break. Would it help if I helped you? Yeah, yes, but I need to have, I always have to have a break on, and it's here someplace. I had hoped I'd be out of this. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, Mayor Philseth.
Sure, Stephanie.
Vice Mayor Fine, and council members. I was listening and listening to that transportation management, and you know, there is really only one way to get Palo Alto back to this charming, bucolic little town it was 50, 60 years ago, and that is to replace the housing that was taken away from the Stanford foothills at the moment that they decided that it would be good to have an industrial park there. Because if you have the housing here and the workplace way out yonder, you're going to have congestion. There's no way of getting around it. Now, there are a lot of things you could do. I think if push came to shove, you could invite people to put their mats down on the city council floor from 7:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning. I've suggested that, you've seen the huge success of the President Hotel, realize, these people are not talking about apartments or suites. They are talking about a room and a bath. Since that has proved, and they're paying through the nose for it, since that has been so popular, very many people could be taken care of in an arrangement like that, especially older people who don't, who don't drive. And I noticed that we've had many, many attempts to get people out of their cars. What I have not seen is the city volunteering to sponsor a building in which people could live with no cars, and they would have a van or a bus to take them. You could, you could get the federal government to house veterans over at Moffett Field. Why shouldn't they? Certainly, if that's owing to them. There are a number of things that could be done. However, there is only one that will take care of the congestion, and that is having the workplace filled with the workers' homes filled behind it. And I'm astonished that we have not had city input for having teacher housing on the Cumberley campus. It seems to me unnatural. You can't buy a place for them, and you cannot recruit teachers if they have to go to Stanislaus County. You just can't do it. So I would suggest that. And if you let Stanford get away, and I love Stanford, if you let Stanford get away with not putting in the 5,000 beds for the 5,000 workers, you'll be really sorry. But remember, the only way you can do it, to get rid of the transportation congestion, is to have the workers live next to their workplace. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Xin Zhen.
Thanks for doing it in the right order. Thank you. Good evening, city council members. My name is Ken Shum. I'm a Palo Alto resident for over 15 years, always have a wife and two daughters. Yeah, I'm here to show my concern about a recent new bus stop built on Charleston, which is the street I live on. That particular bus stop is, unlike any other bus stop, is right next to my private driveway. I haven't seen anything like that in the area, in the neighborhood, and I think I have two concerns. Number one is it's literally right next to my driveway, very, very close. As you are aware of, you know, people, most of people taking the bus are either older senior people or kids. So right off a Charleston busy street, a main street, you have people standing right to a driveway that either cannot move very fast, those people, or move faster than you wanted. So I think it's very dangerous. That's first concern. The second concern is it's actually located on the wrong side of the driveway, so it impedes the view for the traffic going in and out. So it's, if you're coming out of the driveway, I would prefer to see traffic on the left. So if the bus stop on the right is probably much better. So that is definitely another concern. The safety is definitely, will be a big issue here. So I think most importantly, I think this is part of the Charleston corridor project. I was not, you know, we were not aware of this, this bus stop locating there until it was built. So then, when we contacted the city, four persons actually showed up at our house, you know, telling us, some kind of a letter has been sent to us before, which we probably didn't see, but then, all of a sudden, that thing is built without our knowledge. We have some discussion with our neighbors. They are all aware of this. They all have some concerns about this particular bus stop, you know, so, because we are the only one that was actually right next to this bus stop with the driveway. So I think, you know, we should be the one being contacted when they started this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Reedver Hill.
Good evening. I would really encourage the city council to do whatever is necessary to avoid the fiasco that has and was for 429 University Avenue. I think that there were lots of ways that Ms. Wong's attorney coming to the city council, threatening the city council with a lawsuit, and presenting final design reviews could have been avoided. I think that you have an architectural review board that, to my knowledge, works very well. I think when the city council voted to approve the project without the final ARB details finished, you gave her a free rein to do what she wanted. The fact that the project went through so many architects and came to the city council twice, and God knows how many times to the ARB, means that people have to be encouraged to follow the well-established rules that govern building in the city, whether it's commercial or residential. So I would encourage the city council not to get involved in projects that have not been approved by the ARB, and also not to, in the same vein, authorize a shell of a building without all of the details in place. You know, just like Trump and his wall, petulant children need to be told no. The first time they do it, it's the best time to say no. This type of approval for a 429 and the fiasco that it was, I think only encourages other builders to follow the same line, which is not the way we conduct business in Palo Alto. Thank you, and good luck in 2019. I'm really excited about the city council, and I'm very excited about you being mayor, Mr. Philseth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Winter Dellenbach.
Hi, I live in Barron Park. I have an idea. Rather than tinkering around with oral comments and moving our comments around, you know how I feel about that because I've talked about that before. I really like the idea of a more robust democracy and allowing us to petition you, our government, and having adequate time to do that, not confining us to one minute, not moving us later into the meeting. I have another idea, which is, you guys have a lot of closed sessions. You don't have them every, every council meeting, but you have them frequently. Most of the time, you don't have outside council. I'm quite certain you don't have outside council. Sometimes you do, but not most of the time. Since we're not, that doesn't involve the public, why don't you move those to the end of the meeting? That would move, that would advance the whole public part of the meeting forward. Keep everything else the same. Move the closed session to the back of the meeting that we're not a part of, and then let's proceed from there. It would bring up the, all the public discussion, the vote. We have, keep the oral comments at the front. We keep everything like that, and we went through this whole vote on shrinking, shrinking the city council. The biggest justification for that was that it would shorten your meetings. Less of you, less talk, shorten the meetings. So we've done that. So let's, let's take that on a trial spin for a while and see if it shortens your meetings. So let's not do two things at once. You know how good scientific experiments go. You try to test one thing at a time. You don't try to make, complicate it and test two things at a time. Tinker with the oral comments, tinker with public comment. You just test one thing at a time. So now we've shrunk the council. Let's see if indeed, see what effect that has on things, and not mess with the other thing. Let's keep that as it is. If you want, I think we should move the closed sessions to the rear, and then we can have all the public stuff earlier, and people won't be here until, you know, 11:30, 10:30 at night, taking a late-night vote. The public will be able to see your votes earlier. Wouldn't that be a good idea? What harm would that do? And when, when outside council's here, have your closed sessions earlier in the evening as an exception. I think it'd be a good idea. I can't imagine what would be wrong with that. It seemed to further democracy all the way around.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Roger Smith.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you all for serving. This is a lot of choices, and you all have chosen to be here to lead our city, and this is a great night for us to go into seven folks. And when that came to the ballot, I did some work on it, and there was a lot of talk that if we reduced from nine to seven, we wouldn't be a democracy. And I said, well, San Mateo has five, and they seem to have a democracy. So I think we have an opportunity here with seven of you to be more efficient, and I even would like to see you take a look at, I think the charter says you have to have three council meetings a month. I would strive for that. The Palo Alto Weekly had great quotes from last year, and Herb Borack, who is not here tonight, I don't think, had one. He said, "It doesn't matter if we have nine or seven. If we go to seven, they'll just talk longer." And I don't believe that. I would suggest very strongly that we limit the oral communications to two minutes. You can say an awful lot in two minutes, and I think that would give a good case. I kidded former Mayor Niss that I was going to bring a stopwatch down, but she didn't show today, so I'll leave my stopwatch in my pocket. But thank you for serving, and I think it's a great day, and we have a chance to turn over a new leaf. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we move to minutes approval.
Move approval.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate for me to vote on the December minutes since I was not present?
It's fine to vote, but if you're more comfortable recusing yourself, you can do that as well.
Sometimes people abstain on that kind of thing, too.
It is technically permissible to vote because you are all considered to be sort of interchangeable as council members, and so, and I did read them.
Some of us are more interchangeable than others. Have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by, moved by Councilmember Boyce, seconded by Councilmember Coog. You vote on the board, please. And that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Niss absent. Next, we move to the consent calendar. Are there public speakers for the consent calendar? Okay. In that case, can we have a motion? In that case, can we have a motion?
Consent.
Consent moved by Councilmember Boyce, seconded by Councilmember Koo. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Niss absent. It is now ten minutes to eight, and we are twenty-two minutes off of the schedule. We have two action items since the wee debatement's been continued. The main one, can I ask how many people are here for the Wilton Court? So, most of you folks are from, for the Wilton Court.
Mayor Filsoth, we have 21 speakers at this point.
We have 21 speakers currently for the Wilton Court item. Let me ask the council, since this is going to go on for a while, and then we have the Redwood Circle item, which it's important we get to tonight because it's been postponed. Is there, is there desire on council to take a five-minute break if it sits to, if it sticks to five minutes before we get into Wilton Court?
Could we take it after public speakers?
What do you think? Can we do that? So, we'll do that. We'll take a five-minute break after the conclusion of the public speakers period. And with 21 people, I apologize, I think we're going to take Roger Smith's suggestion and allocate two minutes. If that's okay.
So, Mayor Filsoth?
Yes.
We usually begin these items by inviting council members to make disclosures, and then we have staff report and report by the applicant before the public comment.
So, let's, yes, so, okay, so, let's do that. Let's start at that end. Any public disclosures to make regarding contact with this organization?
Yeah, so Representative of the Organization came to my office hours. I spoke with the person. Nothing that was mentioned was not in the record. I also talked to Becky, I'm not sure she's here. Becky's here, last week, and she gave me some viewpoints, mainly of people's opinion of the project. And, oh yeah, one other person came to my office hours, but it was after my office hours ended, so I just told her that office hours has ended.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes, I did meet with Palo Alto Housing's Cheryl Klein, who gave me some information that actually, more specific points about the project. I didn't really see it in disclosures. And I am on the email list for Ventura, so I do keep track of what's going on there, but we haven't had conversations.
Thank you. Councilmember Fine, Vice Mayor Fine.
I also met with Cheryl Klein, who discussed the project and gave me a little bit of information about the financing in a 100 percent housing project versus retail project. I don't know if I have to disclose it, but I've regularly shopped at Euromart, and despite what you may think, I have gotten my hair cut occasionally at Family Fashion.
I don't believe I've ever been to Euromart, but I have met with Ms. Klein and also with Ms. Sanders and the Ventura neighborhood, and I have not learned anything that is not in the public domain. Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, no information that's not public.
Councilmember Cormac.
On October 7th last year, the Board Chair, Cheryl Klein, was at the Ventura Neighborhood Association where I and another candidate were, along with Becky Saunders. Very general information, nothing, and it was an earlier version of the project. At that time, Palo Alto Housing Corp offered a Treehouse tour on October 18th, which I did attend, and conveniently Becky Saunders and many of the Ventura residents were there as well. Most of the discussion at that point was about Palo Alto Housing operates there, other places, including Treehouse, and it was not directly relevant to Wilton Court.
With that, does the staff have a presentation?
We do. Let me get it uploaded really quickly, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. This is Graham Owen with the City Planning Staff. I've been working with the applicant on the project that's here before you today. This is 3703 through 3709 El Camino Real, better known as Wilton Court. It is, oh. It's a request by Palo Alto Housing Corporation to rezone the site at 3709 through 3703 through 3709 El Camino Real, and with the purpose of constructing a four-story, 59-unit, 100 percent affordable housing project. As a component of this, they're requesting rezoning the site from CN to CNAH. That's the AH combining district, which would be added to the underlying zoning. Architecture review of the project, design enhancement exception for setback encroachments on the rear alley, as well as an interior lot line, as well as waiver from the retail preservation requirements that are otherwise applicable to the site. So, this application, just so you're aware, would represent about 19 percent of the housing units that the city is targeting for completion in 2019 per the comprehensive plan. So, as a bit of background, here's an aerial photograph showing the site. So, it's located in the Ventura neighborhood on the northeast corner of Wilton Avenue and El Camino Real. It's two parcels, 3703 and 3709 El Camino Real. The existing zoning is CN, as well as the existing comprehensive plan, land use designation, neighborhood commercial, which is predominantly a commercial zoning that also allows for a mixed use of a neighborhood-serving nature. A lot area just under half of an acre, and the existing and previous uses on the site, retail, as well as auto services. Currently, there's a coin shop, Euromart, a bridal shop, and a beauty salon. So, the existing buildings, there's two buildings on the site, and they total about 8,000 square feet of floor area. This is the existing zoning map for the vicinity. So, as I mentioned, it's CN, the existing zoning is CN. And to the north, along Wilton Avenue, you see a gradual decrease in intensity and density as you go north. So, you have adjacent to the site, an RM 30 zone, which is multifamily mixed use, excuse me, multifamily zoning. Further along, R2, which is two residents per site, and then R1, which is a single-family residential.
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes, sir.
I'm advised that we are now up to at least 27 speakers on this item, and I am going to request that anybody who wants to speak, please get your card in with dispatch. And I think probably what we'll do is take cards until 8:10 this afternoon, and then not take anymore. So, if you want to speak, please get your card in. Thanks very much. Sorry about that.
Sorry. I'll be brief as well. So, this is the site plan showing the orientation of the building on the lot. So, it's pushed up to the setbacks on El Camino Real and Wilton Avenue. It's an L-shaped building, four stories in height, like I mentioned. I'll get to the elevations in a second. The lobby for the building, the main pedestrian access is at the corner, and then bicycle access is on Wilton Avenue frontage, or, excuse me, not on Wilton, it's on El Camino Real frontage, in two distinct areas for long-term bicycle parking. Vehicles would access the site via the alley, which is at the rear, two different drive aisles that lead to two levels of podium and below-grade parking beneath the building. Probably the main feature of the building that's kind of an amenity value is a podium-level courtyard that's above the garage at the rear. Here are the main street elevations. The first on the top is the Wilton Avenue frontage, and then the one on the bottom is the El Camino Real frontage. Mix of materials on the ground floor, boardform concrete and glass for the doors and windows. And then, the upper levels, second through fourth floors, mix of terracotta tile and stucco. These are the east and the north elevation. So, this is the rear elevation, which is actually facing the commercial buildings that are on El Camino Real, and then the elevation off of the alley, which faces a multifamily residential building. So, a number of key issues, I'll go through this very quickly. The key for the rezoning in particular is comprehensive plan consistency. So, in the draft record of land use action, I have included a number of policies and programs that are relevant to the, to the application from the comp plan. El Camino Real design guidelines and South El Camino Real design guidelines, again, there's a number of policies that you can refer to in the, in the staff report. This is a 100 percent affordable housing project. One update from the staff report is that the applicant is proposing to do 35 percent of the units as specifically reserved for individuals with developmental disabilities. It's up from 25 percent. Forty-one parking spaces, which is in excess of the AH combining district standards, which is the requested zone. With the exception of the design enhancement exception for the garage setbacks, as I mentioned, the project does conform to the AH combining district standards, which is the requested zone. TDM, so the neighbors, neighbors that are in the vicinity of the project have raised a number of concerns about traffic and parking as they relate to the project. So, the applicant has provided a TDM plan, as well as a parking analysis, which is included in the staff report. There are findings for each of the requested entitlements, which are included in both the ordinance and the draft record of land use action. And project is exempt from environmental review per guideline section 15194. It does meet the criteria that are established in both 15192 and 15194, which are applicable to the project. The project was reviewed by the PTC, as well as the ARB, and we do have one of the members of the architecture review board here, and the PTC as well, that can answer any comments that you have about the review. I will say that it was, passed both bodies unanimously with their recommendations. So, with that, we, I'll leave it there, but we are recommending, staff is recommending that the council find the project exempt from CEQA, introduce for first reading, and adopt the ordinance to rezone the site, and as well as to adopt the proposed record of land use action for the architecture review, design enhancement exception, and retail preservation waiver. So, if you have any questions, be happy to take them.
Thank you. And with that, let us turn to public comment.
Yeah, thank you. City Manager reminded me that we do have a supplemental memo, app places memo, that was provided to the, to the council, just to bring your attention to that.
Ah-huh.
And just in case we get to there, so, staff's recommendation is that it would be inclusive of that, the recommendations in the app places memo, where we modified two conditions.
Do you want to give a quick summary of it?
Yes, we modified, we modified two conditions. First condition with regards to, both of them, by the way, are already components of the project. These are just reiterations or refinements to the conditions so that it's more explicit in the, in the record. But one of them is to specifically restrict the area median income of the people that would be living at the site to 80 percent AMI. The affordable housing combining district allows up to 120 AMI, but for the purposes of this particular project, the restriction would be 80 percent. Yeah, and we discussed this with the applicant, and they are on board with the proposal. This would be exclusive of one manager's unit, which wouldn't be similarly restricted. The second is with regards to off-site improvements. There was a, some discussion at the ARB about the idea of doing a loading zone on Wilton Avenue. We explored that option with the Transportation Division, and they didn't feel as though a loading zone on Wilton Avenue was warranted or needed. But just, so to clarify, there is no loading zone that's proposed on Wilton Avenue. That's an area that has unrestricted parking currently, and that is what's proposed in the, in the project plans. And this is just to reiterate that the city is not going to be advocating for a loading zone or any other sort of loading or parking restrictions on Wilton Avenue. So, essentially keeping the existing parking that's there.
Okay. Thank you very much. If it's, if it's brief, I'd like to do questions and so forth after, but, okay.
So, in the staff report, it says 25 percent is dedicated to the development disabled. And then, when you did your presentation, you said 35 percent. Now, on this memo, it goes back to 25 percent. Exactly, could you kind of clarify, what is it actually, 35 or 25?
Right. So, the applicant about a week ago provided an updated project description that indicated 35 percent, not from 25 percent. The condition that we included was a minimum of 25 percent. That's more for the purposes of ensuring that there's adequate parking, because essentially the AH combining district doesn't require a minimum parking standard for individuals that have special needs. So, if that's something that the council is interested in discussing, you could certainly amend that condition as, as needed.
Okay, thank you.
With that, let's go to the public, and the first speaker is George Perry, and you'll have two minutes.
Mayor, Mayor Filsoth, we may want to hear from the applicant as well, because they have a presentation.
I'm sorry, does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes.
In that case, we'd like to invite the applicant to make a presentation. Sorry, I didn't see it on that. How, how long is the presentation? Sorry?
Did I go quick?
Prefer we, prefer we took the applicant's presentation first. Prefer we took the applicant's presentation first.
Who is it? Oh, there you are. Can't go?
I'd rather we do the applicant's presentation first and get that out of the way. Yeah, afraid so. Sorry. How much, how much time do we schedule for the applicant?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? Okay. Welcome, Ms. Klein.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Filsoth and City Council members. Thank you so much for allowing us to come tonight and present this very exciting 100 percent affordable housing project to you. It's a great way to start off the new year. My name is Cheryl Klein. I am the Board Chair of Palo Alto Housing. I live in Palo Alto, and I'm passionate about keeping our community diverse. Palo Alto Housing was started in 1969 by your predecessors, the City Council of that year, and they wanted to make sure that Palo Alto had a commitment to providing low and moderate-income housing, both within the city and externally. Today, we have 650 units throughout the city, in North Palo Alto, as well as in South Palo Alto. We house all different kinds of households, seniors, families, individuals. We have a total of 2,000 residents, and our waiting list today has 3,000 people on it. In addition to providing housing, we try and build communities, and we do this through our Resident Services Division, which offers after-school programs, summer camp for children, reading club, family activities, lectures, community meals, and education programs. And there is a picture of our summer entrepreneur club, and they're hawking their wares in front of Whole Foods last summer. We plan to do the same at Wilton Court. Let me just. Okay. So, we plan to do the same at Wilton Court. It will be 100 percent affordable housing. Palo Alto, there will be a Palo Alto live-work preference, and it will be targeted for households who earn between 30 and 60 percent of the area median income. That translates into roughly $28,000 to $55,000 a year. In addition, we are offering, we plan to offer 21 apartments for adults that have developmental disabilities. We've partnered with Housing Choices, a nonprofit organization that helps find housing and offer services to these individuals, and with them, we will lease up these units. Jan Stokely from Housing Choices is here tonight, and she's going to speak, and she's available for any questions that you may have. Okay. So, there's Pear and his mom, Lenaya, and they're also going to be speaking tonight. Pear grew up in Palo Alto. Now, he lives in a development, an affordable housing development in Mountain View, and we're hoping that to offer housing to people like Pear at Wilton Court. So, on the first floor of our building, there'll be Resident Services, there'll be a community room with a kitchen, bike storage, a gym, a computer lab, as well as a management office and laundry services. The building will have 41 parking spaces, which is more than adequate for our residents. Taking into account the adults with developmental disabilities who generally do not drive, there is one parking space for every apartment in the building. In addition to that, we will have a transportation demand management program. In addition to that, we will have a transportation demand management program and plan to provide VTA and Caltrans passes for residents. We will have bike sharing, onsite bike storage and parking, and we will educate our residents about using public transportation in order to meet the 30% reduction in traffic to and from the building. So we have worked hard to reach out to our new neighbors in the Ventura community over the past six months. We've gone to two of their community meetings. We have walked Wilton Avenue, meeting the neighbors door by door. In addition, we've offered tours of our Treehouse project, which is about a half a mile away, and has a very similar mix of units to this project. We've continued talking to the neighbors even this past week to address the last-minute concerns that they have. Becky Sanders and Noah Fidel, who Noah lives on the street, have been very helpful in order to try and bridge and develop that relationship. And we're hoping, once the building is built, that the neighborhood will take advantage of our community room for their community meetings, and perhaps we can even have them on the outdoor patio. I'm going to turn over the presentation now to Adrian Steichen from Piottak. She's the architect, and she's going to give you sort of a look and feel of what the building is like. I want to just stress before I do that, that you know that stable housing allows people to thrive, and this project will allow 59 households to thrive in our community. It's a great way to start off the new year, and I thank you for your support. Adrian?
Good evening, Adrian Steichen, Piottak Architects. Can we get out of this presentation? Go to the other one that I sent you. Yep. Hopefully the view will play within it. Thank you. So as has been presented, this is on the edge of the Ventura neighborhood. I wanted to just briefly walk you through what we've done in terms of design. So these are the setbacks represented on this certainly odd-shaped collection of parcels. We carved out a backyard to sort of mimic and reflect the backyard pattern and the neighborhood to the north, and then took moves to step down to the neighborhood, the RM30 zone. I define an entry on the corner and accentuate the corner architecturally. As described, the basement garage is accessed from the alleyway. The ground floor, the community services that Cheryl was describing on the ground floor, the bike storage, the community room, the fitness space, the community kitchen, the management office that oversees sort of the front door, as well as the community space, the laundry room, and then services on Wilton Avenue. Again, parking accessed from the alley on the north side. The podium, again, that simple L-shaped and community spaces, outdoor gathering spaces on the podium courtyard. The building materials, as have been described, boardform concrete and storefront glazing on the ground floor, window pattern and terracotta tiles on the upper stories. A place for the public art has already been defined as an option, and then sun shades for solar shading on this south-facing facade. We've put together a brief video that I'm hopefully going to be able to share with you. The mouse is not so easy to see. And this video is intended to help you understand better the street experience of the new building. So this is walking along El Camino Real. The ground floor plantings pulling you away from the building and also enhancing the street experience. The community room and the kitchen are immediately on your right. Trees are in planters right now, as we understand, based on the utilities and the utility easements in El Camino Real. Again, that front door for the whole project here on the corner of Wilton and El Camino Real with a place to sit outside, wait for your friends, wait for your car, wait for any other services that might be coming to pick you up. Again, landscaping along the ground floor, services, but still lushly landscaped around the back corner. There is an existing utility box there on the corner that we have to stay away from, so that's why the building steps back. The alley, the garage entrance to the upper garage on the right, the garage to the entrance to the lower garage at the end of the alley. There is an access stair for egress out of the courtyard right now that allows for egress out of the courtyard, and so we're going up that briefly, and then we'll be able to see the courtyard space that's available to residents and potentially, hopefully, open to community members, as Cheryl described. So large plantings and gathering areas, also quiet and sort of protected from the neighbors, too. There's been a lot of conversations about screening the courtyard activities, both acoustically and visually, from the neighbors, and so we've really taken great care to do so. And this video will wrap up, and we can take any questions that you have about the design as we go forward. Thanks.
Okay. Are we ready? Okay. In that case, now let's invite Mr. Perry back, and thank you for your patience.
Sure. I don't want to cause any problems. Two? All right. Two minutes is what it should be. It should be one. I'm going to make it one, because I want to go home. So listen, you all have a whole handful, and I hope that you can, you know, pull it off by, you know, not putting too much pressure on these guys and understanding what they're trying to do, and all the people that you're going to hear in a minute. I'm done. Peace on you.
Thank you. Next will be Nicole Ventry.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Nicole Ventry. I live at 461 Wilton Avenue, just behind this proposed project. I just have three major points, really. One, this is a very large building, and it absolutely encroaches on the current building that I live in and manage. It's a very dense building for such a busy corner, and such a small corner nonetheless, with a potential for a lot of tenants. A lot of people can be living in this building. I'm going to just say 100, probably at most, if we have double occupancy in some of the studios, which is permitted. The ARB asked that a sun study be done. A sun study was done. It actually concluded that we will have no sunlight on my property for the winter months, and they did not comment, though, on what that means for fall and early spring. So that means myself and all of my tenants have absolutely no direct sunlight during a decent chunk of the year. I would highly, highly implore you to please drop this building down one story, for three stories. Many of the amenities could be eliminated in order to accommodate 59 units in a much smaller building that wouldn't be so, just ridiculously large. Parking, please, please, please consider having the entrance to this parking from El Camino. That alleyway is way too small to have this much traffic going up and down. I have to make a three-point turn in order to get out of my parking spot, which is actually located on the alleyway itself. That means I will be contending with people driving up and out a blind-turned driveway. I will have to be dealing with trash trucks that are also parked in that alleyways, they frequently do, the mailman, the UPS. Everyone who wants to go to the Chinese restaurant and can't find parking absolutely parks in this alleyway, and I know because I've lived there for almost 10 years. So I really, really have a very acute understanding of that alleyway and what it can and cannot support, and it cannot support this, despite the studies that are being done. My last point is not enough parking. If we can encourage the 35% occupancy for developmentally disabled and ensure that they do not drive, I would be much happier with that, because as we saw from our previous presentation from the Transportation Agency, we have a lot of people who still drive cars, even though they're low-income. So the previous claims that low-income folks do not have cars, I have to disagree with, and it was just recently projected on your board. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Andrea Zhang.
Hi, good evening, Palo Alto City Council. My name is Andrea Sang. In 2018, I graduated from college and started my first job helping people with developmental and other disabilities. During my time as a student, I saw how the housing crisis affected low-income students and families, and through working with my organization, I've learned about the dire need for affordable housing for our community. I urge you to please vote in favor of Wilton Court, because this development could really make a difference by supporting an inclusive Palo Alto community that celebrates people of all abilities and backgrounds. With your approval of the project, you will make a positive and lasting difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be John Ma.
Good evening. I'm the owner of the property adjacent to the Wilton Court project. My, I really only had, I wish to just bring up a few concerns. The primary one is vehicular safety on the alleyway. I have a car park, which basically in the back, when tenants pull out, they're in a blind spot. So it is essentially an accident waiting to happen with all the traffic going in and out to the garage. The second, my second point there is, as Nicole pointed out, there's a second car park where my tenants have to pull out and cannot do so in one turn. It is a narrow alley. Nicole brought up most of my concerns, and the, I mean, the other one I have is the quality of life. With the additional encroachment of five feet in the back of the alley, you really are depriving my tenants of sunlight. Lastly, I wish the, I hope somebody took into consideration construction parking. When this project is going to be built, where are all the workers going to park? Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Bryman.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me and everyone here talking in support of the project. I have a 19-year-old son, Daniel, who has special needs. He is in the post-secondary program at Palo Alto Unified School District, taking classes at Butthill College, and now holding a job at the Oshman JCC in Palo Alto, and also starting an internship at Nest, which is right behind Gunn High School. He currently lives with us. My husband grew up in Palo Alto. My in-laws are 45-year residents of Palo Alto. We plan on staying in Palo Alto. The one, Daniel desperately wants to move out. The one caveat is that he's close to his family. Of course, it's very hard to find housing in this area and on a low-income salary, plus having special needs, even harder. Daniel works, as I mentioned, in Palo Alto. His entire support network, including his case managers, friends, family, all live here. He does not drive. He does not plan to drive, and we live close enough to a property like this to be able to walk, so I do want to note that as well. There will be no, there would be no car. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ellen Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Suth and members of the council. My name's Ellen Smith. I'm a longtime resident of Palo Alto. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. The League supports city efforts to encourage the development of subsidized housing for low and moderate, low and below-market rate housing projects by private nonprofit developers. The League also supports increasing multi-unit housing with access to public transportation along corridors. For these reasons, we encourage you to accept the findings of the Architectural Review Board and approve the recommendations of the staff report to allow the nonprofit Palo Alto Housing to develop 59 studio apartments on this site. All units in the project would be deed-restricted for low and very low-income individuals, including the units for individuals with developmental disabilities. Land appropriate for multi-use housing is scarce in Palo Alto. This site, though small, is a good one. It is on a bus transit corridor. It is near many services. It is not directly adjacent to single-family homes. This is a perfect opportunity for you to apply the Affordable Housing Combining District to this site. It is also appropriate and necessary for you to waive the retail preservation requirement so that this project can be economically feasible without further impacting the neighborhood with additional retail parking and traffic. We also encourage you to approve the request for the design enhancement exception, as this would allow for more parking spaces, which would help address the concerns of some neighbors. We also note that Palo Alto Housing has done much to address these parking traffic concerns through various measures, including the Traffic Demand Management Program. This project will not only provide workforce housing for people we depend on in our community, but also provide otherwise scarce inclusive housing for adults with developmental disabilities, many of whom also work in this community. In the past, Palo Alto has been a leader in the provision of affordable housing. Now is the time for the council to put our city back on that track. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Sanders.
Good evening, council members. I'm going to blow your mind. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to celebrate. How bad it? Round of applause for Becky. So, oh. Okay. But with all due respect, Nicole and John, I heard you about your sunlight, so I'm going to ask you guys to engineer some sunlight, right? We heard from one of the council members last year, last week, that Palo Alto can do anything. So let's try to figure out a way to make this project work for our friends. I did hear you. So anyway, I want to say thank you to Cheryl, Randy, Jonathan, Rob, Graham, and then Noah, who really carried the ball for Ventura down the field to get us to first and goal-to-go. Okay, this is where we are, and here's what venturians are expecting. We were concerned about the daylight plane, and the architect did step it back for us, so we do not have a giant industrial shoebox. Thank you, Palo Alto Housing. We took it toward the Treehouse. We're pleased with the hominess of the space. It's going to be real homes, lovely amenities, outstanding residence, homes for residents, outstanding, not industrial feeling. Oh, my gosh, summing up. Loading zone, we're feeling really good about not having a loading zone on Wilton Court. We're really excited that they're going to preserve pedestrian access on ECR and Wilton during construction. Pet peeve is Ventura gets wiped out when construction projects take over the sidewalk and the parking, and the parking spaces. Construction impacts, we have approval, condition of approval, no construction parking on Wilton Avenue and surrounding streets. Thank you, Palo Alto Housing. Cheryl sent us the TDM. Looks good. They said they're going to monitor, they're going to listen to us when we complain if they don't get their five-year evaluation period process covered. They said they would listen to us. Thank you, Palo Alto Housing. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm saving the last that I didn't get, so you won't be able to hear the one thing I'm not happy about, which is we really do need a traffic study. So I want you to fold that into North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Cheryl, really appreciate it. We had a lot of people that worked together to get us going. And Noah, are you coming up next? Here's Noah. Amazing job, Noah.
Thank you. Noah Fidel.
Mayor Phil Suth, city council members. I'm Noah Fidel. I'm a Wilton Ave resident of two years and a Palo Alto resident of 15 years. I'm raising my three crazy boys on Wilton Ave, and I didn't expect to be here in support, but I'm excited to be here in support of this project. I wanted to make a really important thank you to Cheryl and Randy from Palo Alto Housing, sitting behind here. We've only been talking for a couple of weeks, but they've been incredibly collaborative in trying to find creative solutions and been very flexible in making this project great for the neighbors, and I really appreciate that. Also wanted to note that, you know, this was moved up in the agenda. We had a tight timeframe of vacations, and wanted to highlight Graham, Rob, and, let's see, Jonathan. They made time to meet with us the next day. We're very accommodating in meeting some of our requests that we had consensus already built with Palo Alto Housing, and they put those into the plan. I did not expect this. It's my first time working with the city staff, and I really appreciate you guys. You stepped up. It was great. Wanted to just kind of close with, I think we did make some compromises to make this work for everybody, and that's, you know, compromise is a fact of life. There's one big thing we're taking on faith, which is traffic. That is a concern for venturians. And one- And one thing we heard was that to make a traffic study happen, which we have everybody's support to do, we need city council support and directing staff to prioritize that. And I see that not only as a way to make sure that this project succeeds and we don't have adverse impacts, but actually to help the neighbors really be comfortable in supporting future projects like this along ECR. So, if I could ask for council's help and support in directing staff to prioritize a traffic study, whether that's part of the North Ventura Plan or just a separate traffic study, I think the neighborhood would really appreciate that and see that as kind of a nice holding up the city's end of the bargain and the compromise. So, thanks again. We're very much in support, and thank you.
Thank you. Winter Delenbeck.
Let me give some explanation about that traffic study. I was in, in the last couple of weeks, involved in some talks with the parties, and I'll say something more about that. The neighbors are concerned with the traffic that comes into this neighborhood, into Wilton and a couple of streets, from East Meadow onto Park, and then flows onto that street. I know this well because that's an area that I use. They're right about this, and they're asking your help in this. This has come a long way in two weeks. I have been involved in a lot of contentious issues around BMR housing, affordable housing, over a long time, and there was a bit of a breakthrough in process here that I haven't seen in a very long time. I wish Palo Alto Housing now were bringing more projects to Palo Alto so that we could keep going with this. I'm very serious about this. I saw something that impressed the hell out of me in the last couple of weeks, both Palo Alto Housing, this neighborhood, how everything started to function together, city staff, things got really good. And I think that, I really think something is, there's been a breakthrough, and for a number of reasons. And I think, I think you all should listen about possibly coughing up some funds for a traffic study. I think it's been hard-earned. I just want to say a couple of other things. Thank you so much for this. I am so excited about this project. Okay, I'll leave it at that. I'm just excited about the project. One last thing, I saw all those raised beds in your video. I hope some of those are going to be possible for some of the residents to do some vegetable gardening if they want.
That's all. I'm excited.
Thank you. Lenea Wickstrom.
Honorable mayor, city council members, here I am again. I urge you to vote yes on Wilton Court. Vote yes to the applicant's proposal, the A-H Zone, and approve all the elements of the Palo Alto Housing proposal in order to make this project possible. I'm so happy to hear what I'm hearing tonight. As the aging parent of a disabled, developmentally disabled adult, my husband and I are invested in housing for people like our son. That's a crucial step for people who are learning to live independently. Though my son, Per, will, may never gain a residence in this particular proposed development, there are hundreds of Palo Alto residents like him who need a roof. They need a roof close to their independent living support services and to job shopping and entertainment. Because very, very few will ever drive or own cars, that roof needs to be close to places they can get to using public transit, biking, or walking. And the letter from me that you should, should be in your packet has quite a long note about traffic and parking and the developmentally and intellectually disabled. As a 50-plus-year resident of Palo Alto, I support creating much more housing in Palo Alto for the missing middle, as well as for low and extremely low-income people. As the parent of a developmentally disabled young adult, I focus on advocating for the intellectually and developmentally disabled, who are much in need of exactly the opportunity that Wilton Court presents. Inclusive housing in their own community, close to public transit, and alongside the abled. Thank you for your vote to bring Wilton Court into being.
Thank you. Next will be Per Maresca.
Good evening, members of the city council. As my mother said, my name is Per Maresca. I'm 27 years old and was born and raised here in Palo Alto. I'm here to speak for myself and many others in Palo Alto who are intellectually or developmentally disabled and who need housing we can afford. We are building skills and independent living for our futures. We want to be full members of our own community. Wilton Court is the kind of housing that will meet our needs for affordable and inclusive housing. Housing is part of a diverse community of residents, right in the town we know and where all our support systems are. Wilton Court has features that everyone can use, and they're really important to people like myself. There are bike storage locations, laundry, and a patio and chore room for gettys' others. The location on El Camino is right next to the buses that we use all the time to get to shopping, entertainment, and our jobs. We will be good neighbors to the other residents and to the Ventura neighborhood, and we hope that they will want to be our neighbors. Please help Wilton Court become a reality. Thank you.
Thanks, Per. Jerry Underdahl.
Good evening, council. I'm very glad to be here and to congratulate Palo Alto Housing and the neighborhood, you and prior councils, the Planning Board and the Architectural Review Board, for getting us to a point where after six years, we can approve an affordable housing project in Palo Alto and show that we can build affordable housing. One of the complaints six years ago was that the Maybell project was a project that was not being done right. And what I'm hoping, and what I'm hearing, is that we have a project here that meets the standards for being done right. And what I want to encourage, and I believe is important, is that you be unanimous in your support of this project. You have to be the leaders. On this council, we have, actually, there's only one who, a person left from the time of the Maybell project. But there was, among those of you here, some were in opposition to that project. It's going to be important for you to show that your disagreements have been met. It is important to go forward with unanimity on this really wonderful project. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing this project coming to a neighborhood near me. Thanks.
Thank you. Katie Talbot.
Good evening. I cut down what I was going to say because it's all been said really nicely, so I'm down to two sentences. As I listened, I was really impressed with the significance and the importance of this project, so I'm asking you to please approve and support this project to support Palo Alto's diversity. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Maria Mariet.
Thank you to the council for all of the time and effort that you've put into sifting through all this information and hearing all of it. My son was born in this community and grew up here. He is an adult with developmental disabilities. I, so I especially appreciate that this housing will benefit him and his friends who grew up in the Palo Alto Unified School District in the special education programs here. They all use bikes, buses, and trains to get everywhere, and you've probably seen them all riding around town up and down at the Apple Store quite often. So, the location is perfect for public transportation. So, I just want to thank you for helping my son stay in his community.
Thank you. Next, Linny, sorry, Jan Stokely.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm Jan Stokely, Executive Director of Housing Choices. We're a nonprofit organization. We receive referrals from San Andreas Regional Center of adults with developmental disabilities who are seeking housing to live independently and to live in the community where they grew up. The number-one concern of families who have adults here in Palo Alto is opportunity to have affordable housing here in Palo Alto. Wilton Court would address that. It would also create an inclusive and integrated community housing setting in a location that's ideal for people who are transit-dependent and do not drive and do not own cars. I've seen, over the course of several years, remarkable dialogue in this community about how you tackle the challenges of creating affordable housing and creating housing that targets deeply enough to include people like those that we support. So, Wilton Court is really a wonderful example of how the community can come together to create housing that is inclusive of people of all incomes and all abilities, and I thank you for your support.
Linny Melina.
Mayor Filtheth and members of the council, my name's Linny Melina, and I live just two short blocks from the site. I strongly urge you to approve all of the applications related to constructing the 59 units of low-income housing. In particular, I'd like to speak to the waiver for retail, which is needed to make this project financially feasible. I live a block from El Camino and want retail to be successful, and so I made a point of patronizing businesses on that street, but unfortunately, retail has not done well in this area. Low-income housing is in much greater need than another vacant retail space. Please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Globus.
Good evening, Mayor Filtheth and the city council. I just wanted to say thank you for your support for this project. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said by other community members, but I just want to add that I know the staff talked about how there's a goal of 300 new units a year, and this would represent about 19% of that. I just want to remind the council that last year, we added about 57 units of the VTA lot, but we're in the process of losing 75 more at the President Hotel. So, I would urge the council to aim a little bit higher and aim for possibly 600 units to account for last year and this year. And I think this is a great part of that and a great first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Leora Ross.
Hi, mayor and city council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. I live at 215 Alvarano Avenue, and I'm in support of this proposal. My sister, she had a traumatic brain injury when she was six months old before I was born, and that left her with developmental disabilities. And she, she's wonderful. She works at Sephora. She's the hardest-working person I know, and she lives with us now, but I know she would love a place to live on her own with the support that she needs. So, when we talk about 59 units, what we're really talking about, 59 people like my sister who, whose lives would be just completely changed by this. I also, in anticipation for tonight, asked my, my family members, who are all Palo Alto residents, to, to ask them if I could, you know, share their names as, as supporters of this as well, and they said yes. So, that's Mark Ross, Sarah Good, Max Ross, Deanna O'Clare, Angela Evans, Joan Ross, and Sean Holman, all with me tonight in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. David Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor Filtheth, Vice Mayor Fine, members of the city council. My name's David Meyer. I present Silicon Valley at Home. We're an affordable housing advocacy organization that works all across Santa Clara County. Just want to highlight just a couple of things. I think just really happy to be here and support this project. Think that the setting aside of homes for people with developmental disabilities, this project is just so important. We know that it's really hard to find these types of housing opportunities for, for people as vulnerable population, and so it's really great that, that this proposal is including such a high percentage of units. We're really looking forward to seeing those built. I would also just want to commend Palo Alto Housing for working with the community. I mean, I spend time in a bunch of other cities, and it's rare to see, you know, this kind of great connection and work between developer and members of the community to actually come to a balanced project that's reflective of community concerns and also still meeting the city's goals to get housing built. And finally, I just say thanks to the city council and all the hard work of staff. Palo Alto now has in place several tools to incentivize housing and affordable housing development in the city, including the overlay zone, which we're talking about here, but also pieces of the ordinance that you've already passed at the end of last year to implement your housing work plan. So, I just say let's get this year off to a great start. Let's use some of those tools, and let's make this a great year for housing by starting off with Wilton Court. Thanks.
Thank you. Trina Lovercheck.
Good evening, Mayor Filtheth and fellow council, other council members. My name's Trina Lovercheck. I've been a resident of Palo Alto for 50 years now. I'm here to urge you to approve this A-H overlay. It creates 19% of the net new housing units the city has projected to build this year. That's a not-inconsiderable amount. The project such approval would allow is 100% affordable. The 59 units would be reserved for those who qualify as low-income or developmentally disabled. Approximately 25% of the units will be reserved for adults with developmentally, developmental disabilities to allow them to live independently, and it will all be inclusive. It provides more parking than is required. It's located along the transit corridor with bus service to the California Avenue downtown, including the University Avenue Caltrain, as well as the San Antonio train station. It's also walkable to various places along El Camino and potentially the California Avenue train stop. I realize that this places some retail, but in my 40 years of living in Barron Park, I can't remember seeing many people go in or out of the coin shop or the bridal shop. In fact, I can't remember ever seeing anyone go in or out of those. I know the market there is much more popular, and I hope they'll find a place to go. The hair salon has already moved across the street. So, again, I ask you to approve the affordable housing overlay so this project can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Max Kapinski.
Hello, Mayor Filtheth and city council. My name's Max Kapinski. The perfectionist in me, the purist, would find a few things to push for in this project, a few more knobs to turn, a few more buttons to push, make it taller, make it denser, less parking perhaps. And that's always going to be my angle and the angle of lots of people in this room. And that's the nature of a project like this. It's a product of compromise. I was prepared today for kind of an uphill fight against the usual kind of, the usual reasons, the usual breadth and depth of opposition to a project like this, but I'm very pleasantly surprised tonight, and I think lots of people in this room are, to see so much support and satisfaction from people, not just who are direct neighbors, but from all around the city for all kinds of reasons. I see real support and enthusiasm from, yeah, everyone all around town, and it gives me a lot of hope that we are willing and able to develop these tools to build affordable housing, to exercise them, and to agree that it's for the best, it'll, it'll, that we'll probably do a good job, and that it's worth the uncertainties, the risks, and the hangups, and that we can, we can agree to go forward and make this our future and fulfill our promise to build housing for the most needy in our city. Thank you.
Next, former mayor Pat Bird.
Good evening, good evening, mayor and council. So, I'd also like to really commend this project and commend all the participants who have gone into achieving consensus here. And I think it's an opportunity for us to reflect on how constructively this project has ultimately occurred versus some of the other challenges we've had in the past. Consensus is not always easy to achieve, but we have a real fresh start from the leadership of the housing corporation of Cheryl Klein and now Randy Tsuda, who are taking just a great approach to really appreciating that the, a role of having neighborhood support means sitting down with the neighbors, listening to them, responding to their concerns to the extent that they can, and really wanting to be genuine parts of the neighborhood, which is reciprocal. The Ventura neighborhood and the leadership there have shown that they are sincere, that they truly value diversity in our community and want to support it and are willing to accept certain trade-offs and to be able to achieve that. And the willingness to listen to them and respond to them has just been a breath of fresh air, and it really bodes well. fresh air, and it really bodes well for these kinds of projects going forward. I would like to support the concern on the one remaining aspect that the neighborhood had, which is the existing and growing cut-through traffic problem that's been existing in the neighborhood, and the opportunity to fold a traffic study into perhaps the North Ventura Coordinate Area Plan, which is contiguous to this neighborhood. It would be completely logical and perhaps appropriate to have that traffic study extend there, and I think that would be a great approach. It also could be sooner rather than later because the timeliness would allow that. So I hope you'll support the project and the traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you. Shawnee Klinehouse.
Good evening, Mayor Philseth, City Council. Many years ago, as in the Board of Housing Choices Coalition, I know this isn't something that I usually talk about, I have different hats. At the time, I remember talking to a lot of residents that they found housing for, and I remember what impressed me most, developmentally disabled adults. They need the support of their community. They are depending on their parents to some extent, as long as the parents are around, and then on other systems. But what was most impressive was when they had their own place, they had privacy. They never had privacy before, and you would see a person who's 45 years old, and that's the first time when they had housing, that they actually had privacy, and that was really impressive to me. Anyway, this is a really important project. Please move forward.
Thank you. Kelsey Baines.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Baines. I am a Palo Alto resident and a psychologist at the VA Palo Alto, where I provide supportive services to homeless and previously homeless veterans, and would like to note that I'm here tonight representing myself only and not in an official government capacity. And I just want to express my enthusiastic support for this project. I've been really encouraged to hear the broad range of support it's gotten, even from people in the neighborhood, so that's been really nice. And I just want to note that Palo Alto's dearth of affordable housing is not just numbers on a page to me. I know real people who, because we don't have affordable housing supply, aren't able to live close enough to access services at our hospital, so they struggle to get the medical care that we offer at the hospital, mental health treatment, and work at the Palo Alto VA. So this affects me very personally, and I would just encourage the council and staff to think about, as you're kind of weighing the pros and cons of various housing proposals, that there are impacts to not building housing. So not building housing means there's more cars on the road, that more vulnerable people are displaced from our community, and that our homelessness problem grows worse. So I'm just looking forward to the council supporting this proposal. It seems like there's a lot of support for it, and we very much need this housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Rita Verhill.
Sorry about that. So I think this is a great project also. I would really hope that the city council clarifies how many apartments are going to be for disabled adults. We've heard 25%, we've heard 35, we've heard 21, so I think it's really important that you know exactly what you're getting in this project because it seems that much of the support and hope for this project is including these residents of Palo Alto. The other thing is, since we're talking about TDMs and housing and commutes and traffic and all that kind of stuff, it would be very nice if this project and other projects moving forward would first address the needs of Palo Alto residents or the adult parents of disabled children who are living in Palo Alto. If this housing is made available to people who live in San Jose, then we really haven't accomplished much. I think that this is a project for Palo Alto residents first. Thank you.
Thank you. Adina Levin.
Evening, Mayor, council members, and Palo Alto housing folk. My name is Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain. Unlike the earlier talk with Transportation Demand Management where that's an issue where as an organization will take a lead on issues with development that's on transit, this is something that we do not lead, but we do follow. We generally do support development on transit corridors if it is, you know, working with local support, local community residents, as well as respected leaders such as Housing Leadership Council and SV at Home and other sorts of organizations that are here. And with that, this is a good project that we do support. The location on transit is something that's helpful for the residents of affordable housing and particularly the developmentally disabled people who will not be driving. This fulfills the goals that the city has had with the comprehensive plan that so many residents have worked on, and we also do support looking at the traffic and transportation demand management opportunities with the Ventura plan so that the transportation can work with whatever it is that the city is going to be doing in that area as it pursues that plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Safir.
I'm another one of these 50-year residents of Palo Alto who would like to see this project go forward. We all know how badly this type of housing is needed in Palo Alto and how few locations there are to build it. I therefore urge you to approve the recommendations in the staff report, particularly including the waiver of the necessity of including retail. Including retail could possibly be a project killer. The retail at this location is not particularly neighborhood-serving and is therefore not a great loss and needn't be preserved. Please let the project go forward. We know we need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Baron.
Good evening. I'm David Baron. I'm a Palo Alto resident. I'd encourage the council to adopt all of the recommendations in the staff report. This is a good project that a lot of hard work has gone into, and it's the sort of project that the AH combining district is for. As a side note, I wish the special zoning rules for affordable housing didn't require the council to approve an AH combining district. That was partly done in the housing ordinance that was partly discussed last month. But back to this discussion, I'd urge the council to support the staff's three recommendations without making any changes that would make the project smaller or make it more costly. This is a small but significant step in housing people with more diversity of income in Palo Alto. Thank you.
And the final speaker will be Ann Markhard.
Good evening. I'm just a 40-year resident of Palo Alto, but very, very much in favor of this project. Palo Alto's been losing some of its diversity, which, you know, takes away from a community, and this project would be bringing back some of that diversity, which we desperately need. I also happen to be the executive director of Project Sentinel, which, an agency that provides fair housing services to the city, and fair housing is, you know, the concept is involved in this project, and so to reject this project could have a negative fair housing implication. So I encourage you to approve it on all bases, and thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we return to council. Let me look around a second and ask.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry?
Traditionally, we invite the applicant to respond for three minutes if they have a response.
Let me do that. Would Palo Alto Housing like to take three minutes and respond? They waived their rebuttal.
Mayor Philseth?
Yeah.
May I ask another question of the applicant?
Yes, you may.
Cheryl, could you address the construction traffic for us, please?
We have met with Becky and Noah to talk about a construction plan, and we will come up with a plan to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood when construction is taking place. We're hoping that we can find some parking lots nearby that we will be able to rent out so that the construction workers can park there and it can be a staging area for us. So we're going to start working on that.
And this is an effort that you will plan with our staff?
Oh, yes. Most, yes.
Thank you.
So earlier, we said that what we would do is take five minutes and stretch after public comment. Let me ask, what does everybody want to do? You think we're going to get through this real fast, or do you want to stop and catch a breath?
Two minutes would be really good.
Okay. So why don't we do that? Sorry to keep everybody, put everybody off for another, we've got two minutes on the table here. I'm going to say, let's target two and be going again in five. So, thank you very much, and I have lights from Councilmember Koo and Vice Mayor Fine, Councilmember DuBois, followed by Councilmember Corbach. Councilmember Koo.
So I want to start off with compliments to the new management at Palo Alto Housing for engaging in a meaningful conversation, meaningful conversation with the Ventura neighborhood residents and valuing the community. But I have some questions. So the subterranean parking, would that require tiebacks into the other properties, or would that not interfere?
We haven't gotten information at this stage as to whether or not tiebacks would be required. Given the setbacks, especially on the interior lot line adjacent to the commercial buildings, I would think that that's probably not feasible right there, but tiebacks onto adjacent properties, I think that's something that we certainly need to take a look at during building permit review.
So that would probably come later, right? It doesn't?
It would, yeah. It'd be a part of the demolition permit as well as the grading permit.
So I was wondering if Palo Alto Housing would be open to allow their Palo Alto complexes to be used as case study for parking needs. May I have the applicant answer? Mayor?
Yes. But maybe you could define exactly what you mean.
Yeah, the council member could clarify, just so I know, I fully understand the request.
I think there's quite a few questions about, you know, the number of parking we might need, and you have supplied actually a very good number for what you're proposing, so it's very encouraging. But I was wondering, as we move forward, you know, there's always parking case, study cases, analysis, which in, I think in the last couple of months, which we had one, which only, we were only able to get one apartment complex and six individuals to respond to how they feel about parking assigned to them. So would Palo Alto Housing consider this opportunity to help the city determine parking needs?
Yeah, we would be happy to have that conversation with the staff to define the scope of that study.
I'd like to have. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Sir, would you mind stating your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Randy Suda, and I'm the president of Palo Alto Housing.
Thank you.
I think, oh, the TDM implementation and monitoring, I noticed that it's going to be monitored by the developer. So I really appreciate having this TDM in place. It's actually really great to see this, but I see that it's going to be monitored by the developer, and I think Palo Alto needs to be able to answer to the neighbors with data that's procured by a party, outside party, so that it's transparent and that the data is, that they have confidence in the data. So would the city have any means where the monitoring and the evaluation is done by our auditor or by a consultant or third party?
We could take a look at that. One thing to keep in mind with kind of the monitoring for TDM plans is what we have is an annual monitoring requirement. So once a TDM plan has been in place and the building is constructed, as a part of the TDM, the TDM coordinator for Palo Alto Housing, or any developer for that matter, would need to submit a monitoring report annually. It's usually based on two counts to determine whether or not the TDM is, you know, has efficacy, is actually, is actually working, actually achieving. the 30% target. Typically, that's done in-house with our Transportation Division reviewing the TDM plan, but it's certainly something that we could take a look at, as having a third party.
I think that, you know, it just seems rather strange, you know, to have the developer themselves monitoring it when we should have somebody that has nothing to do with the developer, so that it is outside of their—so that it just builds confidence that the data is correct. And this is something that you guys will decide along the way, when it comes back for condition of approval, or what is the process?
So, it would be a condition of approval. We do have it included as one of the conditions, that we have a TDM in place that is submitted—a final TDM, so to speak, that's submitted with the building permit and prior to occupancy.
But right now, in the report, it's—I mean, as it states in the Action COA, it states that the developer will be monitoring.
Right. They would be the one that would be submitting the report to the city for approval, essentially.
I would like to see that it's somebody else, is what I'm seeing.
So, yeah, I think we're in the process. Thank you. I'm coming a little bit late to the question, but I think the concern is making sure that there's an independent analysis of the monitoring program. And right now, our Transportation Office is updating its—you know, looking at the TDM measures and how we enforce those and monitor those as an active project. And I don't know the particulars of that, but the issue as far as where we are in terms of standing on that right now. But the idea is that they would—the applicant would hire somebody to document any—an independent—you know, that we would peer review that information. And then, if we had any questions, we would engage that consultant with any questions or reporting to make sure that we are achieving the types of trip reductions that we're trying to achieve.
Okay.
So, the city does have a role in reviewing and monitoring the TDM plan in operation.
And is it yearly?
I think it's every other year, but we'd have to take a look at the conditions. It's not something that we do yearly. I think, two years after the permit is issued, we do our first check-in, and if the—the numbers aren't coming back the way that we are—we're expecting, we engage in revising the—you know, seeing if there's any areas where compliance had not occurred. And if they were in compliance, but we still were not meeting the target, we would then look at ways to further modify the plan so that we were able to achieve those targets. And there's a period of time to sort of cure—to address those issues. But the—but the idea is that we're continuing to monitor this, to make sure that we get those numbers that we are striving to achieve.
Yes. So, I appreciate that. I just want to state that, you know, as we move forward, we want to kind of build the foundation and ensure that, you know, residents in town have confidence that these—this kind of data is correct. So, let's please work on building that foundation, so that there's no—it—there's no obstructions in the future, obstacles in the future.
Councilmember, I think we've talked a little bit about this in the past, and I think what you're hitting on is a really good point. And in fact, I think it is a question ultimately of the city resourcing our ability to review these TDM plans on an ongoing basis, not limited to this specific project. But how we do that, how we ensure that that review is transparent, as well as effective. So, points well taken. I do know we'll be coming back to the council with discussion of our transportation function and the resourcing and priorities for that.
Thank you. That's all.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth. First of all, thank you to everyone who came out and spoke tonight, and thank you to everyone who's really worked so hard on this. This really is a nice example of a public-private and nonprofit partnership. Just a couple quick comments, and I think all my questions have been answered. This is a great project. We are getting a 100% affordable housing development for Palo Alto residents and for future residents, and especially for those with developmental disabilities. This is a really good project in all those aspects. I want to point out a couple quick things. First of all, this project wouldn't be possible without the zoning changes that are being applied tonight. And so, thank you to my colleagues for supporting the affordable housing overlay last year. This wouldn't be here today. And so, in the past couple of years, you know, we put a freeze on playing community zoning, you know, and we're still looking for tools to obtain the housing and other outcomes we want in our community. And the affordable housing overlay is one way to do that. Thank you to Palo Alto Housing for your continued engagement with our neighbors. I think a lot of our residents spoke up on that, and that is a really nice sign to hear, in terms of working on the parking, on the TDM, on the massing, all those issues which really make up this project. I think you've done a great job, and I would really encourage you, as some others spoke about, for a fast follow on this. What's next? You have some good momentum here and some community goodwill, so please follow up on that. A few questions. I expected to hear a little bit more on retail tonight, actually. I'm so surprised we didn't. That's one of the trade-offs we're making here, and I think overall, this council probably would be supportive of retail in this site, but we understand that there's a trade-off there with affordable units. And the main principle here we're going for is affordability of units. So, there's a trade-off there, but there are other constraints we're looking at on this site, whether it is parking, or I think the biggest one is actually height, since this project is hitting 49 feet and pulling back its massing on the east side. I will make the staff recommendation and would totally appreciate a second, if anyone's there.
Second.
Thank you, councilmember. Just to be—
Care to speak to your motion?
Sure. I think I've spoken to it. I think this is a great project. Just to be clear about the staff recommendation, first of all, we are finding the project exempt from CEQA because of the affordable housing exemption inherent in that law. Two, we are asking to apply the Affordable Housing combining district to this subject properties, and this is just the first reading. And then, three, the Record of Land Use Action does two things. So, first of all, there's a design enhancement exception for some of the setbacks —in the rear and side yard setbacks—to make the parking work. And in fact, those exceptions allow a couple more parking spots on the site, and I think that's a good compromise. And then, we're also waiving the retail preservation requirement, which I just spoke to. All else being equal, I think we would appreciate the retail being preserved there, but on the whole, I think we understand why the exception is being made. I hope this council can support this project unanimously. Staff, as a comment?
Just—I think also in your motion, you were—would have gotten to the Architectural Review Board application, which is also inherent in the Record of Land Use Action and as modified by the App Places Memo.
Yes, as modified by the App Places Memo. Thank you. And with that, happy to hear any questions or comments.
Councilmember Cormac, care to speak to your second?
I would. How far we have come, I regret that Councilmember Niss is not here this evening, because I know it would have been, you know, an honor for her to make the initial motion or second, so I do that thinking of her. I really do feel very lucky to be part of this evening. When I was in the audience, it was always my objective to make things easy, for council to say yes. And there are very many people who have worked very hard to make it easy for us to say yes this evening. I'd like to particularly call out the members of the Planning and Transportation Commission and the Architecture Review Board. You know, I think an excellent process is one that has subject matter experts do the subject matter expert work, and then bring it forward in the process, and I think this is a fantastic example of that. Just on a personal note, I have to say I am stunned by the improvement in video rendering. Wow. When we did that 10 years ago for the library, it was a little bit jerky, and I was like, wow, I'm like walking down, so that's fantastic. And, you know, I know we've discussed this before in other contexts, but the use of video is extraordinarily helpful, especially for those of us who aren't very good in 3D. That would be me. With respect to retail, I will just ask a few questions as I go. Permit? Okay, great. Just for clarity, if I could ask the applicant, how many of the Palo Alto Housing properties in Palo Alto currently have retail on the ground floor?
Yeah. None of the projects that we have developed have retail on the ground floor. It just isn't financially feasible for us, because we get all of our funding from the city, state, and federal sources, and they don't want to fund retail development.
Understandably. Just wanted to check, and maybe perhaps while you're there, we could discuss funding, because there's one sort of vague sentence in the staff report. Can I understand what the process is for requesting funds, and if we think there are other applicants eventually for what looks like $11 million for my edification as someone new?
Yeah, I think our guidelines provide for a notice of funding availability, which is the means that we would—we could go about soliciting others who may be interested in receiving available affordable housing funds at the city council's discretion. We're not obligated by that process, and if by resolution or some other means, the city council could, you know, allocate a certain amount of that funding to a housing provider such as Palo Alto Housing. I mean, it's a separate action that the council would have to take, not tonight.
Okay, thank you. I do want to just channel my inner Karen Holman for a moment and talk about trees and plants. I did review them. The tree canopy was a little confusing at the end. It said that there was a larger reduction than it seemed, so I just want to state for the record that I did review all of that, and it looks like you made the adjustments on the El Camino side, and I understand the limitations of the utility, so thank you for that. Is visitor parking on this on the first floor or the second floor of the garage? That wasn't abundantly clear from this.
You haven't made that determination.
Ah, okay. That's why it wasn't clear.
I just wanted to point out that Gary Lehman, our—Gary Lehman, our architectural—our landscaping architect, is here, if you have any other questions about the—
I don't. It all—it all looks lovely.
Okay.
Let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to say. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah. I support this project, and I really appreciate a lot of aspects of it. Allison just touched on several, and I do know Liz would want to be here tonight. It's a shame that she can't be. But I really appreciate the community outreach and the positive compromise. And thank you to Palo Alto Housing and to the residents for working together. You know, we did hear a couple of concerns, but it's really rare that a project comes to us like this with active support from people living next to it, so that was certainly refreshing. And I think it's a really great message for the city and for the council going into 2019. You know, with just a little bit of compromise, I think we came to a really good solution. And I really appreciate that it's 100% BMR. There were a couple of different numbers. I heard the applicant say it's going to be 30% to 60% AMI. In terms of approval, it's 80%. I assume the intention is 30 to 60?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, I have—I have some concerns about our affordable housing overlay, which goes to over-average income, 120 AMI, but fully support this project for low and very low-income people and 35% disabled. I also appreciate you stayed under the 50-foot height limit, so thank you. I think you—I think you did a really great job. And I do appreciate the proposed TDM program as well, and I don't like making the retail exception, but I think for 100% below-market rate housing, that's a reasonable exception we can make. I would like to say, I think Ventura is facing a lot of changes. Loss—there's loss of retail, the parking concerns, the North Ventura Plan. And we have our retreat coming up, and I think we may want to talk about, you know, should Ventura be one of the council priorities this year. So, tonight, I don't think it's about yes or no on the project. I think it's how we get the best project possible. I think we have a good, great project here. I did have a few quick questions about conditions for approval. So, I understand that it's CEQA-exempted under the affordable housing laws. I did see that there would be some vapor intrusion protection for toxic ground, and then for the benefit of the residents there, will there also be kind of testing of the ground?
Yeah. We need to do some more soil testing, and we're going to be—and we're going to do that in the next few months. And then, we'll do some sort of mitigation—soil mitigation plan.
Okay. So, even though it's exempt from CEQA, in terms of toxic substances, it still kind of follows CEQA?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I do have concern about the unsignaled crosswalk in El Camino, and I don't know how much that's been—those impacts have been studied. I wondered if we could make that kind of an optional piece, if we haven't really studied congested impacts yet. So—
So, if I could clarify, Caltrans, right at the intersection of Wilton Avenue and El Camino Real, is in the process of installing—it's called a HAWK beacon, and it's one of these—it's basically a traffic light, but for pedestrians on demand.
Right.
So, you hit the—hit the button.
So, it's already in process?
It's in process, yeah. And it's separate and apart from, you know, the Palo Alto Housing's proposal. It's going in. They've included some of the curb radii and other improvements that Caltrans is going to be doing on El Camino Real as part of their plans, just kind of as an FYI of what ultimately the streetscape's going to look like. But that's—that's moving forward.
Okay. Was there a traffic study on impacts of that?
Of that in particular. We did include that in our Hexagon Traffic Operations Analysis that we did do. So, there was—we did indeed take a look at that, sure.
Okay. A couple speakers talked about a cut-through traffic study. I don't—I don't think it's really part of the agenda tonight, but I personally would support that. It's part of the North Ventura Plan when that comes back to us. So, my one concern is around parking. So, it's the first time we've used this overlay. I believe we changed the parking allocation based—from what council—from what staff had recommended. And so, while the parking meets this kind of untested zoning, it's about half of what we would have had previously. And the TDM reads great, but you get to the enforcement, and it says, if we don't achieve the trip reduction target, changes may be made. So, it's very, very soft. And so, we've had a little bit of discussion about the TDM. I guess, I would ask the applicant, you know, how do you view the TDM, and what do you think you would do if it wasn't working? Do you have thoughts about that?
The way—the way the staff's condition is currently worded, annually, we submit this monitoring plan, and if there are deficiencies—in other words, we're not meeting the required target, then we get six months in order to comply. But I think one of the keys with the annual monitoring process is that if we—if we encounter a situation where we are not meeting that target, it gives us, as the owner of the property and staff, the ability to discuss modifications to that TDM program, to bring us in compliance with that—with that 30% threshold. So, you know, from our standpoint, we don't look at that TDM package as fixed in stone forever and ever. We believe that over time, there'll be new techniques, there'll be new approaches that can be brought to bear should we ever encounter a situation where we aren't meeting the target. But we are very confident with that TDM plan that we've put before you, that—that will hit the 30% threshold.
Okay. Well, that's—it's good to hear. So, I do have a modest proposed amendment, which I hope my colleagues will support, and I discussed it briefly with a city attorney. And so, the idea is that—to indicate to future staff that—to—if in the future we were to put in an RPP district in this area, that staff would kind of evaluate the project with the understanding that it was intended to be fully parked and to have this robust TDM. And it's just a suggestion that staff would minimize the impact. So, this would be the motion, that we would add to the Record of Land Use council direction to direct staff to evaluate any future RPP in this area, to minimize the impact from Wilton Court, based on the project's TDM plan and the project's intent to fully park the building, to the extent allowed by law.
I think—I think that last sentence is helpful. I think your intent here, is you're saying, if there is some spillover that the TDM can't sup up, you don't want it pushed out into neighborhood streets.
I want staff at that point to look at the current state laws and, you know, just—just kind of note that that was the intent.
Right. Any comment from city staff on this? I'm inclined to accept it, but just want to hear from—
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. We hadn't specifically looked at where this direction to staff would reside, so I was just chatting with the planning director about whether it could go in the Record of Land Use. It doesn't so much involve this particular developer. It's really a direction from the council to the staff.
It's kind of a unique opportunity in the—the— It's kind of a unique opportunity, and the project is not built yet, and so how do we keep track of it with the project?
Yeah, so that is the issue, is how to keep track of it.
Just for the clerk, after the "and," "project's intent to fully park the building."
Councilmember DuBois, can you state that one more time? "Project's..."
Intent to fully park the building to the extent allowed by law. Put a comment after "building."
Thank you.
Councilmember DuBois, I think I'm willing to accept this. I just also actually wonder if the Record of Land Use action is the best place to put this, or if you just want to direct staff to evaluate this against future RPP districts with the same conditions.
I think it doesn't reside in the Record of Land Use action, and that does present, you're quite right, a challenge for us to keep track of it in ensuing years, but let us think about a process for that rather than putting it into the developers' obligations.
Yeah, so you can delete the blue section there. And then I think you need a comment after "fully park the building." Yep, cool. Would you accept that?
I do.
All right, thank you.
So the amendment is a friendly amendment, is accepted by both maker and the secondor. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so I just want to thank the applicant for bringing this forward. It's a very important project. It's going to help a lot of people in the city, and also for engaging the community. I think it's been outstanding, so thank you for your work, guys. It's really good. I just want to ask staff a few questions that I heard from the public comment. One of the persons mentioned that it's kind of a blind alley, it's kind of hard to maneuver the cars there. What is the staff's opinion about this? Do they need to be mirrored or some sort of mitigation to make it a little bit easier to navigate, or is this not really an issue?
So the alley is 20 feet in width, so you could get two cars through there at any point in time. It's going to be tight, certainly, but it's possible. There are, there is a garage for the adjacent residential building, which is pretty close to the area where you serve up from the lower level of the parking deck. So as a part of the building permit review, one of the things that our Transportation Division, as well as our Public Works Division, looks for is traffic safety and operations, more at the kind of the minute level, at the very detailed level. So if there's a need at that point to do some sort of...
It sounds like you'll take care of it there.
Yeah, we'll certainly look at it, and we understand that that's a community concern.
Okay, and then one of the public speakers asked about if we could get, or could it be restricted so that maybe perhaps the people that live there don't have cars, or the people who are development disabled don't have cars? Can that restriction actually be done?
I think the answer to that one's no.
Okay. And then, I too, like my fellow councilmembers, feel that, that it's unfortunate that retail can't be here. It's for definitely a good cause, but I think one of the things that makes retail hard here is that, is the parking requirements. It would probably pressure a project to have another level of basement, which would be very, very expensive. How much more, if it did have, let's say, a modest amount of retail, how much more parking would it need? And what if we waived that parking requirement? What would happen? What do you think the impact would be?
Can I dive in on that one for a second? I think it's a legitimate question, and I would like to hear the answer from staff. My understanding is that the issue with retail is that, again, maybe the most complex area of these things is lining up financing for them, and some of the financing that this project is contingent on basically precludes having retail. It has to be 100% housing, and that's the real limitation, I think. Is that, yeah, okay. With that said, I refer to staff.
Okay. And then another person mentioned having the entrance in El Camino. I guess what was the rationale again to have it where it is?
So I'll take that one first and then the retail question. So we didn't, okay, well, I'll take retail first. Oh, excuse me. So with regards to El Camino Real, we did look at whether or not, and this is a request early on, whether or not we should have some sort of entrance off of El Camino Real as opposed to going around to the alley. There was a comment from the public, as well as something that we just looked at internally. There's a number of reasons for doing what has been proposed by the applicants. The El Camino Real Design Guidelines and the South El Camino Real Design Guidelines both support alley access, so, for vehicles. You're also removing a curb cut, which is also just good for pedestrian as well as cyclist safety. There's a line of sight issue that gets eliminated when you have vehicles going to the back, and it's also good, you know, in the hypothetical situation where you'd have cars queuing up, it's, you know, more, you're able to load cars a little bit better rather than having them stretched out on El Camino Real, waiting to get into the entrance. So there's additional space, so that's a number of reasons for that.
Yeah, my office happens to be nearby, and that part of El Camino is pretty slow, so that, my office happens to be nearby, so that part of El Camino is pretty slow, and there's actually already a curb cut that goes into that area. So that's why I was curious to know why you flip it to the back, because then occurs more traffic in the neighborhood. But, okay. And then the last comment that someone made was whether maybe priority could be given to people that live in Palo Alto already. Is that a possibility?
It's part of the proposal.
So it is? Okay, then don't worry about it.
It's in force preference.
Okay, then if it's taken care of, perfect. That's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Ku, I see your light sign again. Do you have something follow-up?
Yeah, actually, I didn't know we're going into motion, so I was just asking questions. So I did wanted to say that, you know, when I was on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the update to a comprehensive plan, I remember Jan Stokely coming and speaking. She's the Executive Director of Housing Choices, and she did mention at the time that it was 473 people who lives in Palo Alto that have developmental disabilities, and what they're looking for is independence, but also to be close to family and friends, especially the parents who are mostly aging. So, you know, so in the, so we do have this opportunity here, so I want to thank the Palo Alto Housing management team, and this is truly encouraging. At the same time, you know, I just wanted to see if I could also make an amendment to ensure that some of the things that are presented here are indeed going to be taken forward, whether it's on the Record of Land Use action, or, but I would like it to be incorporated into this motion, and I would like to ask the maker and the secondor to consider this amendment. Wilton Court Building Plan shall remain substantially consistent to Palo Alto Housing's presentation before council on January 14, 2019. It shall contain 21 units or more, but no less for adults with developmental disabilities; two 37 units affordable or more, but no less at 30% to 60% AMI. The units are for Palo Alto Live Work Preference. The community room onsite shall be available for neighborhood meetings, and C, staff shall conduct a comprehensive traffic study of the Ventura neighborhood, and can be voted into the North Ventura CAP.
If we can get those written down so I can review them, I'd love...
Yeah, that's a lot we should, go ahead.
And I'd also love to hear from Palo Alto Housing on a few of those points, just my first thoughts. So on the building plans matching what were presented tonight, I know we've had this issue before where it's understood that we are approving the project, the zoning, et cetera, and building permits, and sometimes, you know, doorways, fire escapes may shift a bit. So I just don't want to get us in a sticky spot there. On the numbers that you mentioned, Councilmember Ku, I just want to see if Palo Alto Housing is cool with that. If so, I don't see any reason not to. And the last piece was the...
Traffic.
Access to the community center.
Access to the community road. I think...
I'm wondering about that, too.
Yeah, I think we would be more comfortable offering that as a gesture and not being bound by it all the time to reach out to the neighborhood, so, because we have to check with our regulations and our funders, and we haven't lined up all our financing to make sure that we can offer that community benefit consistently. So I would rather not be bound by those, that particular obligation.
Okay. And then...
It's our, you know, it's our hope that we'll do that.
Given, thank you. And the numbers that Councilmember Ku mentioned, I don't remember them offhand, but the percentage...
We feel comfortable having the restriction of 21 units that are set aside for adults who have developmental disabilities and are low-income units.
She mentioned, I think, 60% AMI.
30 to 60%.
And 30 to 60% AMI for the building, yes. Those are our projections at this point.
Okay, let's include that piece in the line. I think the last piece you mentioned was the traffic study, and I just want to hear from, I guess, my colleagues or staff.
We have no control over that study. That's really out of the purview of this project.
Thank you. That's an issue for staff.
I did send it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ku, could you clarify the 30 to 60% recommendation? I didn't know if I get that.
I actually said 37 units affordable or more, but no less at 30 to 60% AMI. However, I'm hearing what Cheryl just said was that the project is, the entire project is going to be between 30 to 60% AMI.
Right, so there's 58 units that'll be between 30 and 60% AMI, and there's one manager's unit.
Right.
And the Live Work Preference, we actually already do, right? We give a point or two to folks.
Yes.
Okay, fine.
And I guess I have a, I have item four, which also, so we can take out, item four, community room onsite shall be of it, so we can take that out if we can have assurances that you are going to be making offers and working with the community. And I guess I had parking, which I missed. Parking space shall not be reduced, keeping at total of 41. It's basically in your presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that all right?
Yeah, so why don't we just say keeping parking at 41, and, yeah, I...
And not having the specific...
Right, a specific breakdown would be...
That's fine.
Good, okay, thank you.
So just please triple-check these numbers to make sure you're good with all this, because we are about to put it into the motion.
Okay.
You know, I just, I don't know, while they're double-checking, I'll just note that sometimes when we're refining, you know, conceptual drawings to construction drawings, you know, something...
The whole building is between 30 and 60% AMI. It's not just 37 units.
Right, so I'm sorry, Jessica. We can change number two.
Including the manager's unit?
No, so 58 units are affordable.
58 units.
58 units, and then there's one unit for the manager, and that's not considered affordable.
58 units at 30 to 60% AMI.
Right.
So we can remove, uh-huh, yes, thank you.
So on the parking issue, so the project's overparked by our code, and I understand some of the, you know, the comments about that. Sometimes when refining projects that, from conceptual to construction drawings, if there's, you know, some unanticipated equipment related to a transformer or something else, you know, ADA compliance that wasn't anticipated, you know, there could be, you know, I hope they've sorted all that stuff out, but things do happen in plan check, and so for a project that's over the code-required parking, we just, I'm just suggesting you might want to have a little bit of flexibility for us to moderate that as we need to, but it's up to the council.
Are you speaking specifically about the parking?
Yes.
Are you speaking specifically about the 41?
41.
So I want to caution, this is what was presented to the neighborhood, the community, when they came to speak to you at your meeting, and so I want to make sure that we honor that.
Sure, and I don't have a problem with that. It's just that if they don't hit the 41 and they come back at 40, we're coming back to the city council for an approval of a parking space.
And we want this project to happen, so if it's just one or two, you know, this is something we can work with, but I want to make sure that the neighborhood understands that, you know, we are honoring, thank you.
I actually agree with Lydia on that. You mean, this is a commitment to the neighborhood. I mean, it shouldn't change without at least coming back to city council.
So keep it at 41, guys.
Please try.
And then just the last question, I guess, is a little bit to staff, my colleagues, on letter B on the Conference of Traffic Study. Love to hear from staff. I'm not opposed. I wonder if this is the best place to do it.
So I'll just make an initial remark, and then, you know, Molly and Ed may have some other comments, and mine isn't so much to whether to do it or not do it. My concern is more about tying it to the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan, which is a defined project boundary that does not include this part of the neighborhood. So it may be that there's a, you know, should this go forward, it's something that we're coming back to the council with some kind of a scope and a cost for what this is and where we would do this and how this would take place over time, but I would be concerned if we tied it to the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan.
Yeah, the item...
Can I just make one comment? Do you think that we should sort of clarify that the 21 units are subset of the 58 units? Because right now, it could read that we're having 79 units. So can we just clarify? The 58 units of AMI could be one, and then two could be of that 21 units.
What if you just said 58 units total?
Okay.
If I might, if I might ask, the reason number B for the comprehensive traffic study, I know that North Ventura is, the concept plan is, has boundary lines. However, traffic is not going to just be in North Ventura, it's going to be entire Ventura. Whatever you do at North Ventura is going to affect the rest of Ventura. So I'd like to see actually a traffic study that is not contained to just North Ventura, but to the entire Ventura neighborhood.
So while John's thinking about responding to that, the procedural concern involves the nature of, the way that this is coming up. So very laudable idea, might be something council wants to take up, you might want to compare that and prioritize it with other work that the traffic group is doing. This is a new idea tonight on an item that's at project approval, and this is related, but its scope is quite a bit broader, and it really isn't within the noticed description of tonight's item. So it really is more of an item where it's an idea that I think council may want to be hearing from staff about how the staff would come back with, what does that involve? What is the timing on that? How does that impact other projects at another night as opposed to this tonight, which is really a specific project approval?
So could staff come back with a proposal on how to conduct a traffic study, a comprehensive study plan?
That's the referral.
I really wanted to grant, to make Jerry Underdahl's day, you know, to have unanimous, so help me out on this.
So I would take the motion, and again, subject to approval by the council, as that referral to staff, that we would come back with a scope, timeframe, budget for how we would get this done. I think we've also heard other comments that there may be other issues in North Ventura that the council wants to focus on, so maybe that broader discussion is a part of your retreat. It's certainly your decision as to how much or, yeah, how best to characterize all the work in North Ventura, but if this motion were specifically to make that referral to staff, we'll come back with the scope and budget and timeframe.
I appreciate that.
Once we have staff. Quite frankly, that's a part of it, too.
So will the maker and the secondor accept this amendment?
If Palo Alto Housing is okay with that language there, I'll accept it. I'm getting nods. nods. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm reluctant to accept B, but having listened to staff, I'm willing to do so. To me, this falls in the category of things that come up late at night that we don't have a lot of information about. So, because everyone else seems comfortable, I will accept it. But in general, this is not my preference for operations.
Thank you.
One, perhaps, other comment from staff. This is back on the A, Roman numeral four, that, you know, again, recognizing the desire and concern with keeping the faith with what was presented to the community. I think staff is nervous about the potential for mechanical something to drive one or two spaces off of that. So, I think we'd at least want to acknowledge that and perhaps give staff the flexibility to work with the applicant on any minor impacts due to final design or however you want to refer to it.
Okay. So, so do you want to, so I have here, parking shall not be reduced, keeping a total of 41. Do you want to help me with the wording? So, that gives you the flexibility, but we want to keep it at 41?
Hey, suggestions.
We're achieving for that 41, but if you have some room to help me with the wording in terms of giving you the flexibility in case something comes up.
So, if-
But as I said, I'm sorry. As I said earlier, it's something that we want to honor, because this is something that we present, that Palo Alto Housing Corporation, all good intentions presented to the neighborhood, and they were working on that good intention and honor.
Sure. And understanding that, and at the same time, just even in recent memory, thinking about situations where a parking space is lost for an electric vehicle charger or a ramp or exactly, something really beyond the, you know, it's festive intentions, but nonetheless, the confluence of building code with constrained physical space does result in the loss of a space. We would just hate to have that become the issue of controversy when, as you get into the specifics of construction drawings, that becomes an issue. So, lacking a better idea, perhaps it is one that allows staff some discretion to work through the final design with the applicant. Graham, John, looking for any help.
One thing, you know, one thing that I think the city manager was kind of talking about was EV chargers and bollards for any necessary equipment, as well as any refinements that are needed at final building code analysis to ensure that, you know, there's universal access for the required ADA spaces. So, I think having the ability to design, design the parking lot in a way that's compliant with building code would be helpful.
You want to put in subject to code requirements or something like that?
Except as subject to applicable building code requirements, yeah.
May I offer a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
What if we invert it and say that in the event parking spaces are 40 as opposed to 41, then you come back and ask for our approval, and that gives you a little bit of wiggle room? Because you're saying that, you know, you want some discretion. So, is one, and what I'm saying is one parking space enough discretion?
Oh, if it's less than 40, good decision.
I'm just saying, like, right now, we're saying it has to be 41. What if we say it has to be 40? And if it's going to change from that, I'm trying to figure out how to give you discretion, because I think it has to be a number, right?
Sounds like it. And again, I think we're trying to-
And am I right that this project already has 10 more spaces than is required?
Unclear.
Okay. Well, there's an interpretation. I understand that people have different philosophies.
So, what do you-
Perhaps we could ask the applicant how many of the other buildings generally have empty parking spaces? Is that, I mean, is that common?
Yeah. It's, it's a, it's difficult to give you a straight answer in that every complex has a different population. They have different characteristics, different income levels. Some are for families, some are, you know, SROs. So, it's very difficult to give you a direct answer. I know that when we have done a, when we're looking at the parking demand for a similar project in another community, that parking study has come in at a 0.45 space per unit ratio. So, that's significantly less, if you discount out the adults with developmental disability units, it's, that ratio is significantly lower than what we're providing here, which is more along the lines of 0.75 per units, spaces per unit. So, it is significantly higher than some of the data we're seeing in other communities.
So, if I, thank you. May I make a little suggestion? If it reads parking space, parking space shall be kept, shall be at, shall be 41 spaces. And to come back to council, if at final design, there is a parking reduction.
Well, just to be straight, we're suggesting that we not have to come back to council if that were determined to be the case. And that would facilitate the review and construction of the project. So, I think it's something along the lines of if it were two spaces, that's about 5%, so not less, no more than 5% less if necessary to complete, I'll call it, building code requirements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What did you say again?
Clumsy, but making it up on the fly.
Parking shall not be reduced more than two spaces subject to, in order to comply with code requirements.
Right. Exactly. Good.
I can take that. I can, I can accept that.
Thank you, Councilmember Q. I just think there's a couple unknowns here that we don't understand as it goes through the planning and building process, and I don't think any of us want to deal with that again.
In order to comply with code requirements.
I just want to make sure that, you know, residents that have been working with good intentions are honored. So, thank you. This is okay?
Parking spaces shall not be reduced.
Thank you.
Or two spaces that are more compliant with code requirements. Staff, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I believe we're, I believe we're approaching the moment of truth here. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say much here, although I do want to make a couple of comments after the vote, if that's okay. But it's unfortunate that former mayor Liz Niss could not be with us tonight. She, she essentially led the city council through this process this year and was heavily invested in this. And I know it's, I know it's distressing that she can't be here. However, she, she did send me a couple of comments that I think that I would like to make on her behalf. I gather that Palo Alto Housing is almost 50 years old. Is that, is that correct? Congratulations, since 1972?
No, 1969.
1969, right? And have done a lot of good and successful projects that have helped a lot of people, right? And, and the waiting list for these projects is long. Sometimes people have to wait many years. So, to have another one, right, is, you know, it's just really gratifying. And of course, you know, regional agencies are pushing to, are supporting efforts to build, you know, large amounts of housing as much as possible affordable in the next, in the next decade. And these things are complicated, right? But it's extremely gratifying to see this moving forward. And Liz particularly wants to shout out to Cheryl and Randy and the Palo Alto Housing Corporation team, who worked very, very diligently on this and since last summer. And, and she's sorry she's not here, right?
I'm sorry.
But she's here in spirit. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And with that, let us vote on the board. And that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Niss abstaining. So, congratulations. We have a project.
Thank you.
All right. So, I'd like to make a couple of comments on this area if I can and sort of code it to this. You know, I think it's been pointed out, this is the first below-market rate housing and project in Palo Alto in many years. And I just, you know, just immense appreciation here of the leadership of Palo Alto Housing, right, and the neighborhood, Becky, Noah, Randy, Cheryl, you know, all you folks, in addition to staff and PTC and council and everybody else who worked on this. But you folks, you know, to make this happen in this way, you guys ought to go home tonight and feel really, really good about what you've achieved here, right? You know, this is, this is in many ways a model for how these things really ought to be done. And so, thank you. What you've done is going to benefit everybody in Palo Alto, right, and Ventura and every other neighborhood, too. And it's important that the city follow through on its commitments to the Ventura neighborhood on these things as well. So, with that said, I want to call out another element of this, right, which hasn't got much attention, but is just crucial, okay? Which is the financing and the funding, okay? There's been a bunch of discussion about the role of the Affordable Housing overlay, and that's an important part of this, okay? But the reality is, this would not happen at all, okay, without the financing. And I believe, because the big, the big challenge of BMR housing is somebody's got to pay for it, right? Even the economics of market-rate housing are really challenging in this environment. And below-market rate housing is, I mean, this area is just an entirely different level. So, this project, you know, is going to, is going to use up to $10 million from the city's Affordable Housing Fund, is my understanding, which is, you know, there's still some stuff being worked out and other funding and so forth. But that's, that's what it's going to cost the city, which is a substantial chunk of the project itself, okay? This money is well-spent, is what we have it for. It's much better to put it work, put it to work like this than have it sitting around the bank. That said, if we take $10 million for the Affordable Housing Fund, you know, that pretty much is going to clear out our fund, okay? We used about $15 million on Buena Vista. After this 10, there'll be about three left with an eye on Supervisor Joseph Midian's teacher housing project. So, basically, we're cleared out. So, the city's Affordable Housing Fund currently grows, on average, a little more than $2 million a year. And the money for it comes from impact fees, primarily from commercial development, okay? But, you know, to some extent, a little bit from market-rate residential development at all. So, you can do the arithmetic, but overlay or no overlay, okay? It's going to be several years before we can do another project like this, okay? Even with everybody's goodwill and so forth, you know, if the Affordable Housing Fund continues to grow at the current rate, okay? So, if we don't want to wait that long, we either have to find ways of growing the fund faster, we have to find ways of growing the fund faster, either by modulating our impact fees, as the county is currently negotiating with Stanford, for example, or else finding new sources of funding. So, that is the reality. People should not underestimate, you know, in order to make these things happen, you have to have money, and this is where it comes from, right? And so, if we want more of these, we're going to need to get more money into our Affordable Housing Funds, okay? People got to understand that. Finally, I want to say I was personally encouraged by our new Governor Newsom's comments last week on his budget proposal, where he basically characterized the Bay Area housing shortage as an investment problem that's ultimately a byproduct of the Valley's economic success. And he called for a combination of state and corporate funding to make that investment. If that should materialize in the future as policy, and I personally hope it does, then that could become an important source of affordable housing funding, in addition to whatever we can put together in Palo Alto. But if we want more of these projects, we got to pay for them, okay? Thank you very much. With that, we move on to our next action item, which is the Redwood Circle project.
to the next slide. This is an appeal of the Planning Director's decision to approve an individual review application at 3743 Redwood Circle. The application would demolish the existing one-story home that's on the site, and then we construct a new two-story home. Just as a bit of background, the house is located in the R1 zoning district and two family, or excuse me, two, two-story homes are permitted use in the zone. Typically, individual review applications are taken in by planning staff and reviewed for consistency with the municipal code, development standards, FAR, lot coverage, height, those sorts of objective standards. And then, we're also looking at the application's consistency with the individual review guidelines. These are guidelines that were developed in 2005 that look at a number of, a number of ways in which a second story may or may not impact a neighborhood and the surrounding properties. So, in particular, we're looking at privacy, massing, streetscape appearance, as well as just architectural cohesion with the neighborhood. So, with that, just as a bit of background, we did take in an application for this, for this site back in June of 2017. And I'll go through very briefly kind of the planned iterations that led to where we are today. But the, in essence, an individual review application is reviewed and approved by city staff. If an appellant, or excuse me, if an adjacent neighbor wishes to request a director's hearing, they may do so, as long as they're living within, within adjacency to the site. After a director's hearing, either the applicant or the appellant can appeal to the, you know, to the city council directly, which is where we are today. Okay. So, neighborhood context, the home is located in what's known as the Circles or the Fairbetto Eichler tract in South Palo Alto. The neighborhood's characterized by a mix of one and two-story homes. And it's R1 zoning, as I mentioned, it's not subject to single-story restrictions or anything like that. Just so you're oriented, the home that is existing on the site is the image in the center there, and then the homes on either side of the project are shown as well. The proposal is beneath the photograph and shows the second-story home that's proposed. Here's an aerial photograph showing the site in relation to its surroundings. So, it's on Redwood Circle. The home does back up to two homes that are located on Carlson Circle, which is the smaller circle that's concentric to Redwood. So, here's the initial submittal that we received in July of 2017. So, we went through one round of comments from the neighborhood, where there was, there was a reaction to this particular development and this particular design, given that it's kind of more of a Mediterranean design in a relatively Eichler, can influence mid-century modern neighborhood. Just the next couple of slides are going to kind of follow a similar sort of orientation. I won't go into too much detail, but front elevation is shown in color, and the rear elevation, which is more important for the subject of the appeal, is shown in the black and white beneath. So, this is the progress set right here, kind of going from the Mediterranean design to a more contemporary. to a more contemporary design. And this is the application that was tentatively approved by staff in May of last year. We did receive a hearing request from the adjacent neighbors to the rear, and they're here today, and they can speak to their concerns in particular. But their concerns, just in general, with this iteration of the plans, were with regards to the, the privacy impacts, as well as solar access, as they relate to the house, which is located to the southwest of their, of their home. We did have two director's hearings after the May, the May iteration of the plans, and this is the project plans that were approved after the director's hearings in August of last year. So the main difference between this set and, and the, and the set that was previously approved by staff relate to the window placement primarily on the second story facing, facing the rear of the site. In particular, a couple of bay windows that were on the rear of the site in the second story were removed. The windows were separated, so you have narrow windows, excuse me, that are only wide enough for egress purposes, but no wider than that. And then, all the windows that are facing the rear of the site are either five feet in height from the second floor up to the sill, or have an obscure glazing, and that's the, the sections of the windows that is shown in gray. And so these were, these were mitigations that we don't typically employ on the rear of a, of a home, but we did, we did add these as conditions of approval following the, the director's hearings owing to the, to the appellant's concerns. The, the appellant's did request, request the appeal based on this iteration of the plan, so this is kind of the, the set that is in front of you today, which is the August set. I'll let the appellant's kind of describe, describe their objections and their requests, but in general, there's four main requests. The first is to impose a 40-foot setback for the second story off the rear. The second is to more closely center the, the second story above the first story, so that the, the massing is proportional on the lot, to relocate all of the rear-facing egress windows, all the, all of the windows that are on the rear, second-story elevation to the sides. And then, the, the fourth bullet point was a specific request for a specific window, and that's actually been taken care of with the most recent iteration of the plans. So I don't want to go into too much detail with this, but this is just kind of an outline of showing what a, what a 40-foot setback for the second story would, would do. The red line that's shown in this slide is the city requirement, which is a 20-foot rear yard setback. And then, what's shown in orange is an outline in hatch that shows the second-story placement on top of the first floor. So, a 40-foot setback essentially doubles the setback that's required, and would remove, you know, a substantial section of the second-story house, of the second story, excuse me. This is showing it from a different angle. This is a side-facing elevation, so this would be your right-hand side elevation. That red line is not the rear property line, it's the rear setback. And then, this is the area that would be removed with the, with the appellant's request. So key issues, findings for approval, individual review applications are subject to findings that the project is consistent with development standards, FAR, height, lot coverage, setbacks, et cetera, daylight plane, and then also that the, the project is consistent with individual review guidelines. So looking at, there's five guidelines, but the three ones that are of importance, in particular here, relate to streetscape appearance, massing scale and height, as well as the key issue, which is privacy. Also, briefly, this is an area of the city that was studied as a part of the Eichler Design Guidelines, which were, which are a voluntary guideline, but staff has included an analysis of the project relative to those guidelines, and we believe, we believe and recommend that the application is consistent with the guidelines as presented. So that's, that's basically it. We are recommending that the council uphold the director's decision to approve the application that was presented to us on August 28th, after, after the two director's hearings. And our recommendation is included in the staff report in the Record of Lady section.
Thank you. So, just to do a quick check on process here, I believe the appellant gets 10 minutes to present their case, at which point the applicant gets three minutes to rebut. No, sorry, the applicant gets 10 minutes to respond, the appellant gets three minutes?
So I think it's 10-minute presentations, first by the appellant, then the applicant, and then rebuttal, three, they each get three minutes.
They each have three minutes to rebut, okay. And, at some point, we should do disclosures. Should we do that now, or after they speak? Now. Okay, so we'll do disclosures, then we'll do remarks by the appellant and the applicant. So let's start at that end of the table. Councilmember Tanaka, do you have anything to disclose?
Yeah, so, I had the applicant for the project ask for a meeting. They actually canceled me, so I never met with them. Although they did, they did send an email. And then, usually on these kind of projects, we invite both sides, so we invited people opposing the project, but when we mentioned that we typically, especially for development projects, we broadcast them on our Facebook Live page, just for full disclosure, they declined to meet, so I met with no one.
Councilmember Koo?
I did meet, I did meet with the appellant's.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Fine?
I received emails from the applicant and appellant to my city council email, but didn't respond.
I have received emails from both sides, and I have visited the site, but I have not spoken with either the appellant or the applicant. Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, I met with the appellant's, their request, and viewed the backyard, and the neighbor's backyard at 3712, 3714 Carlson Circle, last October.
Councilmember Cormac?
I received an email, my personal or campaign email, not my city email, from the applicant. I responded that I would not be meeting with them.
Thank you. With that, the appellant has 10 minutes.
Welcome. Well, good evening, and thank you so much. You've actually stayed on for so long, so I really appreciate the opportunity. My name is Manoah Drysengani, and I'm actually here today to talk to you not much about the rules or the mathematics that has been basically utilized to approve this project.
Sorry, can I interrupt for a second? To the clerk, can we have the, the presentation on the monitors? Thank you. Sorry.
I'm here to actually really talk about privacy. I think this is a very important piece for us to consider, and almost maybe even reconsider how we are approving plans where we are living with homes that are actually going through complete breach of privacy. So, at this point, I want to just show you a couple of key things, okay? Again, I just want to reiterate, it's a matter of principle and a community mandate, and I'll sort of walk you through those key examples. So the current situation is, there are two pictures of the same home. This is the 40-foot setback. As you can see, this person can actually look into our dining area, pretty much, not exaggerating as much, they can see what we are eating. This is another home, our neighbor. You've got two windows actually looking down into their first level. There was a conversation about having a hedge, that hedge, and you've already gotten a note from Tim Perkins, takes very long to come up. And basically, what you're seeing here is that people can really look into their homes while they are either sitting on a sofa or having a meal. This is another environment where you've got that same home looking into another neighbor's house. So effectively, what you're seeing here is that there are approvals that have gone in by the city, where the privacy aspect has not been met by the math that has been signed off. So let me just talk about some of our deep and long-term concerns here, because, you know, once a building comes up, you've got the situation that you're going through right now, right? So these are the four things that we talked about. We are basically asking for this 40-foot setback. This is a compromise. What I showed you in the first picture was a 40-foot setback, and they can still see, but we believe, we are not averse to our neighbors building a second level. They are most welcome to have it, but we would like them to have it at a 40-foot setback. The back wall of the second level should be at a 40-foot setback. The second thing is, we want to make sure that all the windows are on the front face of that second level. And I'll actually walk you through a couple of key examples to show you what we are doing in, in the, in the area. And then, of course, the things that Graham brought up, we want to make sure that our egress windows are moved to the side, and we want to center the volume of the second level on the, on that, on that first floor. So, very quickly, let me just give you a sample of what that 40 feet and that 29 feet looks like. 40 feet is where you saw that lady standing in a balcony, looking down into the house. 29 feet is what has been sort of approved, right? As you can see, it doesn't help. 29 feet will be a lot closer, they will be able to see into the home if the tree basically falls off, or branches fall off, or the city comes and cuts those branches because the electrical lines are there, and they do this all the time. Every year, they come in and they actually make those trims. As you can see also from that home that is 40-foot setback, there used to be a hedge. It's been six years that hedge has not come back up. It leaves the compliance back on us to come and complain to the city, so that they go ahead and they build or they grow those hedges. This is the second case, where we believe that, if you take a look at this home, this is my house, all the windows are front-facing, they're facing the street. This is the back of my home, on the left. We have no windows, absolutely none, facing the backyard. So that way, there is no compromise that we are trying to make, or trying to, you know, negotiate. We're actually saying, look, our situation is right here. And in the spirit of Eichlers, the outside and inside-out, that we just love, and that's why we moved here, our entire back first level is glass. So if anybody builds anything higher there, they can't see in. Just to save you some time, this is the other piece of our everyday living that is highly impacted because of where the second level mass is. Today, we actually get a lot of sun coming into our home. The solar plane is right there, we can actually see the sunset, not, I wouldn't say sunset, but the setting sun, sort of, right, reaching our house. That gets completely blocked. Here are three pictures that actually show you this from 5:30 PM onwards, during a summer So these are some real impacts that we are going through, and it is sort of our everyday life. We've been here for 15 years, and we have a neighbor who is going to construct a building, effectively taking away a big part of our everyday life. So my request here is that, you know, please do consider. Once again, I want to go with the spirit of the approval, and the way we want to live in a community where the principles of privacy are maintained. And it's not about whether the math was right, or whether the distance was within the guidelines, we are not even debating that. We, we, we in fact agree with you. You must have done it for reasons in some parts of Palo Alto, but that one size does not fit all. Here was a guideline that was actually removed from one of the drafts, very early drafts, before the IR guidelines were finalized. If you take a look at this, there were some folks who had actually put this together. I really would appeal to the council to bring this back. And with that, I would like to conclude these four key areas that I would like to see happen. A 40-foot setback, make sure that all the windows are front-facing on the street. When my neighbor built a home on my, on my left, they put their windows facing the street. We did the same thing. When I say we, our, our house has the same thing, we did not really build a second level, we bought the home with the second level built, but they were very considerate neighbors. And by centering the volume of the second level, that will allow the light plane to still come in, or the solar plane to still come into our home. Otherwise, it will be completely blocked, because once you have those trees, which are mandated by the guidelines, there is no sunlight coming through those streets. So this is realistic, I mean, as best as I can be with you. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant, and you'll have 10 minutes.
I'm actually the architectural designer for the owner, Ming and Meng. I thank Graham for presenting a good, a basic history and then facts about the project, so I don't want to repeat that too much. So I do want to just respond to some of the concerns brought up by the appellant. One, I'll just take what I heard last, you know, he's saying that now he, he may no longer have the afternoon sun, and while he's living in a house, a two-story house, that is also blocking the morning sun for the, for the owner. And then, so, he's been very selfish in terms that, hey, they're building a two-story house, blocking my afternoon sun, while his own house, a two-story house, is blocking the morning sun. So anyway, that, that doesn't make sense, that, that he should deserve the sunlight and, and the, the owners do not. Regarding the privacy issue, I really feel that he's showed you pictures of other homes, other situations, which do have real privacy issues, but this is, this is not our design at all. As Graham brought up to you, we've changed the design a lot, especially on the rear-facing second-floor windows. The art, the, the owners now cannot view into the backyard at all. We've, all the clear windows have been raised up to a height of five feet or above. The only windows that we have that are below five feet are obscured windows, and they're emergency egress windows that are required, required by code. So as far as the privacy issue for our project, the, we, the owners cannot see into the rear yard, so they cannot view into the appellant's home. And as, as far as the, the 40-foot setback, one of the main comments that we had when we submitted the, the project, one of the comments from the, from the city planners that we have to minimize the front elevation. It's a two-story home, we have to minimize the front elevation to reduce the, the mass of the front elevation. So we, one of the requirements is, we do have to push the second floor towards the rear as much as possible. And so, and the, the depth of this property is only 93 feet. The appellant is asking for a 40-foot rear setback. That makes the design virtually impossible for us to do, to comply with the city guidelines and the requirements. And now, I'm going to let the owner speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, respectable mayor and a city council member. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you about our housing project. Our housing project is much less complicated than your previous one. Congratulations for passing it. And, but, you know, it's due actually matter, and a matter to many lives. And this is our little one in the picture. And I want to share with you how much we love this neighborhood and this community. And we have lived in this community for about seven years. We made friends, and we contribute to the community. This is our house decorated in the Christmas Day, and we have many neighbors come to support us. I want to point to Joe, Shang, Rick, Fan, and Shifah. They all came, came out of their way to come here to support us, because they know we have a humble dream. We really, really hope to get your support approved. And, next, oh, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Oh, this one, yeah. Oh, sorry, that's too many. Yeah. Next, I want to give a special thanks to our beloved neighbor, Mr. Bert Lieber. He was an adult, Palo Alto adult education teacher who passed away recently, and he was such a great friend, and he was a strong supporter to our project. He actually came to our last meeting. I'm very sad that he can no longer with us tonight, and, but his family actually continued to support our project by sending a letter, and also in addition, several neighbor also sent the letters in support of our project as well. And I want, with this busy slide, I want to share you, share with you how we contribute to our community. A little bit about myself, I am medical oncologist, working for Kaiser A little bit about myself, I am medical oncologist working for Kaiser-Sand Clara. I care for cancer patients. Every day I face life and deaths and trying to help people to make the right decision and help them. And in our spare time, we water trees at Stanford dish with the magic, tea magic. We, I volunteer and share, and recently I participated building their playground for Panorama Elementary in Daly City. And my husband actually volunteered for special needs kids and get a reward recently as well. So this is a couple, and we really would like you to, to help, to hope, hope we contribute to the community and live harmony with our community. Here, I want you to draw your attention to the little part of our community. The house with the blue circle is our house. The house labored with number two is a little bit hard to see, is actually the clustered around our house. We can see, we can see a two-story house really around us, the, the appellant's and the one more owner who have disagreement is really at our rear, rear side and in a Carlson Circle. And this one is a modern house, two houses away from us, and two-story, modern and non-acular. And this is a house belongs to Mr. Bert Lieber, and he left us. And his house was mentioned multiple times in our appellant's slides. His house actually have a balcony, but I do have a question for the appellant's family. You have lived there for about 15 years. Is there any chance for you to build a tree in between your property to protect your privacy by yourself as well? You know? And so there will be no, like, kind of like, you know, so much argument and confliction between him and you? And the other one is this actually, this picture is showing our appellant's house, and you can see they have a large transparent side window which can see two backyard to the two, next-door neighbor, and they also have large balcony, can walk out and see the front and backyard at two sides of their neighbors. And that probably was not mentioned. And this, this owner actually have problem with, about privacy concern, but they do actually have a large window facing their rear neighbor. Their neighbor asked me to take a picture and present it here to show, you know, many times, privacy is concerned in the acular neighborhood, but by considering neighbor, we try to tolerate and try to do our best to make each other to be able to live. Because of a lot of time, those windows are not available. And next, I want to show you several house with like a large windows being approved in our neighborhood, but privacy has been protected by, by using trees. And I want to show you, you guys, my, our unfortunate house condition. You know, after dry summer, everyone is enjoying the rain on Thanksgiving Day. This is our house. We have leaking roof, and in the master bedroom, we have to use a basin to hold the water. And we have cracks in our living room and leaking bathroom, and also slanted door in the, in the living room. So our housing is in very poor condition. Is that, not that we are asking for a mansion here, we're asking for affordable and livable house in this commu, in this luxury community. How do our new house belong? It's acre design, and sorry for the, excuse me for the spelling, it's autocorrect. And you can see that we have maximized our privacy protection, obey the rules, and our architect, Ket Lee, actually mentioned a little bit about, okay, mentioned, I'm sorry, extensively about it. And this is a very busy slide, but I want to show you, please focus on the rear end. I am five feet. What does it mean? Means like the window is going to be above my, my, my head, actually, or the below it is all opaque, meaning nobody can see soon, unless we put like a high tour person like our mayor, probably have to put a, put a chair and standing on top to see the neighbor's, you know, backyard. So like, and this is why I took a picture actually recently in December with less leaf. You can see, we barely can see the neighbor's backyard, and I'm standing at the future master bedroom side. And not only that, it's already have a lot of tree, and we actually propose to build, to actually plant three more trees over there. And our humble dream is in your, in your hands. I really hope we can have a dry Thanksgiving Day this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, we'd like to invite the appellant back. You'll have three minutes to respond.
Are there any public speakers?
Are there any public speakers?
I think they come after this.
No, the, the responses would come after the public testimony.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, yeah. In that case...
I'm an appellant, undersun.
No, no, so...
So I think what we're going to do is we're going to open it to the public to speak, and after the public speak, the appellant and applicant will each have three minutes to summarize. Sorry. We'll, we'll get this. So the first, the first, we have seven speakers, and you will each have two minutes, and the first speaker is John Hurst.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Late evening tonight, but a great, a great presentation earlier on the, the housing. Well, I'm really here to talk on behalf of my neighbors and friends on the Carlson Circle, really looking at this from a perspective of overall planning and privacy. And I want to endorse what they were saying, if there was a way to work in a compromise to, to enable our, these folks to have their dream. No one's saying they shouldn't be able to build their second-story home, but also do it in a way that I think is, works with, with, with the neighbors and works with, from a privacy perspective. I live on the circle myself, and we worked very hard when we did our remodel in terms of what we were trying to do from our backyard perspective, because obviously, Eichlers were first designed to kind of be single-story homes. There are 244 homes in Fair Meadow, and we like it that way. And that one home that you, the, the nice lady here cited, was kind of put in under the radar. So it, it is about privacy. It is about trying to work on a compromise, and, and I'm endorsing my neighbors in their efforts to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Rick Tan.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So I used to live in San Jose, and now live in Palo Alto. I'm a hardware engineer for Microsoft. I've known Mr. Long pretty much when I was in San Jose. He volunteers for a special needs organization. He, you know, he actually teaches a class for special needs kids, and he actually doesn't have to. Usually it's, it's for parents of, you know, children with special needs, and, you know, his, his son is fine, he doesn't even need to go there. And one thing that I do notice is, you know, he, he really cares about, you know, the kids, and he devotes a lot of time and effort to help them out. So, you know, I'm here in support of their, their project, and privacy concerns, I think, is important as well. You know, I certainly wouldn't want to have anybody, you know, be looking in, but, you know, there's, there's ways to mitigate that, right? You can put up curtains, you can open it up whenever you feel like it, and close it up when you don't. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next will be Joe Kagan.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I believe that the concerns have been addressed. They're not going to be able to see into the folks' backyard. It's interesting, these people have a big bay window on the side of their house, which they can look directly into my backyard and onto my porch, as well as their next-door neighbor's backyard directly. They can see the whole thing. They've never done anything to their window to mitigate that, so my indoor-outdoor lifestyle wouldn't be affected. But I must admit, I've never really thought about them peeking at me, nor have I thought about peeking over at my other neighbors. I live right next to that Mediterranean house with windows all over it, and, well, they're my neighbors, so I don't really wonder about them peeking at me. I'm not paranoid about my privacy or what I do in my backyard. So I'm not sure what they're so worried about, that their neighbors have all this time on their hands to peek at them. I think since we all know each other, at least on Redwood Circle, it's not a concern of ours that people have a two-story house with windows or a one-story house without. So I just want to let you know that we support their two-story house. They can have all the windows they want, and they can look down on our one-story Eichler. By the way, their house isn't an Eichler.
Thank you. Next, Shifa Ju.
Hello, dear Mayor and the council member. Good evening also, very last neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time. So today I come here to support this project. So we know Ming and Meng for several years. So because both of us has special needs kids, every day we play together. Even though my kids every day will try to go to his home to find his song and play with them, because this family is very happy, it's very responsible and respectful. So because for, for the father, Meng is, has contributed a lot of effort, energy to help other families, as mentioned before by other neighbors about his volunteer to teach the class. Also about Ming, because he is a doctor, he helped lots about the patient, also about the neighbors. So both, so this family is very familiar by the neighbors. On the root, on the red of the circle and the, of the circle, I'm living in the circle for three years. So you will go to those two circles to ask them, who is Meng? Who is Meng? They will tell you, who is Meng? Every day we just go around. So also, I want to know, this family, it's vulnerable to have a better life quality. We know the, the Eichler current they live, you just mentioned, is a, is a rainy, sun is giving, is, is about 40 or 50 years old. So there are so many things should be improved. I think now this is a good time and opportunity for them to get their dream house. So I come here to support, strongly support this project. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Fan Ding.
Good evening, Mayor and council member. My name is Fan Ding, and I'm a Palo Alto resident. Oh, sure, thank, yeah, thank you. My name is Fan Ding, and I'm a Palo Alto resident from the Fair Meadow neighborhood, and I would like to thank you, all of you, for giving me this opportunity to express my full support to the proposal by the current owner, Mr. Long and Ms. Lee, to building their house. I know it is a two-story, single-family house. I have known this couple for a couple of years since they moved in, into the current house, which is right across the street from mine. Through all these years I've known them, they are three, they are nice, friendly, caring, and also credible people. I, they're willing to help other residents in the neighborhood because they believe in building a family-like harmony community is really important for everyone. To me, it's a real honor to have them as my neighbor. When I first heard of their projects, I really feels happy for them, but unfortunately, their project has been proof for two and a half years. And I truly understand that they have done all they can to address the concerns of their neighbor regarding the privacy. I can feel their pain, their stress they've been through, not only financially, but also emotionally as well. Personally, I live, I love living here in Palo Alto. I know it's an open-minded city and welcoming as well. And whenever we are talking about building a two-story house, people have concerns over the privacy, it's all understandable. But I believe this couple have done all they can to address them as much as they can, and I do believe they deserve the right and opportunity to build their dream house, at least in the community they call home. By the way, their design has been approved by the, the city building department, so I don't see any reason they should be rejected. But anyway, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Sean Ju.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So my name is Sean Zhou. I'm a local leader and also a Palo Alto resident. So I understand each party wants their best benefit, but it can be conflict in some areas. That is why the government needs to make laws, guidelines, and standards, and enforce them in practice in order to make it fair to all parties. Now regarding this project, just as it states in the final conditional approval, it meets all five of the Palo Alto Single Family Individual Review Guidelines and complies with the R1 Zone District Development Regulations. And the applicant has done their best to accommodate neighbors' reasonable requests, and the design has exceeded the standards in many ways. So I believe this, and I hope this project should get a final approval. And also regarding the appellant's current requests regarding the privacy, I knew the design has already been revised a lot to address that issue, and I believe the neighbors should also do their own work to fulfill that by putting windows coverings, planting tree hedges, etc. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we return to the, to the applicant.
Applicant.
To the applicant.
Applicant for a three-minute rebuttal.
So the applicant first and then the appellant?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we need the, the, the lungs.
I just wanted to add a few things to what we had, what the owners and I had addressed earlier. You know, we submitted this project back in July of 2017. You know, we heard the, the neighbors, we, we worked very hard, changed the design completely. We just, you know, all the neighbors, we, we heard from a lot of neighbors, you know, the, the appellant was not one of them. Anyway, we worked almost a year. We got the first tentative approval in May of 2018, and that's the first time that we heard from the appellant. And we were surprised because, you know, they, they had never written any emails, or we, we didn't see any, any, anything from the city planners to say, hey, yeah, there, there's this neighbor that has this privacy concern. Nevertheless, we went through three months, had multiple directors' hearings, we sat down with the, the appellant. We tried, you know, we changed the, the rear elevation design, we added obscured windows, we proposed more trees, we tried to explain to them that we could not get a 40-foot rear setback. The appellant did not compromise at, at all. They still claimed their privacy was being intruded, even though, you know, we, we showed them the rear elevation. Hey, you know what? We can't even, you know, the, the lowest viewable point is five foot. We can't even see the, in the rear yard. They still did not accept that. They bring up other non-relevant issues, other homes that, that intruded on their privacy. But we want to just focus on our, our, our project, which we feel that we've done in terms of privacy protection, a lot more than what other existing homes already have. You know, the owners now can't even see into the rear yard, and, and, you know, we, we cannot accommodate that 40-foot setback. And so it, it's been, you know, almost a year and a half of this process, and I, you know, for me, it's been hard, but for the owner, it's been so much harder. They've, they've compromised so much in their, their design, and so I ask that if you take that into consideration and hopefully approve their project. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that...
And then three minutes for the appellant.
Three, three minutes for the appellant. Okay. Third time's a charm.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ron Ricegani. I'm the son of Juslin and Manoj Ricegani, the primary appellant today. So we heard a lot of awesome things about the applicants, all the community service they do, how invested they are in the community, and for that, I want to applaud them. Thank you for everything that you do. You truly are good people. We don't have a problem with them as people, but we do have a problem with the plan. So let's try and separate the person from the problem, so we can look at this objectively and actually talk about... and actually talk about the facts. So in the initial application, when the city staff was looking over the initial proposal, they actually presented the plan, the revised plan, with the new 40-foot setback. They said that this can be done. The architect then later gets up and says, oh, this plan is, quote, "virtually impossible." The city staff literally showed everybody in this room that a 40-foot setback is possible. So I want you to take whatever is said by the architect with a grain of salt because it is clearly a biased perspective in favor of the applicant. Let's move forward to the actual privacy issue at hand. The privacy issue at hand has not really been addressed by the applicants in today's hearing. They've talked a lot about what they've done for the community, they've talked a lot about their dream. And we strongly believe in dreams too. We want everyone's dream to be a reality, but we want our privacy to be respected. Now, Mr. Joe Kagan gets up and talks about the issue of privacy, stating that we can look into his home. The window in question is on a landing, and I grew up in that house almost my entire life, never even knew that that existed. Joe never brought it up to our attention, which honestly comes to me as no surprise, considering in his next sentence, he said, "I'm not worried about my neighbors looking into my house. I'm not worried about them peeping." If Joe doesn't care about his privacy, why does that mean we shouldn't care about our privacy? The topic of privacy has not been fleshed out today, and that is really a problem. The windows at hand can still be opened. The house in the second story, if the second story is not moved back, does block the afternoon sun. We are not currently encroaching on anyone's morning sun because we are 40 feet away from the neighbors currently. So the line, and I shouldn't have to explain this to an architect, when the sun comes down, when the ray of light comes down from the sky, it comes down at an angle, meaning the farther away you are, the higher chance you have of sun hitting your house. So when you move that house toward us, then the issue of sun becomes a problem. Again, this is elementary physics, and for me to have to explain this to an architect is honestly mind-blowing. So please, listen to our complaint, acknowledge that privacy is a problem, and don't let people with vested claims blow that off because it is truly an issue. And now with five seconds of my time, I would like to strongly implore the council, listen to privacy, recognize that one size does not fit all, and let's make this a better Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. We now return to council for comments, questions, and potential motions. Would anybody like to go first? Councilmember DuBois.
Quick question for staff. One question, one thing that didn't come up. Looks like there's an ADU or accessory dwelling unit in the back setback. It shows the lavatory in the drawings, but the comment says there's no lavatory. Is that going to be inhabitable?
So there's an, excuse me, there's an accessory structure that's shown. And in the R1 zoning districts, you're allowed to have up to a 120-square-foot accessory structure. And it can include up to two plumbing fixtures. So you could have a lavatory and a sink, for example. But the second that you had another one, say a shower, for example, you can't, you can't do that without an accessory dwelling unit permit. So what's shown in the drawings is...
Shower and a lavatory?
Yeah, you couldn't have a shower, sink, and toilet. You'd have to, you have to pick.
Okay, so if it...
It's not, it's not an ADU. It's...
If it becomes inhabited, it's something that would be enforceable or...
As I understand it, the plans are drawn not as an ADU. If it later got converted, if they, if there was an interest to convert it to an ADU, they'd have to get permits for that, address the requirements. I don't know what the setbacks are.
Yeah, they're at their max FAR as shown currently. So it's not impossible that it could be converted to an ADU at a later date, but...
Well, does it meet the setback requirements? Because accessory structure...
Six-foot setback off the side and a six-foot setback off the rear. So it would, it would meet the requirements for...
Okay. And do we ever, do we ever suggest that trees be planted like 10 feet back from the fence line?
Would you? Yeah. And what's, what's shown is three, three trees, and in addition to the existing landscaping that would need to be retained. It is fairly common for individual review applications that we request landscaping as a mitigation measure, especially along the rear.
Yeah. But I'm saying those new trees aren't at the fence line, they're actually pulled, pulled into the property to set it to the back.
Right. Yeah, we do that sometimes as well, yeah. It depends on the situation.
So I guess some comments. Everybody here seems like good citizens and, you know, we don't approve projects based on community volunteering. But I think this is the first project to come to us under the Eichler Design Guidelines. I don't think we should expect to get those guidelines right from the start, and we should anticipate needing to tweak them. We've got a bunch of emails about privacy in Eichler neighborhoods. This is quite an interesting case in that it's a two-story Eichler with several other two-story Eichlers around it, or modified Eichlers. And, you know, walking around that neighborhood and that street, it's, it's clear that the older two-story homes are mostly oriented with windows not to invade privacy. The massing is towards the street. And, and they kind of are designed in the Eichler style. And so the new home isn't really pushed forward towards the street. It has some elements of horizontal lines. And I would say that the inner circle is much more intact in terms of being an Eichler So I do think it's a reasonable thing for the council to discuss about where privacy fits into the Eichler Guidelines. And I think we've created a problem, then I'd love staff to play it back, but it seems like there's a conflict between the IR requirements and the Eichler Guidelines. I mean, the point of the guidelines was to apply to Eichler neighborhoods, but it seems like exactly this case, the IR is pushing the second story towards the back, which is going to create privacy problems. And that just seems like an issue we're going to run to again and again with Eichlers. And so it seems like something we should, we should fix. So I'm sympathetic. I think, I think I would support some, some further setback in the second story. I think there are quite a lot of windows on the second story on all sides. I think it would be great if there were fewer windows along the back. So I'll listen to my colleagues and see where we end up.
I'm sorry, did you want...
So the appellant mentioned something about previously there was the 40-foot setback. Can you elaborate a little bit more for me?
I think, I was looking at the initial iteration of the plans from June of 2017, and I don't see that to be the case. They might be able to elaborate a little bit further because I'm not seeing a 40-foot setback on a different iteration of the plans.
So did it, even with the new plans, was there anything that came through that was with a second story that was more towards the front?
They pushed a section of it between the director's hearing and the director's approved plans. The applicant did push a section towards the front. It was a small section, and it was about a one-foot, three-inch adjustment. So that came a little bit further forward. But beyond that, there hasn't been much change in terms of the rear setback.
So, you know, I agree with Councilmember DuBois about maybe working out a compromise and trying to get some less windows at the back, and perhaps the massing to be a little bit more towards the front. I do know that privacy is a big issue for many, many homeowners. And then even the sunlight and so forth, that's pretty important. I think in the previous agenda item, somebody talked about the blockage of their sunlight. You have, you know, I know, I know there, you know, with Eichlers, it's a special problem, you know, when neighbors are building their houses. And I'm sure this is not the only appeal you have, correct?
We haven't had any appeals to the council in six years.
Oh, at least to ARB, maybe to ARB?
No, no, no. No.
No?
None.
Because I, I have been meeting with some neighbors, and so there are cases perhaps that are going to come, but that's beside the point. Is there, is there any kind of way to put deed, include into the deed about hedges and trees? Because as properties change hands, that promise can be forgotten or not kept. So how, is there some way to enforce privacy for hedging?
Sure. So it's not typical that we would require a deed restriction in this instance, but what we do have, and it's included in the Record of Land Use Action, is specific conditions of approval for the landscaping in particular, and for the purpose of ensuring that the project continues to comply with the IR Guidelines. And this runs with the land. It runs virtually like a deed restriction. And regardless of who the owner is, once the project is there, the house is there, the landscaping is considered a part of the project and needs to remain for the life of the structure. So if, you know, landscaping isn't doing its, doing its job or isn't meeting the requirements that the council sets forth, then, you know, if there's a complaint, then we'll enforce it.
We will enforce it?
Yeah. We will, and we, and we do on a regular basis, yeah.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you. So just going through the report a little bit, on page 14 of the staff report, you have findings for the director's approval. So first of all, I just want to make clear, compliance with R1 development standards. So this project meets the FAR zoning, lot coverage, setbacks, height, and all that?
Correct.
Okay. And it went through the individual review guidelines over a period of how long?
Since June of 2017.
Okay, and it's had two directors' hearings, which are meetings between the applicants and the appellants and the director and other planning staff?
Correct. Anyone from the public can attend as well.
Okay. Going to some of the appellant's objections and requests, as you've laid out on page nine, going from top, from bottom to top. So in the requiring opaque glass on a one-foot, eight-inch-wide right-side window, that's actually being included?
That's correct. Yeah, it's on the right-hand side.
Okay. In terms of relocating rear-facing egress windows to the side elevations, can you spell out for us why staff did not?
Yeah. So typically, it depends on the layout of the house. So it depends on how the rooms are arranged. But all things being equal, we would prefer to see egress windows facing the rear as opposed to the sides. And that, that's specifically because there's a potential for privacy impacts to be much greater side yard to side yard because you have six feet of setback on each side of the properties. So your 12, 12 feet is typical. And when we looked at that specific request, we thought that there would be a greater impact, potential privacy impact, given the layout of the windows on the adjacent properties that are on either side.
Okay. So the two adjacent properties would be six feet from those windows? And in this case, the current setup is it's 29 feet from the rear setback?
Of the, the second, yeah, the second level is, yeah.
Second floor, egress windows.
Correct.
Okay. On the second bolden point about centering the second story above the first story, Councilmember DuBois mentioned it looks like a lot of the mass here is to the back. But one of our individual review guidelines is also about, you know, the street face and that kind of massing. So I'm just wondering if you can walk me through the second point of centering the second story above the first story?
That was, that's the appellant's request. In terms of, you know, what that would do, it would shift it more towards the left if you're looking, looking at the, the project plans in plan view, it'd shift it more to the left, or I guess in this case to the north. That's their request.
Okay. And then imposing the 40-foot rear setback, the requirement is 20 feet? And right now, the second story is at 29 feet?
It's 20 foot, 20 feet, but you also have a rear daylight plane that cuts a 60-degree angle into the property. So it ultimately, the requirement is usually a little bit greater than 20 feet, depending on where the second floor is located.
Can you tell me what it is in this case?
Oh. One second, let me look it up. 20 feet, 60 degrees. I don't have a dimension, but I can just eyeball it. It's probably about a six-foot, it's six feet below the rear daylight plane, so...
Okay. So 26. Okay. And then this project is planned at 29 feet from that rear line?
From the rear, rear lot line, yeah.
Lot line. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Cormac.
I'd like to start by complimenting staff on a very well-written and organized report. I appreciate that, especially coming at the end of the packet. It was easy for me to, to follow along. You stated earlier the project meets all of the R1 zones and codes. Does that mean the, so let me just clarify, the project has not asked for any exceptions or variances. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can the applicant see into the appellant's backyard from their second floor?
I think we could ask them. They did show a photograph, you know, kind of showing the...
But the glazing is to five feet.
Correct.
Okay. All righty. Councilmember DuBois is correct that there is an inherent conflict between the individual review guidelines and the Eichler Design Guidelines. And Ms. French, may remember that I brought this up during the development of the Eichler Design Guidelines. Let me explain why I am familiar with the Eichler Design Guidelines. I live in a one-story Eichler. I have a two-story next to me on one side, and there's currently a two-story next to me under construction. So these are always a balancing act. I just want to state that. Having said that, and having reviewed this, I am loath to design from the dais.
I just want to clarify, I think, I think I was clear, but again, it just seems that the way Councilmember Fine brought it up, that the individual review is saying it should be pushed away from the street. But when you look at the images of the two-story houses in the Eichler neighborhood, the ones that are most Eichler-like are ones with the second story pushed flat towards the street. And, and I understand our current guidelines aren't, DRCO guidelines aren't mandatory, but I think it's a real issue that, and it's kind of separate from this case, it's something we should address because I think it's going to come back over and over again, that really in an Eichler neighborhood, you want kind of a flat plain at the street. And so I just want to, I know it's getting late, I wasn't sure if I was being entirely clear, but to me, that's, that's kind of the biggest issue here, is how do we deal with that going forward?
Councilmember Cormac.
Staff can correct me, but I believe the Eichler Design Guidelines specifically say that it be pushed back. So while we are used to seeing, so, you know, this is my own personal experience, perhaps Ms. French can help me, but while we are used to seeing some Eichler additions that are pushed towards the front, the Eichler Guidelines specifically suggest that it be pushed further back. Am I not, am I remembering this correctly? It was a long, it was a long 159-page document.
Amy French, Chief Planning Official. So I was on the Eichler Guidelines project, and we did look at ways to have compatible second-floor additions. And of course, voluntary, not mandatory guidelines for, even for IR projects. And this project came in well before those were adopted, and the IR Guidelines were the operative. So they spent quite a bit of time just with the IR Guidelines, and then we had some voluntary guidelines that came along. Do the, do the homes do better if they're pushed forward? On a larger lot, well, probably that would be a good idea and have, you know, have greater privacy at the back. But, you know, we worked with the applicant to try to get the windows so they're high and everything else reduced, remove the bay windows and all of that. The bay windows didn't seem to be compatible at the back.
Thank you.
It looked to me like there were, there were other homes in the neighborhood that had a second floor where the setback was significantly less than 40 feet. Did I, did I see that right? Where the second floor setback was less than 40 feet from the, from the rear property line?
Certainly, yeah. I think the one that's immediately adjacent is setback 40 feet. That's the project to the, or the house to the, to the left.
It looked to me like there were a couple that were pretty close that where the setback was not 40 feet, it was, you know, it was 20 feet or 25 or something like that. Am I reading that right?
I'd have to look at it a little bit further.
Okay. And the other question I wanted to ask was, you know, a lot of this hinges on the issue of privacy from the rear of the house into the applicant's yard, right? Can you talk, there's, there's three or four windows on the back of the, on the back of the house. Can you talk about sort of the privacy implications of those windows?
In, in staff's opinion, the privacy impacts have been addressed through a combination of reducing the width of the egress windows, increasing the sill height to five feet for the sections that are, you know, obscured glazing, having those be five feet.
So the glaze?
And the existing landscaping along the rear, which is substantial, plus the additional landscaping.
Okay. Okay. And the, and the issue of the setback really is one of privacy as well. The, the issue of the front setback, right, isn't part of the appeal, right? It's only the rear setback, right?
Well, I, I mean, I think the totality of the project is before the council.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So I'm looking at the plans, page 812. There's two landscape plans. E, I guess E is existing and is new. And so I had asked if the trees could be pushed away from the fence. They're not really specified exactly, are they? I mean, is this meant to show exactly what they would be?
So they're going to be a, a type of pitasporum, and then we specify in the conditions of approval, time of, at the time of planting, how high, how high they need to be and as well as the box size. So it gives you kind of a, I think, 24-inch box.
I'm asking, how far is the trunk from the fence, the rear fence?
In, looks like you got three trees. They're all approximately four to six feet off from the, off from the property line.
Okay. And again, is that, is that specified or is that just a...
No, it's not specified. We allow some flexibility typically in these situations, but, you know, owing to site conditions.
May I ask the architect the question?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee? Thank you. So the design actually is really nice and it actually really matches the neighborhood. So I want to thank you for the consideration of, you know, changing it to more compatible to the neighborhood. But I was wondering, I know that you have, so the second story is actually 29 feet away from the boundary line, correct?
Right, from the rear property line.
So is there, without, without kind of like messing up your design in any way, is there any way to go not completely 40, but maybe 35 further in? I mean, is there any possibility of doing that?
It would affect the design a lot. The, the second floor, there's three bedrooms on the second floor and it's approximately...
Can you tell me the page?
Oh, I'm just looking on the, the cover sheet that has all the, the data. You know, the second floor is connected by its stairway to the first floor. So even moving the, the second floor forward, it affects the first floor. And so it, it, there's a, just a kind of like a chain reaction. It's not, oh, we're just going to move it two feet, three feet. It just affects the, the first floor, especially with the connection between the second floor and the first floor and the location of the stairway. So that, that's why it's so hard to change. And I think we had a discussion with this at the director's hearing with the, with, the planners and the, and the appellant, you know, they were saying, well, could you push it two feet or two, three feet back? And I said, well, we could, but it won't really affect the privacy views that much anyway, even if we do that and it still affects the design a lot. So really to make an impact, yeah, maybe 40 feet will have a big impact, you know, could improve the privacy issue, but that, it was just change the whole design. We have to redesign the whole second floor and the first floor. And then, and we felt that, you know, having the, the windows be, using obscured window, windows up to five feet would address the privacy issue.
So you have agreed to having the obscure window up to five feet?
Oh, yes, that was part, the agreement that came from the director's hearings. I mean, that we have to have obscure glazing up to five feet. We removed the, the bay windows, so there are no views to the backyard and...
Thank you.
Seeing no further lights, would anybody like to make a motion? One, sorry, Councilmember Cormac.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember, by Vice Mayor Fine. Care to speak to your motion?
This project meets all of our guidelines and the applicant has made a lengthy and good-faith effort to resolve as many considerations as possible. And again, I'm, you know, I'm loath to, to redesign from the dais.
Councilmember Fine, care to speak to your second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you everyone for coming tonight. I think the appellant's did bring up some good issues of privacy and I'm glad a few of those small changes could be incorporated into the design over the past year or so, but agreed with Councilmember Cormac. The only thing I'll do, and I won't put this in the motion, but I would encourage you, I think Councilmember DeBois does have a reasonable suggestion that if and when you plant these trees, maybe they are further from the fence and closer to the glazed windows, if that helps, and maybe at least checking in with your neighbors to see if that helps. Just a suggestion.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I'll, I'll actually propose an, hopefully a friendly amendment. So again, I'm still concerned about, we have these Eichler guidelines. I don't think we're ready to turn those into Eichler requirements tonight, but I would ask that we direct staff to update the individual review with Eichler massing standards in Eichler neighborhoods on the second floor. So this is starting to get...
Question, we're discussing one particular project, is, is that something that, that can be done? And Councilmember DeBois's suggestion, is that appropriate for this?
I guess I'm not, I didn't hear the whole thing. Is this separate and apart from the project that we're looking to...
Apart from the project, I was saying I'd like staff to look at updating the individual review to apply the Eichler massing guidelines to, in Eichler neighborhoods to individual review. I think there's this conflict right now that...
You know, I think we got some direction when we presented the Eichler guidelines to the council as it related to single-story occupancy. Right, so, so the Eichler guidelines are voluntary and so if, if the, so we do look at those guidelines in our review of individual review applications as we've done here.
Yep.
And...
So my concern is city staff telling applicants they need to push the second story back, which is exacerbating the problem in an Eichler neighborhood. I'd like to see some flexibility there in Eichler neighborhoods.
Well, I think there is flexibility. I was just looking at the Eichler guidelines and it does speak to not having complicated facades, but it also suggests not stacking additions on top of the front, you know, the single story. So I don't know, I mean, and this isn't an addition, this is brand-new construction, so I mean, there's maybe a little room for a conversation there, but I, I would suggest that it's, we do that already. If you wanted us to be more aggressive with the Eichler guidelines, we would need to get some kind of, you know...
That's what I was saying, not, not all the guidelines. I think in this particular case, talking about second-story massing, it just, it sounded like during this project, the applicant was advised that they needed to push the second story towards the back, which, you know, caused more of a problem, so.
So, so council members, the Eichler guidelines were carefully considered and council made some direction in a noticed item to the community where all folks who are interested in Eichler neighborhoods had an opportunity to come and talk. So certainly you're able to revisit and adjust those, but you should do it at a meeting that's noticed to talk about the Eichler guidelines generally.
So, so again, I just, I'm concerned, this is the first time they've really been used. If we do that at an appropriate time, again, I'm not, I'm not saying that they should all become requirements. What I am saying is we should try to make sure our individual, individual review, which is a requirement, not be in conflict with it as much as possible. So I will, I will withdraw the proposed amendment, but I really think this is something we should keep an eye on.
I think it just, you know, we may need to examine further whether or not there is a conflict. I hear what you're saying, but I, I'm not prepared at 11:30 to sort of do that analysis right now.
That was going to be my question, is, do you, do you agree with Councilmember DeBois that there's a conflict between the individual view and the Eichler guidelines? And I think he just said maybe, or maybe not, right? Okay. Let's see, I have lights from Councilmember Tanaka and then Councilmember Koo.
Question for staff. So right now, there's like frosted glass, obscured glass up to five feet, right? Have you guys thought about, or is this not possible, to just make it all the way like fully frosted? Or is there some sort of code requirement that requires it to be clear?
There's no code requirement, no, but we also, you know, want to ensure that whoever's living there in this case, Ming and Meng, are able to have some clear glass, you know, so that they can see out of their, see out of their home.
No, council member, if, if the council were interested in full obscure glazing, that would be within the council's purview.
It is kind of interesting, if you look at the other houses in the neighborhood, I mean, you know, the appellant's, for example, doesn't have any back windows at all. Sorry, go ahead.
So, so have you brought this up with either party? And if so, what have they said?
We discussed that in a director's hearing. And if we want, you could have the applicant speak to that as well as the appellant.
Can you just summarize, like what was...
Yeah, no, we discussed it at the director's hearing and I think that they, the applicants at that request, you know, could you make everything obscured as, you know, one possible mitigation said that they prefer to not have an entire facade of their home be obscured.
I'm just wondering, so what did the appellant think?
I don't, I don't want to speak for, you know, the, the appellant team or the applicant team, but if you want to direct a question to them.
Yes, we don't, we don't have minutes the way that we do for other boards and commissions for the director's hearings. What we do have, I mean, and all parties are here and can speak to it if there's a, you know, if the council wants to ask that question, but what we landed on was the condition that you see in the, in the determination.
Okay. Will the mayor allow the people to speak about that?
You may.
Okay. Can each of you guys just briefly, briefly talk about that concept in terms of if frosted glass that goes higher? I don't know who wants to go first.
Yes. So thank you so much for spending extra time taking really, really, our home, really, really seriously. I appreciate your effort to stay long. And so in addressing the whole opaque window, and number one, we, I think the appellant actually acknowledged we are obeying all the CD code, even their own house, although you said no window, they do have windows actually about five feet, which is this long and with like basically opaque, a transparent window to at least allow some sunshine. So in current situation, I would not be able to look at my backyard, but am I allowed to see a little bit of sky out of my roof? You know, I, I think it's, we are able, we trying our best to accommodate their, you know, request, but same times, we want a little bit of quality of life, which, you know, it's not much to ask. Please.
Yeah, just one quick note, I have designed two-story homes in Palo Alto and, you know, Graham can speak to this too, but usually the, the five-foot height is, is like the height that they use for privacy, especially on the side windows. Side windows are usually to not intrude on the side neighbors. Five-foot is kind of like the standard height as far as trying to protect the privacy of adjacent neighbors. And again, I think this, the issue of obscured glazing, when it came up during the director's hearing, the, the appellant really didn't make a, make a big deal about that issue specifically. It was more of just not having windows at all and not, and try to get a 40-foot rear setback.
Hi, council members. Thank you so much for taking the time, we so, so appreciate it. With this question on opaqueness, if you look at Eichler homes, I want to go back to privacy one more time. Yes, windows are above, usually over six feet, and we would love it if they would make it opaque. And yes, we love that suggestion. Anything to make a house more private, because in the night, when the lights are on, you can see everything in an Eichler. And that's what we've been talking about. You live in Eichler, Ms. Cormac, you know how it is. In the night, no trees help you. In the winter, no trees help you. So please help us and do right by the Eichler neighborhood. We are 244 homes in Palo Alto and all we are saying is please do not step on our privacy, maintain the heritage of Eichler homes. Thank you.
And just a note on what the architect has said about the five-foot rule. Just by looking at this room, I would say most of us are over five feet tall, so if, like by about a head. And I would say that even if it is opaque, up to five feet tall, if you can stand right at the window and look out the window at something, what are you looking at? If our house is directly below and the entire wall is just straight glass, you can see directly into the home. Also on top of that, fully, making the windows fully opaque is an excellent idea. The only problem that would stand in the way after that is that the windows can be open, thus rendering the opaqueness useless. However, if we can reach a resolution today that says the windows cannot be opened from the inside or the outside, they're just windows on the wall, and if they're fully opaque, that is something that we can accept. Thank you.
So I, I just want to ask, I, I, probably opaque doesn't mean like, it's like frosted glass, right? We're not talking about, we're not talking about like blacked-out glass, right?
No.
Okay, okay. So, okay, just want to make sure that's clear. And I assume that, you know, you have to escape for fires, so you can't, you can't close, you can't have the windows not opening. Okay. I just want to understand from staff, in other projects, has, has there been the precedent of having like all frosted glass? Or is this like a very novel thing to be requiring?
On the rear, it's a relatively new thing. I wouldn't say that we've never done frosted glass on the back, because there's been a one-off here and there. It's much more common on the sides, which is also what's shown on the project plans for, for the application. So you, you do occasionally see fully frosted on the sides, but it's, I've never seen it on the, on the back for a, for a egress window, so something of a pretty decent size.
How tall are these windows?
So the, the windows in question, the egress windows, two feet to the, the bottom of the sill, that's where the obscure glazing begins, and then they go up another, another six feet to the, to the top.
Okay.
So eight, eight feet in total.
Eight feet total, and then the glazing goes from zero to five?
From two to five, yeah.
It goes from two to five? Okay.
Correct, yeah. The window, the window begins at two feet above the floor.
All right, and which parts are operable of this window?
It's, it's not indicated, but it, if it's an egress window, it'll, you know, it has to have fire code requirements, so it would need to-
The whole thing, or half of it, or?
Half of it.
Half of it. I'm not going to ask you if it's casemata or any.
It's not indicated, unfortunately.
Okay.
I think it's actually on page eight of the presentation.
Which presentation?
This one.
On this one? Page eight. Fantastic. So, so helpful, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Philsef. So it would be one, two, three, four, five, six, or eight? Eight sections, right? I, I guess I'm interested in understanding how much of a, how much of a holdup this is from everyone else. If this is what is required for us to complete this, then, then I'm open to it. I, I welcome input from others.
So my main comment, I guess, is what the young gentleman brought up, actually, that if these are egress windows, even if they're opaque, you can still open them and see, right? So I don't think that saying they're all frosted solves it. At the same time, then that leaves-
It's a compromise.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it is a compromise, and if you guys want that, go for it. I think at the same time, you know, like, I'm not, I wouldn't be happy if we're saying, you know, as the next step, remove these windows, because they are egress windows. And I think if you read in the staff report, it does say that egress windows on the rear are safer than those on the side, so that's an important life and safety consideration. But yeah, kind of on the same level as Councilmember Cormack, if it gets us to complete this
Not seeing a lot of indication of one way or the other, so, why don't-
Well, I guess, maybe, and I would drag this thing out for too long, but, you know, I was just thinking also, like, if it's frosted, it would actually kind of look more uniform versus kind of spotty the way it is now, but we're getting into the details. But I, I'm just trying to think, because these people are going to have to live together, right? And, I mean, they're right, they're neighbors, and I'm just trying to think of how do we, how do we make the ends meet here?
I'm okay, yeah. I'm really, like, after two years, I'm willing to do anything easy to get you guys through. Please, 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 whatever. Open window, I will do it. Please.
Okay, I accept Councilmember Tanaka's recommendation.
Who is the secondor of the motion? Councilmember Fine, do you accept the amendment?
I don't really like this. I did like the issue the applicant brought up in terms of at least being able to see the sky. Sorry? Yeah, I mean, but in the winter, you may not be able to open the window. Are we going to put this to a vote?
Can you make a suggestion?
Councilmember, or do you want me to accept it?
Councilmember Koo, do you have a suggestion that's relevant to this item?
You know, I mean-
That sheds light on the set?
As a, as a realtor, you know, going to the back of a house with a completely opaque window is just not, not right for the view. So at least seeing the sky, you know, is, there's something to it. So instead of a window, and I, I get it, the window can open, but instead of opening upwards, how about opening downwards? I mean, you can look at windows that allow-
I think, I think, it looks to me like they open both ways, since they're double-hung.
Huh?
I think they open both ways, they're double-hung, right?
Yeah, if you open both, well, how would you address the egress, though?
Yeah, egress window, you need to be able to step over it.
I, I guess that doesn't work, I withdraw. We're really trying to find ways, um...
Are you gonna, how are you guys gonna vote on this? On the opaqueness?
On the opa, on the opacity.
Well, look, I think it makes the, both parties kind of happy, so maybe we should just do it and call it done.
I feel like now we've gone the other direction.
Yeah. I, I think we should put this to a vote.
To a vote with the, without the amendment.
So, so your amendment is now an unfriendly amendment, which means we're going to vote on it, right? And so if there's a second, we'll vote on, on the amendment to make the windows opaque. Is there a second? Seeing no second, the amendment fails.
Point of information.
Okay. We now return to the main motion. Councilmember Koo, did you have any further comments?
Yes, so, back to trees. So you, in the report over here, it states that it's required on packet page 392. Can we make it part of a deed restriction and/or, and then, I know, I talked about that earlier, and you said you could, or a condition, but I, I would like some security in terms of some privacy, and if we can have that. But not only are the trees planted or shrubs planted so that it is going to provide some screening, but also that when it is maintained, that it doesn't get, that it is, it won't grow tall so it obscures the entire sunlight for the appellant's property. So I'm looking at some of the plans here, and I was wondering, how high is that part that, so on A7 of the plans, the, how high is the first floor from the exterior to the overhang, to the eaves?
So how high is the second floor? I'm sorry.
Well, from the first floor up to the, to the eaves?
Oh, so floor-to-floor, essentially? So you have one feet, one foot to the finished floor elevation on the first floor, and then nine feet of, to the second floor. So a tot, a total of 10, 10 feet off of grade to the second floor.
So from the ground to the second floor?
Yeah.
It's about 10 feet?
Yes, correct.
So if we can have a condition or deed restriction stating that trees are going to be planted to screen and up, and to be maintained up, up to 10 to 11 feet, so that it doesn't continue upward, I don't know if that's a compromise that can work out.
I think that that would, I think we can make that work, yeah.
So, can I make that as an amendment?
I'd be happy to accept that.
If the concern is both increasing privacy for the neighbors, as well as preventing the trees from getting too, too tall in order to-
But to block out the sun.
To block out the sun.
Right.
We might want to have a, a more general range, so that you're not, you know, so that there's a, kind of a lid on how high the tree should be trimmed to, as well as, you know, how tall they should be at the time of planting, to kind of give the, the architect and the landscape architect, you know, a range of species to choose from.
So you're saying my amendment should be inclusive of having the screening and then to be at a certain height?
A certain height, so that, yeah.
So, I'm thinking 11, because based on this drawing, you know, the first floor up to the top of the eaves is probably 11, right?
So, yeah, whatever standard you want to use, I would just suggest maybe a five-foot range, so that we've got time for, to grow between seasons, and we're not always out there inspecting.
Well, I was just saying, up, so the tree maintained should be up to 11 feet.
Okay, so the ceiling is-
Maximum.
Got it. That works too, but...
So retaining, retaining the, the existing condition of approval, that includes an eight-foot minimum height, and then a maximum of 11 feet, is that kind of where you're... Okay. Yeah, I mean, I-
I mean, you can put in whatever size tree you want, it's just that I want to make sure that once it grows, it doesn't grow over where it blocks the neighbor's sunlight, the appellant's sunlight. So if it goes up to 11 feet, so it should always be maintained up to 11 feet.
Okay, so we're gonna let the council, so we hear you, and we can draft any condition along those lines that the council agrees to?
Yes.
We're, we're getting pretty narrowly descriptive here. Is this, I mean, is, is such a thing actually practical?
Well, so it's unlikely that we're going to be enforcing that, you know, anytime soon, and I don't know that that's where we want to spend necessarily our resources. We don't currently limit the height of hedges, correct me if I'm wrong about that, but, so this will be kind of a one-off that we don't typically get involved in. If there is an issue that's been expressed, then, and the council's trying to address that because of access of, you know, the sunlight and things like that, that is not a standard that we have. I know it was referenced as a prior IR guideline, we don't have that as a standard, so, and, you know, yeah, it's...
I mean, you know, I mean, this voluntary IR review is really going to cause future difficulties as we move along, especially in Eichler neighborhoods, where there is the privacy issue, and where is the, where there is, you know, the sunlight, daylight plain sort of thing, it's just going to keep, you know, coming back, and, you know, if nothing, we can provide the appellant some sort of privacy, and want to make sure that the applicants are kind of getting their house as well.
Sure, so if you want to do like a, you know, applicant shall provide a 12, you know, shall provide and maintain for the life of the project, a 11- or 12-foot hedge, you know, or screening along the rear property line or offset from the rear property line, I mean, those, those are things that are within the council's discretion to require to address the IR guidelines.
So I want to ask my colleague, maker and a secondor if they will accept this.
So, it's within, it's within our purview, but you're saying it's highly unusual for council to require this?
No, it's perfectly within your scope to do. I, I was just suggesting that, I don't want us to necessarily be in a situation where we're being called out because it's, the hedge is 12 feet, 5 inches, instead of 12 feet. I mean, that's not right, I mean, because plants grow.
They do, they do. What, Councilmember Koo, do you have some particular numbers in mind that, that you think would be appropriate?
Well, between, between 10 and 12 feet high.
So you have very specific requirements for the pittus forms, they're in 24-inch containers or something, how high are they usually at that?
I think the condition shows eight feet at planting.
Eight feet, so, so what you're suggesting is a range, eight to 12?
I'm suggesting that in experience in other municipalities, I don't want to be involved in enforcing hedges.
Which is perhaps something-
I, I don't even like enforcing hedge height, hedge height in my own home, so I, I, yeah, definitely, I agree with that.
I know, I know.
It's late enough, I'm, yeah.
Trees are like one of the big things, you know, that people fight about, but, which is why I'm saying that even if we could get it into part of a deed restriction, then it just continue on and it's between the neighbors at that point.
I guess Councilmember Koo, maybe we could find out if this is important to the appellant's? I think we're making perhaps an assumption.
Yes, it's important.
Okay, all right, it is.
The, the reason I showed you-
Microphone? Sorry, sir, thank you.
If you go back to the PowerPoint that I sent you, the reason I showed you the sunlight was that if you come to my home, and I would definitely love to have you guys in my home in the evenings, the house gets the sun directly in there, so anything about 10 feet, 11 feet, I think there will be no sun.
So you don't want them to be that high?
Because you have a structure there, you have a structure there, that is, there's, there's a building now, right? So think about the second level that has come up, and you've got a tree. You've got a structure and you've got a tree, so that you can block them looking into our, into our dining area. Once that happens, you've created an entire mass. So we, we, I think 10 feet is fine, 10, 11 feet is fine, but I don't know how you're going to enforce it, and I don't want to be sitting in somebody's neighbor's backyard with a tape. That's not really what I have done for the last 15 years. So I just want us to be reasonable. The reason we asked for the 40-foot setback was basically for the same reason, is that it goes right on the front, at least that sun comes in, there'll be some trees, we know that, it'll be about 10, 12 feet, I get it, but at least that structure will be behind. So even between the tree, the leaves, the sun comes into the room, comes into the house, at least I see some light. But once you have a structure there, you are basically creating a block. That was the whole purpose and the reasoning behind all of the privacy and the sun plane that we were asking for.
So I get a suggestion. How about if I, how about if I second Councilmember Tanaka's motion, okay? For the frost, for the frosted glass for the whole thing? Then, because, I mean, we're grappling with, you don't want to block the sunlight, but you want to block vision, right? And they're both associated with light, right? So, so if we, if we proceed with Councilmember Tanaka's idea, then we don't have to worry about dictating the size of the hedge or the trees or something like that, I think. I mean, what do you think?
So, you're going to suggest that we go with the obscure glass-
With obscure glass.
And not the trees?
And not the trees.
And then we get to vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, sorry, sorry. Well, because it seems to me that, I mean, you want to have light coming in, but you don't want to have people be able to see, right? Which is, you know, associated with, you know, bouncing light, right? So, but if you, if you get rid of the windows, essentially, then you don't have that conflict anymore. I don't know. Let's see, so shall we vote on the amendment? And the amendment passes 5 to 1 with Councilmember Koo opposed and Councilmember Niss abstaining.
And just to clarify, Mayor, if I can, so this is to-
I'm sorry, abstaining.
To require all windows on the rear elevation to have full-
Full frosted glass.
Obscure glazing?
Right.
Okay.
Full translucent windows in the back.
Translucent windows, thank you.
Right. Full translucence on the rear egress windows. Right. And I don't know, yeah.
So, so the way we, we would interpret this is it could be, and this is not a film that's placed on a window, it's embedded within the window, some kind of obscurity. It could even be some beveled glass, right? So that, that allows stained glass, you know, something that-
So you can't see, you can't see images through it.
So you can't see through, but light can come in.
Right, you could think, the reason I said that was because I can imagine, and you just suggested one, other ways of doing that besides frosting, that's all. I mean, frosting would qualify for sure, right? Okay. With that, how about we vote on the main motion? And that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Niss absent, and so, correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to make sure that I understand exactly what we did, which is we have denied the appeal, subject to the condition that all back windows are translucent. Did I get that right?
You've upheld the director's ruling.
That's right, upheld the director's ruling.
I think against the upper floors, not, not the bottom floors.
Correct, upper floors, not the bottom floors.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. So the ones, the ones that were already half, yeah, yeah. The bottom floors are the ones that have to be black, no, just kidding.
We get about 100 of these IR applications a year. How many would you like us to send to you?
How about this is the last one? So we're upholding the director's ruling with the one act, right. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for staying late at night, sorry this took so long. is there any state or federal legislation update?
I have something to say.
With, in the absence of state and federal legislation update, we will now move to council, councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. Councilmember Koo, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to, PAYC Palo Alto Youth Council has had a event. They had a final study cram slam that took place on December 11, 12, and 13. And it was hosted at Mitchell Park Community Center. The event, the intention of the event was to provide a fun and stress-free space for high schoolers, so that they can study for their upcoming finals. And it involved Gan, Polly, Castalea, and Kalihah Junior Jewish High School. In total, they had 228 attendance over the course of the three days. And so, it was a, actually a pretty successful event. They had crafts, and then they had therapy dogs come by. So, it was actually a really fun event. Of course, this was all supported by staff, Maggie Schoenholz, Jackie Perez, and Tyler Stetson. So, they did a really great job. On a second one, I just want to quickly just say, for the Norventura Citizen Advisory Panel, I'd really like to request that staff provide all the materials to the CAP group ahead of time, in good time, so that they can actually review and study it. So, please do that for them. Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so I was just making a suggestion, which is, you know, like, this thing we just heard, right? Maybe in the future, we could have a process where it goes to like the ARB or planning commission. Because I think this kind of stuff, they can really deal with well. And to your point about council time being very valuable, I agree with that. And I think some of our commissions or boards could probably do a better job of this than us. So, it's a suggestion.
Seeing no further lights, we are adjourned. Always good to end on the same day you started.